Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Thursday, uh, all right, Thursday is Thursday, January 16th Public Works Committee meeting to order. This is our budget meeting. So I would like to just wait, I just pulled up the wrong thing here. Okay. Okay, so I'd like to welcome Councillor Sharma, Councillor Chambers. I know Councillor Edie is on his way here. Our clerk, Mr. Prince Lu, members of the department who are sitting here, people in the gallery and anyone who's watching online. So this is our, our budget meeting. It's a special meeting and we're going to, we're going to have a full day today. First off, I'd like to acknowledge that we're in Treaty One territory, the home and traditional lands of the Inishinaq, Inuit and Dakota peoples and in the national homeland of the Red River Ma'athee, and that our drinking water comes from Shoal Lake Forty, First Nation in Treaty Three territory. I don't believe there's any minutes, right? From prior meetings, I've dealt with that. All right, so, um, so what's going to happen today? We're going to hear delegations first. And I think what we'll do is we'll probably break at noon, um, you know, probably for an hour and then continue on. We've got a lot of things that we're here to hear. We're going to hear Public Works, Transit, Parking Authority and Fleet. So full day. Now, I think we'll start with delegations. And I think I'll call up our first delegation, Mr. Chris Lawrence, President and CEO of the Manitoba Heavy Construction Association to be heard in support of the preliminary 2025 budget update. Good morning, Mr. Lawrence.
Good morning, Councillor Luks, members of the committee. Very pleased to be here this morning. We missed the noon deadline yesterday, so I've provided hard copy. I'm happy to provide it electronically for the record, if that's the wish of the committee. I am very pleased on behalf of the association and industry this morning to publicly indicate our support for the budget as presented. We recognize that there are very difficult considerations that were considered by the Budget Committee in the preparation of the plan and the five-year forecasts. We support the 5.95% increase, which really reflects an increase net of 2.45. We support the continued investment in core assets and in infrastructure, a recharge of the Fiscal Stabilization Fund and the search for efficiencies. But we do this where, as is everyone, that the 2.45 really highlights two critical observations. Raising the taxes by a net 2.45 is really a commendable demonstration of restraint, given the challenges and the pressures for service, service delivery that seem to be expanding. But it also notes that we can't avoid some hard decisions the council and the province and the community will have to make, in the near, not medium or distant future. And flowing from that observation is that collective conundrum that we're in. And that is that there is an undeniable need for a fundamental reorganization of the financial relationship between the city and the province of Manitoba and the reorganization of the nature, type and kind of revenues to which the city should have access in order to discharge its responsibilities. And the budget's own document makes reference to that, and I quote, "Methods used to balance the budget, such as the one-time transfers from reserves and asset sales, are nearly exhausted. The city also faces a significant infrastructure deficit and needs to prioritize spending." End quote. There simply is no way within the existing fiscal regime to enable cities, and that's a problem that it's not just the city of Winnipeg, but all major centers right across this country, to meet the demands that our communities need to have addressed. And so, once again, we see in this budget being forced to play a little bit of the shell game transferring, for example, in '27, the revenues of the dedicated fund for local and regional streets to the operating budget and using the provincial strategic infrastructure funds to backfill those funds. And I don't need, therefore, to remind this committee how tentative the revenue and funding scenario truly is. The 2% annual hike implemented in 2013 and '14 was to have been dedicated to the renewal of our local and regional streets, and yet without increasing that amount, its use has been expanded to cover bridges, active transportation, road safety, restoring the tree canopy, investment purposes never contemplated in the original plan objectives. And further, the multi-year funding model, which was recommended by the department in '23, only partially adopted by council, proposed reducing that to 2%, but only because the demands for services are so pressing on the city across the board. To our knowledge, there is no current forecast or asset management projection nor critical path that illustrates how we reach the goal of getting our local and regional streets in good condition citywide. And to enable our transportation network to continue supporting our economy and continued growth, to continue supporting and serving personal, commercial, recreational related needs, we have to address this as a community. We cannot keep putting off addressing the last estimated 1.9 billion investment deficit in streets or the estimated 1 billion deficit for bridges. We need to consider what that new funding model might look like to provide revenue streams that are adequate to the service responsibilities of the city. An obvious first place is to partner efforts between the city and province and by extension Ottawa through a shared economic growth strategy, harnessing investment to grow the economy to generate the required revenue streams. Think New Fiscal Deal. And as Mayor Gillingham rightly notes and others on council, that New Fiscal Deal must deliver to the city an immediate ROI on its investments in economic growth. Mindful, therefore, of all of the above, we offer three recommendations. The first, building on the progress of the existing plan, activate the committed to working group, Industry Council and Public Works to study a new or revised funding model for the local and regional street system, one which provides stable, predictable investments. Secondly, update the condition and needs assessment of the system, the lifecycle and replacement costs, along with a service level expectation of our street system. And lastly, harness the existing and evident public support to press the provincial government to engage in bilateral New Fiscal Deal discussions. These are steps that are long overdue. They are steps that are necessary. They are steps that have been discussed in this and the council chamber over the last number of years. And we look forward to continuing to work collaboratively with a council and the mayor to try to find resolution to these challenges. Thank you.
Okay, all right. We'll start with Councillor Chambers. Question?
Thank you for the presentation, Chris. You know, over the last little while, there has been that note from the public in terms of our roads. Our city is growing, so it's new roads. Our city is 150 years old, so it's repairing, you know, the old roads that are coming to disrepair. But I guess the balance, or the trick is, you know, in terms of our roads, and you do mention it here on page two, you know, where you talk about, uh, you know, trying to find that balance of, uh, the materials used in building the road, the amount of volume there is on that road, our climate that has an impact on that road, and then how long can we get use out of it? You talk about the service level expectation of our local and regional roads. And that, to some degree, dictates what kind of investments that we make in it. I know that's been a challenge over the last little while in terms of, you know, are we purchasing or paying for Mercedes-Benz roads when we should be looking at Cadillac roads in terms of those costs? And again, how long can we expect those roads to last? Again, you know, citizens in my ward, residents in my ward, do talk about roads. They also talk about the amount of construction that happens as we're repairing our roads, which, I mean, roads aren't fixed in a vacuum, so to speak. So again, you know, the investments that we're making in road construction, whether it's new, whether it's, you know, replacement and fixing up, I believe that needs to happen. You know, we want to make sure that people who are either driving or pedestrians or cyclists, that they're doing so safely. So investment in our, in our road strategy is critical and making sure that as our city grows, we're, you know, ensuring to make those investments to make our road network easier to navigate and safe to navigate. So thank you for your presentation this morning. And again, I'm hoping to see more and more investments in our roads. Again, it will take construction to do, but the end result is safer roads as well as something that we can be proud of.
All right, Councillor Edie.
Yes, thank you, I'm going to interrupt you.
Welcome to the committee today. We just started without you.
This is my first budget.
I know, exactly.
Mr. Lawrence, so since I was elected in 2010, there's been all this discussion about a new funding model, better way of helping to fund the city of Winnipeg in this province and Manitoba. But when I'm listening, I got my ear to the ground on provincial financial matters, federal financial matters. And, you know, the current thing with the Fed is the deficit's way too high. We've got to cut back and the province is down to, I think, a $1.3 billion deficit. That's not the debt, that's a deficit. And actually, you were a city councilor. How long has, has this effort from the city continued? And do you actually see in the short term some kind of new deal that's going to work so that the city has enough money for its infrastructure deficit?
Somebody mentioned that we're celebrating 150 years. I've been around a lot, not for full 150 years. I've been with the association for 33 years and prior to that, nine years as a city Winnipeg councillor. And I am an eternal optimist. I think there has been great progress made by the city of Winnipeg, in my view, over the last 33 years. I'm not going to talk about my firm and office, but I think there has been really good progress made by the city. For example, the city of Winnipeg, unlike senior jurisdictions across this country, has transparent reports that document the condition of the transportation system, the condition of its vertical assets, the need for investments, a timeline, a critical path. Council wisely, I think in the public view, introduced in 2013 the dedicated revenue stream. It has made a difference. There have been political pressures on those dollars. We understand that. That's the, that's the nature of public office and government. And so, to try to, you know, address some of those pressures, you expanded the umbrella that you expected 2% to cover. It's not a realistic expansion of that umbrella. At least you have not tried to fund bridges under that umbrella. That would frankly destroy the validity of the program. And you continue to update, which is, again, commendable. It's responsible and it's consistent with asset management. You are, as the Board of Directors of this city, trustees of all of the assets that the public has invested in. And so, council is to be commended for having that public and transparent discipline. I can't say the same thing about the provincial government, and that's not to level any criticism with the current provincial government. They were just elected in '23. And on that front, there have been some really important and positive steps made by that level of government. So to try to answer Councillor Edie's question about optimism on new funding model, I think there is a growing recognition, not just within community and media, but I think with opinion leaders, people with influence on the shaping of public policy on council and the mayor's office, that, you know, as much as we have tried, as much as we have offered suggestions, as much as we have offered to take political flak for senior levels of government, the horse is dead, dismount the horse. The last effort was the one within this last year with council asking the provincial government to authorize the introduction of a number of dedicated revenue streams taxes. We cautioned against that approach because our assessment was that the current provincial government, having just been elected in October '23, went through a very difficult provincial election during which the then governing party criticized it and alleged that if you elect it, it will be taxed and spent. So no amount of cover would change the fact that the government would end up wearing the legislated approval of yet another stream of taxes. You have, in your own budget deliberation, seen the impact of no change to that financial relationship. You have nothing in your fiscal stabilization fund. You're forced to build it. You continue to face operating deficits. You continue to rely more than you should. And that's not, again, a criticism of the city. That's the nature of the fiscal relationship. You continue to rely more than you should on realty taxes. You don't have a menu of revenue streams that are robust enough to complement the realty tax revenues that you get. And so, we're getting to the situation where the financial health of the city is becoming weaker and weaker and weaker and weaker. And there is a breaking point. And I think there is a recognition now, finally, that that breaking point is upon us. And both the city of Winnipeg and the province of Manitoba, looking just at our provincial government, need to make some fundamental decisions. And from our perspective, a first step has to be, not unlike a member-based association, you need to grow the number of members because you cannot keep adding onto the shoulders of your existing members additional costs, even though those additional costs are real, not imagined, not ones that you are generating, but they are there because of circumstances in the economy. So how do you add members? You add members by growing the economy. The problem is that the city does not have a focus on economic growth. It does not have an economic growth strategy. It does not have senior executive or political leadership focusing on how we grow the economy, how we add members so that we have consistently more shoulders upon which to ask for revenues to fund the operations of the city. So the first step is let's, let's acknowledge that. Let's acknowledge that. Let's institute a chief economic development officer at the level of the CFO and COO. Make that individual the champion of all things economic growth. Enable that policy with a standing committee mandated to examine, support and champion and advance economic growth strategy. That's step number one. Because you have to go to the province, not with please, sir, may I have some more? You need to be able to go to the province and say, we understand you're facing a financial dilemma. The way that collectively we can get out of this problem is by jointly participating and partnering in growing the economy. So that's step number one. Step number two, if we were to do it all over again on a blank sheet of paper, what would we ask the city to deliver? And what would we ask the province to deliver? That jurisdictional service responsibility review is long overdue. And once you have on that blank sheet of paper, civic services, provincial services, at the bottom then, you can align revenue streams to fund those services. And the third step is, after having taken the first two, then we need to persuade the province, and I believe there is appetite on Broadway, we need to persuade the province to strike a subject matter expert group that says, having reviewed the services, having reviewed the projected revenue streams, this is what a new fiscal deal might look like, including, including consideration of the institution and implementation of income taxes. Move away from, perhaps get totally rid of, realty taxes. Piggyback on the already existing system with an income tax that's progressive on business and personal. And then you can start addressing transparently the contribution through ability to pay, which is objective. You can begin addressing those with lower incomes, which you can't really do through realty taxes. You can then have a fair system of taxation. And to those who say it can't work, it does. And it is working in thousands of cities in the United States and many more across the, across the globe. And to those who say that you can't even do that kind of review, I'm sorry, that's wrong. In 2006, the province of Ontario actually struck that kind of task force. It took them 18 months plus minus. So in 2008, they were finished their work. They made a number of recommendations to the provincial government, but what happened and interfered then? The recession of 2008. And so, the issue lost support. But the reality is, the problem hasn't gone away. So those are the three steps that we need to take.
Okay, one more question?
Just a... Brought it, you brought it to the table, the store, which is great. That is definitely a big picture. But I always like to point out something. At the city level, it's balanced budget. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't real estate tax the stablest tax around?
I, I don't, I don't think any...
It is the stablest, I'm just... Our forefathers decided property, our forefathers decided on property taxes because it is the stablest tax. It's not fully stable, but it's, it's the stablest and probably the most predictable.
Respectfully, I'm not sure I agree because there are far more communities, cities in the United States that are moving towards income taxes because realty taxes are regressive. Realty taxes don't provide you the flexibility to acknowledge those who have less ability to pay the way that...
So good question, Ross.
It's just, it's, it's a, it's a base. You just said the recession of 2008, right?
But that's not...
That recession, that recession, well, it resulted because of real estate problems in the United States of America and the greed of people. The, uh...
And what's the question?
The property tax remain stabler than the income taxes and the value-added taxes. Anyway, all we do about it.
Okay, Councillor Chambers, you got a question?
Yeah, and, you know, to your point, you know, as cities start to grow, and Winnipeg has experienced a growth of 65,000 people over the last two years that immediately have an impact on the services. But we don't see an immediate impact in terms of the collection of their property taxes if they're living in, in an apartment or, you know, or otherwise, or with family. So, you know, having, having a revenue model that addresses the immediate needs of the city puts us at an equal footing in terms of being able to deliver all those services. You talk about, you know, sustainability of property taxes. I, you know, again, I have to argue with that on the basis that we're reassessing every couple of years, whereas a predictable income tax, I think, would be...
Yeah, well, more predictable and have a, have a, and immediate...
Have an immediate impact on the revenues that the city is, is able to, to, to use for services. So thank you for bringing that up. But again, it is a way, or, I mean, we have to look at a way of meeting our immediate needs as a city. The pandemic, I mean, drew down our fiscal stabilization to the point where if there is anything that comes subsequent within the next couple of years, and you're seeing all of these calamities around the world, I mean, our city will not be prepared if we don't recharge our fiscal stabilization fund. So a new model or a new revenue stream, it's, it's what we have to look at going forward because what we have now is not working. Don't disagree with that.
Well, okay, that was a good question. Thank you, Councillor Edie, on what the future holds. And thanks, Mr. Lawrence, for your comments on that. You know, I, I do hold out optimism. We see cities across Canada basically in the same position that we're in. And I think, you know, with the changes in the states and probably the federal changes, there's going to be a real focus on Canada's economy. And provinces are going to be, whether they like it or not, really going to have to focus even more on their economies. And Canada's one of the richest nations in the world. And, and I think there's a lot of opportunity here. We just have to get the right machine in place and move forward on that. Councillor Sharma?
Can I, can I just before?
Yeah.
Can I just say that council should give itself a bit of a pat on the back? Because if you take a look at the rate of realty tax increases in other major urban centers, they far outstrip anything that we witnessed in the city of Winnipeg. And that's in part because successive mayors and councils have focused, they don't get credit for it, but they have focused on finding efficiencies and trying to make a large organization that much more effective. You look at Toronto and the, the scale of the operating deficit in Toronto, it's ginormous. You look at Calgary and Edmonton and the kinds of increases that they're looking at. You look at Vancouver and the kinds of realty tax increases. And Winnipeg, 2.45. So it is a problem. The problem is real. The problem requires correction. But council also deserves some, some praise and positive comment for the manner in which, over the last 10, 15 years, the finances have been managed.
I guess the one other thing I want to comment on is we're, we're on a mission to have a new CAO come on board. And I think we're going to be looking at some big changes under a new CAO on how we structure the organization. And that very well may mean an economic development higher level.
You won't get more members into your organization unless you justify them coming, right? So you need to create that environment that welcomes economic development. Just look at Centreport. Over the last 10 years, because the first five years were informational, over the last five to seven years, 1.5 billion in private sector investment because the infrastructure services were invested in by that little community.
Yeah. Okay, Councillor Sharma?
Thank you, just on the heels of exactly that, Chris, the growing the economy, the importance of economic development. You didn't spend any time today talking about the Chief Pegwas Trail Extension. I know you have in the past. We're expecting a report in the coming months on the cost benefit analysis, et cetera. Can you put comments on the record if that project still remains a priority important to our city and our province?
You know, it absolutely is. And, you know, I, I listened to, to arguments, for example, against the improvements to Kenniston. Kenniston is not a new asset. It exists. Its design is being outstripped by the traffic volumes that are there. It is serviced at the north end by a bridge that doesn't have an infinite lifecycle. It requires reinvestment. Pembina Highway enhancements to an existing asset. If you look at the vast, vast majority of the city's capital program, it has been to reinvest in that which exists, not building new. Building new is done in new subdivisions, which is paid for by the developer and paid for by the community that buys it. Chief Pegwas Trail is an asset to the city. It's an economic instrument that is required. It will offset the kinds of pressures that, that we are now continuing to put on Main Street, on McPhillips, on Kuwaiton, on Lila, on Inkster, on Mountain, on Selkirk, that were never designed to carry the volumes of traffic. It will, people may laugh, people may smile, people may chuckle, but it's also an investment in a greener environment. Everybody knows start-stop, start-stop is not good. It's, it's not good for fuel efficiency. It's not good for emissions. And just imagine what the south end of the city would be like without Taylor, without some of the major east-west corridors that provide service and mobility and direct transportation. The north end of the city, other than the Chief Pegwas Trail east of Main Street, does not have that. The northwest part of the city is one of the fastest-growing areas in the city. The Chief Pegwas Trail is a key trade and transportation link. So it's not building for the sake of building, which we do not support. It is investing in our ability and capacity to grow, to support contiguous development and have a transportation, transportation system that supports the objectives of the transportation plan, which include investment and economic growth. So it's a necessity. investment and economic growth. So it's a necessity. It's not an option.
Thank you, Chris. And more on that in the coming months. As I said, we're expecting a report, I believe, at this committee. Thank you.
Okay, Cal Street, let's wind it up on this delegation. One more question and, uh, I'll move on to the others.
Two part here. I mean, you liked this economic, uh, thing and you talked about this restructure about him chairperson. Um, I just want some clarification. Again, managing the money that we do bring in, uh, in establishing a economic development director. Would you be okay with us cutting funding to, uh, economic development Winnipeg and yes Winnipeg?
Well, I think part of the discussion, uh, 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 let, let me answer it this way. The first thing that the city of Winnipeg, in my view, in our view, needs to do is create the Office of Chief Economic Development Officer. So that's part one. Part two, the role of E D W will become far clearer once you know what it is that your economic growth strategy is or could be or should look like. So right now, I don't see, I don't see that, I don't see that, because the answer has to be murky because you have to start off knowing that you have a commitment to growth and that you have a commitment to economic development. The role of E D W will clarify itself once you do the first.
Um, just a follow-up though on that. So I hear about Centreport North. It's a great thing. It has resulted in huge investments. Without an economic development officer, this city of Winnipeg invested under our current mayor, uh, is continual pushing, invested in infrastructure out to Centreport South Airport West. Um, uh, we did that without an economic development officer. That's been a bring billions. Would you agree though is that Chief Pegwas Trail is probably an essential part of, uh, making that function, the Centreport South function in a, in a efficient, um, effective way?
Spot on.
Pardon me?
Spot on. I totally agree.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to point out though, we, we have been doing investments, right? So long.
Yes, but, but again, to, to put that in context, were, were it not for the political determination of First Councillor Gillingham and Mayor Gillingham, that wouldn't have happened. Ross, Ross has five, five years, five years into the existence of Centreport, made the investments and look at the rewards. It's taken the city Winnipeg fifteen years and still no investment in South Winnipeg. Yes, it started, but it won't fin- finish until next year.
I voted for that budget. Okay, so we're kind of centre boarding off on another avenue here, but it's still relevant.
And it's economics.
Yeah, it's economic development. Really good. Okay, so, um, thanks for your advocacy. Thanks for your input. Thanks for always being so accessible to call and give us your opinions and, um, yeah. Thanks for coming down the person.
Thank you and thank you for the good work.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Clark, our next delegation. Who is our next delegation?
Mr. Kelly Ryback.
Oh, Mr. Ryback. All right.
Okay, thank you. I'm hoping before you start the clock, uh, I did present a powerpoint that I hope I can do live. It's only a few slides. It's not the majority of my discussion, hopefully. So. All right, first to, to start off, the powerpoint comes a little later. Um, what, uh, Chris just said, I agree with, uh, on several items, particularly when he spoke about traffic congestion that throughout the city, there are areas of craft congestion that need to be addressed. And I'll touch on more later. Um, specific, I did also ask to speak.
Yeah, we started or are we?
Yeah, no, we can start now. I'll share it.
Or you can, you can wait to get it hooked up and then we can start, whatever you want. Yeah, wait to get it hooked up because sometimes it takes time. Okay, here we go.
No, I'm sorry. I might need some assistance here. It's, something disappeared. Yeah, I'm starting this right away.
No, uh, so when the time comes, go on here, hit share screen and then.
Click on it and, yep, okay.
Yep.
Hopefully not to quite back. Thank you. Okay, we can start.
All right.
Thank you. I'll, I'll repeat that, uh, what Chris Lawrence just says I agree on many times, many things, specifically, uh, congestion, Chief Pegwas, Keniston, and there are areas throughout the city where we have congestion problems. And it's only going to grow if, if it's not addressed. And, oh, before I get into bike lanes, all the bike lane network fully connected is not going to address those connection issues. Earlier last year, I, when I was a delegate at the Climate Change Advisory Group headed by Councillor Mays, I said, you, we're not going to see twenty thousand bikes from going to work in school, uh, i- in our lifetime. And it's been proven in other jurisdictions that congestion just continues to increase, especially when you take away lanes and, and other actions to, we, we think is traffic calming or the congestion initiative to encourage people to take buses and use bikes or active transportation. It doesn't happen. And, and those have been documented. Uh, but I want to first speak to Arlington Street Bridge. That, that bridge needs to be built. The congestion on McPhillips and Salter is dramatically increased. It's a, a critical corridor. And based on what, you know, happens five years from now, thirty years from now, the bridge needs to be addressed now. Uh, now going to the budget, uh, I support buying, if need but, if you need buses now, I support you buying the diesel buses now. There are issues with battery, with battery electric and hydrogen, uh, fuel cells still require development. And, you know, I have a hybrid. I am not happy with my hybrid in cold weather. And for those that require full charging, the turnaround time is too long right now to be properly serviced with, with electric buses. If recommendation to buy diesel, I, I endorse that. Um, this next point, I'm speaking as a member of the, uh, Grand Soul Mill Board because there is a budget item in here that is confusing because Grand Soul Mill falls under the same policy committee of community services, but it's Public Works Buildings Fund. So I think it's yours. So.
I think so.
It, it, but it does state the Public Works Park Buildings. And that's where the three, there's a three hundred thousand dollar. We needed that. I fought hard for that three hundred thousand dollars.
I mean, some accommodation, but anyways.
Okay, I felt, I fought hard for that three hundred thousand dollars because without it, number one, we lose a provincial grant of three hundred. We're actually, because we got it, we're saving the city three hundred grand and allows us to start the restoration this year. So thank you for that and I hope it stays in there come final vote. Now, you know, the city is in dire straits, very dire straits. So we, we're starting the year off with a ten million dollar deficit. There's eighty plus million dollars in the F S R that needs to be, uh, replenished over a period of time. Uh, the north end Truden Plant is an issue and there's a few shoes that have dropped on that in the last, uh, little while. Uh, even the provincial gas tax reinstatement is causing, is costing the city a million dollars extra this year compared to two thousand and twenty-four. That was in the budget document. And water and waste fees haven't been released yet. And that's, you know, it's, it's fee, but it's a tax. So we are facing more than five point nine five percent. And I hope, because it's beyond three point five, my point is let's spend the money wisely. And there are some, you know, small budget items that I think could be adjusted. But, uh, one is, and you've heard me talk about this before, and I'm not, when I say this, I'm not referencing Daniel Mack, Minarski or Point Douglas. There are sixteen hundred and thirty-one flower pots in the city between Saint James, Tuxedo, Charleswood, uh, Westwood. There's all, there's two hundred. When you are in dire financial straits with a twenty-nine million dollar beautification budget and no reduction year over year, that's an opportunity to reduce some funding. That in twelve wards, if you reduce the quantity of flower ponds by thirty percent and reduce the quantity per pot by twenty percent, a significant savings. And these flower pots, they get watered twice a week. They're pruned, they're planted, they're removed. So just there are small things we could do. So secondly, residential street sanding. I've spoken about this in the past. I live on a bay of thirty houses. We get sanded fifteen to twenty times because of, uh, me and a neighbor make a lot of noise about it. There's been a direction, don't sand our bay. So just this current winter season, our neighborhood has been sanded seven times on residential streets. These are bays. Seven times, our bay's been done five. And the sandy truck drove around our bay in his horse, but didn't even do our bay. And now I'm going to, uh, refer to the powerpoint on this. Share. We're there. Okay, good. It worked. Uh, so we go to slideshow. December twelfth, thirteenth. This is in front of my house, a big strip of sand. Right on, you know, we've got the feeder street. But just four houses down is a four-way stop, Allard and Rouge Road, glaring ice. All the bays in the neighborhood were sanded, but Allard, Rouge, Westwood Drive, all those were not. But what happens when I got sand on my bay that we don't need? This happens multiple times a year. Expand that through the entire city. I'm saying if we're to go to a P four classification, here's an example of what I've highlighted are the bays cul-de-sacs, small roads, just in Westwood and Saint James. Those pink highlights could all be a new classification of P four that instead of getting sanded twenty times a year, only need to be sanded at most five. This year, with our five applications on our bay, we needed it, we needed it once. And that was during the thaw freeze cycle just before Christmas. There is no sand to be seen when we actually needed it. But then of the course, when there's a snowfall, we get compact snow, it's now safe again because compact snow is not slippery. Two years ago, our bay only got done five times. We thought we were part of a pilot, but that wasn't the case. It was only in order because we make noise. I would encourage you, if you want to look for a sizable, it's not just a budget savings, but put the sand where it's needed. And the other benefits are less residential spring cleanup, less debris in the catch basins, which are getting clogged. But it's a more effective way of using resources if you were to establish a P four. And if it means a pilot, bring it on, please. So just a small savings. Uh, another budget item is, uh, traffic signals. There are areas where we need left turn signal that we don't have because it's causing delay, accidents. Vehicles have to wait another light cycle because of, of vehicle stop didn't get through. This is Ness westbound at Mount Royal. Multiple times a year, these lights are knocked down. There's property damage and physical injury multiple times a year. This is one of the critical ones in Saint James that needs to be addressed. I hope in your list of work that's going to happen, that this can be considered for that. Uh, that's the end of, of just presentation.
Five, two, zero, four, two, five, eight, three, message, voicemail, silent mode.
Sidewalk renewal. Three and a half years ago, I reported a series of heaved and severely damaged sidewalks in various wards. One, the work has started on this past June, one out of several after three years. What they did is they cut out the heaved sidewalk on Stewart Street and filled it with gravel, and that's all that's happened. The irony of that is there is one directly across the street equally damaged. They had all the people there, the trucks there, the equipment there, the gravel there, and they didn't even go across the street to do the other one that, uh, you could see it. That I know we had the golf carts going throughout the city. It's disappointing that over the course of the years, at least, throughout the city, these weren't reported because how many times is there city employee that is over that sidewalk with snow clearing or crews could see it, supervisors, foremen, elected officials that were in a deficit of sidewalk repair, were in deficit of road repair. Uh, with respect to bike lanes, the report, uh, the budget has two point two, two eight million. Uh, there's really no, but we don't know if between local and road renewal, if there's bike lanes to be incorporated in that also. Um, I think, and I said this in two thousand and twenty-one at council, need to step back and review. And there's questions, we can go that further, but I'll, I'll wrap up very quickly. Um, it's, that was my time. That, please embrace the opportunity to improve performance. Because it is a critical, you can do more without spending money by improving performance. And I could show you examples of workforces too large, productivity is too low and improper behavior, both in work avoidance and driving. My, you know, that's for a different topic, but I could show you a report on one incident that at least there should have been severe suspensions. At the most, there should have been job termination. That's a, a different topic, but I'm telling, I've gone through performance improvement. Huge gains can be realized. Please embrace that. This CFO is tasked with that. But when I see oversized workforces and idle, and idle hands and idling trucks, it needs to be addressed. If you're asking for a five point nine five percent tax increase. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Ryback. Um, now, do we have any questions or comments from any of the committee members? Counselor Chambers?
Yeah, so thank you for your presentation this morning. And, you know, I, I note since my time here on council that, you know, you have been back and forth with respect to the sanding of the bays and, and whatnot. Um, and, and pack snow does provide a bit, a bit more traction, especially on sidewalks. And we had made at one point a conscious decision not to plow down to the concrete, but to pack and compress the snow on sidewalks. But, uh, what I have noticed, especially, you know, the last couple of winters, probably dating back three winters now, is the fact that the, the, the temperature itself has been, you know, during the daytimes, minus five to plus five. Uh, a lot of melting going on, uh, and then at nighttime it freezes again. So it creates slippery conditions. And I don't know that pack snow or there's an opportunity to pack snow, which is why you're seeing more sanding, especially over the last couple of years. Um, but climate has actually been a challenge. Uh, I note that during the Christmas holidays, uh, members of my, uh, in my ward, uh, did a, uh, a fun walk on, uh, between Christmas and New Year's. And again, it was quite mild, a lot of melting, a lot of freezing overnight. And as a matter of fact, somebody slipped and fell, uh, and injured their wrist. Um, but again, it's, it's what we're seeing in terms of climate, you know, dealing with climate issues. Um, so I, again, I don't know that the city can, um, cannot sand because there's some liabilities out there. Uh, we also want to make sure people are wearing proper footwear when they're out walking and, and, um, you know, if they're driving, having, um, snow tires, if, if, to the extent possible. But, uh, sanding is a requirement, uh, you know, as we live in a winter city.
So I appreciate you bringing up, you actually touched on some points, uh, that I find I agree with. Uh, firstly, when you talk about small bays cul-de-sacs, there is enough grit brought in from the tires traveling the P tubes. Or if you just put extra sand and maybe turned into the, that entrance a little bit, that, that is adequate. But in that winter of two years ago, we only got sanded five times. There was no issue whatsoever. When you do talk about the Christmas break time with the thaw and the freeze and it was slippery, people, I agree with you. It was the one time we needed sand and not only on my bay and the sidewalk in my neighborhood, but also I was on Corden Avenue at my friend's restaurant and you couldn't walk the sidewalks of Corden between Christmas and New Year's until there was a snowfall. That is almost as if, oh, to save money, we shut down for the last week and didn't do it. That was the perception. I don't know if that was the reality, that was perception, that, uh, you know, I talked about in the past, the, on for city property of this, uh, putting in snow fences. And that hasn't moved. Oh, where there's ample room to go back a hundred feet and put a four to six foot snow fence with the orange plastic material and the. It's not hard to do. There's lots of storage. And if you want to keep in the neighborhood, between April and October, the hockey rinks and the community clubs have ample storage because they're not being used. The, the dressing room, there could be a plan, that's just an idea. But there are so many areas of the city would benefit by having snow fences put up. Ness at Mount Royal, that's one thing, because that's where the airport runways are, big orange fence, it works. Down Brent, where, you know, we're the old Capone barracks where we're doing that gets blown in, south winds, north winds in the these need to be addressed. There are, these are cost savings to improve road safety and sidewalk safety. And we could talk about, you know, snow clearing in our areas. There's opportunities to improve, but they don't even have to spend money. But I believe if you had a P four classification, you can cut it down to two thirds. Those roads will still be saved, but you have the option to either save money or put it where you, right? Why was my base sanded when the four-way stop was glossy? It just doesn't make sense. And the, uh, the additional irony to that is that sanding truck had to go through that four-way intersection at least twice.
So Mr. Ryback, you of everyone here have a situation that is so unique. Your brother. Had you ever talked to your brother about any of the operations? You have a very unique situation.
I do.
You do.
I also have another relative that's thirty-five years in the same department.
All right. So you have a perspective on this that we don't have, um, which it's good to hear your perspective. Um, I, I would say two things to this. Um, in real, well, I could say through, I could say a lot, but I'll keep it to maybe three. Um, so in relation to operations, a lot of your focus is on operations, it sounds like, okay? And has been, which we, which I hear you, right? One of the most shocking reports I saw was the workforce management audit. Okay?
Good dialogue on that.
Okay, so we are in the process of hiring a new C A O. A huge focus will be on efficient operations. I've been here for a number of years and there's a lot of repeat in this role, right? There's a lot of repeat. There's a lot of same scenarios that repeat, right? So there's huge opportunity for efficiencies. There's always, there'll always be little things that'll happen, but there's huge opportunity for efficiencies. And one of the prime roles that this new C A O will have coming on board, one of it will be, will be workforce management and efficiencies. Um, I encourage you to go to um, page ten on my website. I did a budget presentation. And the PDF page ten highlights one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven areas of focus that we're working on, on efficiencies, right? Internal efficiencies. Um, so you, you make, you make some very good points, right? And in a big operation, there's always going to be. And when you're dealing with people, there's always going to be, okay, someone didn't turn the spreader on at the intersection. There will be scenarios like that. Um, that, that, it won't be perfect, but can we do better? Of course we can do better. So to your comments on efficiencies, to your comments on, you know, what we're doing about efficiencies. Um, I think we've got a lot coming down the tube on efficiencies. I'm very optimistic on that. As for the whole bike network and transit, I'm a huge supporter of transit. So as long as I'm here, I'm supporting transit in any and every way I can because we have the opportunity uh, to put more people on the buses. We've got challenges. Unlike what every city has right now, there's safety challenges on, on buses throughout Canada, throughout the States on safety issues on buses. We're, we're trying to deal with that. Um, we're changing our routes, so we have high frequency to encourage more people to use buses. I don't know if you watched the report recently that we had in Public Works on the annual taxi, on the um, vehicles for hire report. More and more and more people are using other modes of transportation other than a personal car, right? They're using a cab, they're using a bus, they're trip chaining. Um, so I'm optimistic about transit. As long as I'm here, I'm supportive. I know we'll, we don't go down the right path on this one, but again, as long as I'm here, I'm supporting active transportation. We're up to um, in the next six years, we're up to, uh, how much are we on? Up to thirty-one million. I love it. That's great. So I'm going to support that. And I, you know, there's a lot of people that don't, but can't all agree on everything. So I appreciate your effort and the time that you've put into coming down to City Hall because you know what? Sometimes at the immediate time, you may feel it's not making an impact, but in the big picture it does. I was down fifty times plus before I was elected. And I know I made an impact coming sitting on that end. And then I say I went on the dark side. And I know I'm making an impact here, but you, you may not see the immediate action of your advocacy, but people talk, we talk internally, we talk about the big picture. And I don't want you ever to go away feeling, oh, my God, they're not listening to me, nothing happened. But it, 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 we listen. And we listen and we have discussions.
Counselor Luke, so I appreciate that because it was at the property budget review meeting with one day's notice of the in the old regime, you had one day's notice of from the time the budget released that started the review meeting. It was at the property review meeting on the second day of review meetings, you gave me the same message. And you encouraged me to keep coming out and bang my head against the wall.
Okay.
And you encouraged me.
Okay, so it's my own fault. Okay.
Other than that, you were the first of about five counselors who encouraged me to run for city council.
Yes, yes, well, huh, okay.
Thank you. So be careful what you ask for.
Exactly.
But here's my disappointment in the bike lanes.
Yeah, we could go on about bike lanes forever, but you know.
Two, two thousand and five, I came back from San Jose and I went to Counselor Grant Norman and said,
Right.
They make the curb lanes four feet wider in San Jose.
Right.
To accommodate the bikes and make it safer for motorcycles.
Right.
And I came back and say, this is what we need. And what we've seen in the last six years, where I was an advocate, and I am still an advocate
Yep.
For the proper routes in the right place, in the proper places, without causing congestion.
Yeah.
In fact, Calgary Council, we will do bike lanes ensuring they don't cause congestion and take away from vehicles.
Yeah.
And from what I've seen in the last six years has been a disappointment. And I was an early advocate.
We're hoping the congestion puts them on the buses, that they get tired of sitting in congestion.
But you know what? They've done that in other jurisdictions before us. And it, those, that, those, the desired result, it didn't happen. There's a complete book written about Portland where it failed. They're already saying issues in Toronto, issues in Montreal, all reported immediately. But I think there is a smarter way to do it, but we need to actually learn from our mistakes. And there have been mistakes, which I provided to this committee prior to you. And a disappointment on me also, and maybe it'll happen in a future year, hey, we have enough problems with bridges being Omens Creek, be it Louise, be it Arlington. And actually Counselor Wyatt brought this up about the Caniston project. We're not, if we're not, we may be looking at it, but I would love to see at least moving forward, I spoke to Counselor Edie with this, I know that Counselor Sharma's had a discussion, the abandoned rail bridges. If it could be shown that they have a long life left in them, that could be a critical component to both kinds of active transportation with a huge benefit, especially for river heights to pull apart and that whole bike network.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you be the first one to know. You mark your calendar for March fifteenth. Okay, March fifteenth, Public Works Committee doesn't know yet either. But is that your birthday? Okay.
My aunt's.
Oh, your aunt's. Okay. So March fifteenth, um, nine to noon, we're going to have a a wonderful presentation from the public service, who's been very generous to offer up their availability on March fifteenth to talk about the next six years, what we're doing in active transportation and what we're doing in road safety. So we're going to combine them together because a lot of the, a lot of the information, I encourage you to see what we're doing in road safety in the presentation today. It's quite impressive. Uh, come to that. We're going to have an open forum and we'll talk more in detail on that, at that, on March fifteenth. Even told you guys, nine to noon, nine to noon.
I, I look forward to it. I, I, I'm sorry. Was my aunt's birthday, hers is the next day? March fifteenth was my grandmother's birthday. So I, I look forward to that.
And we can talk more in detail on that.
I can tell you, the most recent disappointment is what took place on Goulet Street.
Yes, okay.
And we don't know where that's ending.
I, I.
And moving on Marion, for the record, you go forward with moving on, with the plan for Marion, and you will kill so many businesses on that street.
I want to talk about your intersection on Mount Royal because I travel that one. So have, have you made a request or has anyone made a request out of turning signal because?
Here's the process. This, this is my first public announcement on it.
Okay.
And also let you know, we have an online petition that is still in progress.
Right.
And it has over five hundred signatures.
Okay.
My target is two thousand, and these are St. James residents.
Why don't you go roll that effort? Why don't you just tell us that you want to have it studied and then we'll study it and see.
I'm telling, I'm telling you now.
Okay, I'll have the department study it and see if it's warranted, right? Because there has to be certain criteria, right?
Yeah, I know.
And it's not like they're super expensive. They're five or six grand usually, but especially when the lights are there, but um, you know, it takes a bit of time and, and they'll see if it merits it. But I know that's a funky intersection because.
Same with, same with Ness and White Wall and Portage and School Road.
Yeah.
Where the superstore.
Okay, well.
Those are the three, those are, I will, those are the three biggest traffic issues in St. James Westwood.
Okay, email me the list and let me see what we can do, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next delegation.
We're good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Our next delegation is Mr. David Grant. Who's joining us via Zoom.
We've got a regular troupe here. Mr. Grant, how are you today?
Good. Yes, I, I noticed that uh.
Arden, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Hold on here. We can't hear you. Maybe that's. Keep talking.
It says my audio is on.
No, I think it might be on our end.
I think it is.
Email me that, uh, Mr. Ryback, email me that list, okay?
Okay.
Keep talking.
My, my uh, thing says I'm, I'm on, I'm on audio and video.
I can kind of hear you, but I think it's on our end, so just hang tight for a minute.
Okay, sure.
Going to turn up the amplifiers. I'll give it a try now.
Try now.
Hey, how's that?
Nope.
Oh dear.
Nope.
Come on, you guys. Get it together. Plus one, two, zero, four, three, nine, one, six, seven, four, seven. Phone call, start call.
Hey, nothing?
No, we're just waiting here. We're
Okay.
We're working on it.
Hmm.
Can we have this happen? And last time it was something else.
I think it was. All right, Mr. Grant, uh, please give it a try.
All right. Okay, how's that? Can you hear me now?
Not really.
Oh dear.
What if he logged on and came back maybe?
I mean, is, is Mark going to be live or is he going to be on Zoom two?
Yeah, she's working. Just a minute.
Okay. I could speak after Mark if that would help, if he's live.
Put it on a piece of paper and hold it up.
Okay, we've got more high-tech support coming in, so just wait.
Oh, goodie.
You can hear us just fine. You can hear us.
I believe so, yes. Give it a try, David.
Okay.
Yes, perfect.
All right.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you again. Anyway, I was going to suggest having Mark speak before me if he was doing it live, but thank you for getting it fixed. I want to thank you for agreeing to listen. I thank my former counselor for her words of encouragement to Kelly. I also want to thank the prior delegations. They were both careful and thoughtful. Uh, the following words relate to item eight. Each of us has a perspective. Chris wants you to find more funding so his people will have more projects to work on. I like the way he explained a future where the city and province could shift who pays and on what. He quoted Ontario. I would quote Michigan. Michigan did some major shifting many years ago. They cut property taxes in exchange for a two percent increase in sales tax. The money balanced out and I think it helped everyone in the state. We could do that in Manitoba. The province could increase sales tax in exchange for taking over the spending on major capital projects such as sewage plants. On the other hand, those who pay taxes have different priorities. We care about the tax load that future generations will face. Some of us want fewer such new projects. But certainly the Chris's idea of uh, the province and city getting together to shuffle who does what and where the money comes from. Uh, there's certainly a lot of possibility there. And moving on to item two, crashes on Waverly. Has anyone consulted with M P I? I don't see that paragraph in this uh, agenda item. Do M P I data say that the curbs are to blame for all these crashes, not driver behavior? This rhetorical question, the trailside sidewalk. I've spoken here.
Hey, just hold up. Hey, hold on one minute here. For now, it's choppy. It's breaking up. So just give it a minute. It's like it's um, more signs. Uh, it's kind of breaking up. So just give us a second here. It's like there's a short or something.
Sure.
All right, give it a try.
Okay. Moving on. On uh, um, I don't know if I should replay, repeat, uh, item two, crashes on Waverly. Has anyone consulted with M P I? Uh, do their data say that curbs are to blame for all these crashes, not driver behavior? On topic three, trailside sidewalk. I've spoken here for the residents of Fort Richmond, and for years we have noted that most of our roads have no sidewalk. We ask, what makes this crescent more worthy of the spending than our roads? An example would be Rochester. Serves as a collector for hundreds of people but has no sidewalk. It seldom sees a snowplow, further impeding those on foot. Will each of the homeowners on trailside be paying the eight or ten thousand dollars in local improvement fees to cover this? Will this be a special and very unusual gift to them from the rest of us? On the bike path on Lee, Winnipeg has thousands of quiet suburban roads. A little bit of time here. Most of us have enjoyed family biking on these quiet roads for many decades. If you throw one point two million to the wind on this project, will you be fair and buy thousands more of these suburban paths? How happy will taxpayers be if you waste perhaps fifty billion dollars on more bike paths where they are not needed? Sound extravagant. Will this be the last path that your friends ask for? Because uh, this road is quiet and uh, I've had no fear walking up and down uh, Lee and.
Grant, you know what? Hold, hold on here, Mr. Grant. It's, it's really not working. So I'm going to suggest that you log off and log back on.
Okay.
I don't know. It's, it's coming through on YouTube. Okay. I'm getting reports that we are coming through clear on YouTube, but a lot of stuff's being chopped up and we're not hearing you. So I don't know, like this is an idea. Turn it off, turn it on again, and usually it works.
I will. This will take a few minutes. Do you want to handle Mark in the meantime?
I can't hear you, so.
Okay.
Turn it off and come back.
So Mr. Grant has left the meeting. Uh, if, if he wants, we can perhaps proceed on to Mr. Mark.
Sure, let's, let's do Mark. Okay. Can you tell him that we're going to go to the next delegate? Mark, are you there?
Yeah, uh, am I coming through? All right. I was hearing David, all right.
Yeah, I know. On YouTube it is good, but like we were just not hearing him at all. So um, you know, the turn it off, turn it on works a lot of times. So you're here, let's hear from you. Good morning.
That'll work for him. Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I just want to go through a few items, uh, hopefully fairly quickly. Um, so the first item I want to talk about is the traffic study at Waverly and Pine Hills Road. And really, you know, I, it's, I think it's important to see design improvements to make walking and cycling better, but here what I'm not really seeing is any improvements to the cycling network. Uh, certainly there's a bit of an improvement on the Waverly path. But as you know, um, Waverly is a primary route in the planned cycling network. Pine Hills is a secondary route, sort of connecting into that central Waverly West Trail system. And Tim Sale Drive is, is also a secondary. Neither Pine Hills nor Tim Sale currently have any cycling facilities, although Pine Hills does create that connection into that central pathway. So, so what I'd like to suggest here uh, is that we design with the future uh, in mind as we're doing this, to think about protected bike lanes uh, in the future, or bike lanes in the future. So a fully protected intersection is, I think, something we can, we can look at here. Uh, perhaps implemented with uh, just pocket bike lanes coming in on Pine Hills and Tim Sale. Sort of create that separation and that, that space and that, that little safety. Uh, uh, so I'm hoping we can um, have the, the administration maybe consider that. Uh, looking on to item five, which is sort of that. Uh, looking on to item five, which is sort of that Lee Boulevard and Barnes Street. I do have some concerns on the the designs here with a two-way bike path on the side of a street that's really um, sort of a major access to that that shopping districts. Um, and certainly on the side it's on, you know, there's there's very large driveways that you're crossing and a two-way path um, by its nature introduces, you know, a few extra conflicts than than that might be there normally. So the suggestion I would hope we can consider is uh, to look at one-way protected lanes. They've removed sort of that counterflow conflict with left-turning traffic um, coming into the shopping area. Uh, you know, it's it's easy to kind of get lost. You're coming from a direction, maybe you're, that's not being considered, that's not the driver's focus. Uh, so so that's a concern. Um, certainly, you know, I think we can look at, you know, at least maybe pushing to the other side of Barnes with pathway. Uh, that would lessen that that conflict. Um, you know, I think it's good to see the uh, crossing at Lee, uh, sort of Southeast Collegiate. I think that's nice to see that that's been included. Um, I wonder if we can look at sort of a planned connection across Waverly into that central Waverly West Network. It looks like it's the the pathway kind of connects into Waverly just a bit north of uh, where that Lee intersection is. Um, so hopefully we can look at that. Uh, finally, I just want to discuss the uh, city of Winnipeg preliminary budget. Um, you know, one thing I I've noticed with uh, last, I think of the last two years is we haven't really been seeing any indication of of what road renewals are, including um, upgrades, improvements to uh, walking and cycling. Uh, so you know, we used to like sort of have the budget amounts included in the pedestrian and cycling program. Uh, I'm I'm not sure we need the amount, but at least some indication uh, that those road renewals uh, where they're overlapping um, the bike network are indeed including uh, the AT improvements and some sense of what's being considered. Uh, or the alternatives that are being considered, I think would be a huge step. So if you can maybe ask uh, the the administration to look into that, it would be a greatly appreciated benefit that we would, we would find. Uh, would allow us to, I think, provide a better feedback hopefully on on the budget. Um, you know, the Arlington Bridge, I I want to speak to that as well. Certainly, we think it's really a key link um, that we need to be moving forward. Uh, you know, we have the report in now, so we have the cost. Um, so we're we're hopeful that we consider it. You know, it's a key link. If you're coming from the north to the south, it's that connection to the downtown. Health Sciences Complex, the Research Center. Um, but you know, going from the south to the north as well, uh, it's really important to connect the Silk Road Avenue to help um, maintain uh, the viability of of Silk Road Avenue is an important uh, mixed-use destination. Uh, as well, you know, the Incester Industrial Area, I I, if I recall from the the old transportation studies, that was one of the highest visited areas in the city, so that that creates an important destination and certainly as well recognizing that, you know, uh, Arlington connects to a number of areas identified by the city as uh, higher needs neighborhoods on the, on that north side of the Arlington alignment, so it's important to make sure that those residents uh, you know, who are probably more likely to walk or to bike. Um, and and that they are disproportionately harmed by that closure. Uh, so to to correct that and to get that um, that route um, back open and you know, as I said in the past, I think we're happy to see the the improvements and um, will live with the improvements that that are there. They'll, they'll make a definite benefit. Um, but it it's certainly Arlington, you know, we really do see that as a future regional route uh, for the bike network. I think it's huge potential. You know, um, it it's really uh, an important gap, you know, if you look uh, along there, there's two kilometers where we don't have anything. Uh, detouring to McPhillips is a kilometer and a half. Uh, detouring to Slarabchuck is two and a half kilometers. Um, you know, so that detour really limits the range of someone. Um, uh, you know, if they're on their bike and it's, it's sort of sending a message that that riding your bike is not normal and maybe not encouraged. Um, so you know, we'd like you to at least work uh, to include the demolition and design in the twenty twenty-five budget. Uh, to move that forward, to get, to get things rolling uh, on that Arlington Bridge replacement, I think could be uh, important. Um, and you know, in the interim too, we're hopefully that you consider a a a detour. Uh, sort of in that McPhillips uh, Jarvis sort of connection uh, to get us around. I I know some people have been having issues. There's the the sort of the angled track that's a little difficult to the crossing. Uh, and there might be potential to do some temporary uh, things. Certainly would require some consultation with the the businesses and the trucking association um, to go through that. Uh, final thing I want to speak to on the budget is um, to 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 really encourage uh, the administration um, to work hard uh, towards submitting some federal active transportation fund grants. Um, there's been a new round that has opened up, uh, that's creating five hundred million dollars uh, in funding. Uh, and and we certainly would like to see Winnipeg make sure we're getting our share of that, that we're uh, looking into submissions and starting that process um, so that we can get our share of that federal funding. Um, you know, to really increase the the bang that we get for the bucks for those city dollars. Uh, things like the North Winnipeg Parkway, we've got a report coming in hopefully soon uh, on the completion of that. Um, we know there's going to be a funding requirement for that, so we'd love to see that as one example of something we can, we can make an application for. Um, the Osborne Downtown Walk Bike Bridge. Um, you know, upgrades that we're planning. We got the rehab on Wellington Avenue. I think it's been deferred to twenty twenty-six. Um, but we would love to see that. Uh, you know, the center plan plans are out. Um, some of it's funded, some of it isn't. Uh, so if we can get, make use of that uh, planning, uh, along with Saint Matthews, the North Hydro Quarter, maybe a feasibility study to look at how we get across that CPR yards or how we deal with connections south in the CPR yards as well would be great. Uh, you know, we're, we're doing, I know the administration has done good work on planning for that that eventual connection from Togo to Brandon along the Red River, sort of in the Fort Rouge area. And the uh, yeah. Um, I guess the Fort Gary area. And you know, we have a number of neighborhood greenway studies uh, sitting sort of on the shelf, ready, ready to move forward as well as that Elmwood-St. Boniface connection. Uh, this Kingsbury, Enfield, St. John Baptist, Ruby Banning, St. George, Coleman. So I'm hoping that we can um, really work at getting as much of those those um, applications submitted as possible. Um, so that we can really try and double up and hopefully we can get the province to pony up as well. Um, and uh, you know, that really increases that that bank for our back. So thank you very much for your time. If there's any questions, I'd be, I'd be happy to to answer.
Okay, um, thanks, Mark, for your presentation. Uh, committee members, any questions, comments? Counselor Edie.
I just, I just wanted to your presentation about the Arlington Bridge, I appreciate the support that's coming from the cycling community on that. Um, but uh, you said you talked about uh, neighborhoods, communities on the north side of the bridge. Uh, you know that there are neighborhoods that struggle just like William White and others on the south side of that bridge. You know that, right?
Absolutely, absolutely, counselor.
Because you only said the north side.
Yes, consider it a, an error of omission.
Yeah, anyway, the bridge, the bridge is basically almost central and uh, anyway, I just wanted to uh, make sure you also understood that when you're talking about, there's a lot of people can only afford to use bikes, bikes and stuff and uh, getting across bridges and yes, businesses are around the Arlington Bridge. They've seen a downturn in the amount of uh, sales that they have nowadays, so I would point that out and, oh, yeah. Anyway, thanks for your support on that, Mark.
Thank you for your support as well, counselors.
Also, Sharma. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mark, it's always great to have you come here and continue to advocate and speak about the presentation. Um, it's very good to work with you on the Northwest Hydro Quarter, the first phase. Been tremendous usage there. Uh, the community is very excited and uh, they know that Phase Two is um, in the works. You and I have talked about this before. Can you speak to the importance of of getting that Phase Two done, both in the Old Kildonan Ward and going through Point Douglas and Lutowski as well?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, uh, we certainly see that as as one of the primary connections in the city for for active transportation. Um, it it's sort of the alternative to McPhillips. Um, but it it connects well uh, into communities uh, east and west of it. And we do believe that there's a good, a good design um, and a good potential to uh, fully connect that. Certainly through to uh, the casino, which is sort of that second phase. Uh, you know, um, we we're working with the city to look at ensuring that as we sort of develop uh, further south into a sort of a denser um, neighborhood grid. That we're, we're working to make sure that the crossings we have on the local streets are implemented i- in a way that's um, safe. Uh, that really provides priority to to the bikeways that we're not getting a disjointed uh, sort of uh, connection and route. Um, and and that we're making sure uh, that we do have uh, a roadway, a a, sorry, a cycling network um, and crossing facilities that are really intuitive and uh, understood by everyone. And the, you know, ultimately, we we feel that this connection uh, has the potential to reach, you know, on the perimeter highway uh, so um, really to uh, the the South Cinnaboin uh, Parkway, so the Cinnaboin River uh, trails and and connections.
Thanks, Mark. Look forward to further discussions and.
You bet.
To make sure Hydro is doing what they need to do. You know, the public service is working well with them, but you know, we want things to move a little quicker so we can get this underway. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, so uh, thanks, Mr. Cole for your presentation and always for your advocacy. And I wanted to uh, just very briefly comment on the motions that were referred to the budget related to the Waverly West Ward. Um, you know, I put forward motions just to understand what uh, type of infrastructure the public service was recommending. Getting a ballpark idea of the costs. One of our major challenges is the lack of an east-west connection to Pembina Highway and the University of Manitoba. The University of Manitoba. So um, I have met with your southwest counterpart there. I forget his name off the top of my head. He came to our budget meeting. Um, and um, I want to meet with him in more. Uh, I'd love to meet with him and you and just go through it more fine-grained, okay? Because you bring perspectives. I live there. I have perspectives. Public Service has perspectives. We have no money to do it right now. But um, if we all get on the same page, that would be great. So uh, another thing I wanted to note is we do have a study this year, a class three estimate that's going to go on to look at, we call it the South End Confusion Corner, Bison and Waverly, and how that intersection that intersection is holding up the active transportation pathway along Waverly. So when they do that intersection, they'll do the active transportation pathway along Waverly connecting to Abenoji. So um, some good stuff happening, but we need to have more discussion on that. So so that's, that's, that's going to be happening. And um, yeah, and then I guess my question to you is, um, how how are you feeling about the amount of funding that's um, we're at right now for active transportation? Um, what's in the line item and then what is also included in the roads budget? I'm just looking for the exact amount, to say the exact amount, but it's a lot. What I just, I just want to, I want to hear what you think about that. You've been here, like, I don't know.
Yeah, I've certainly been there once or twice.
Yeah.
Um, you know, certainly, I think, you know, I, this is sort of, I think, our final year where we're really uh, still sort of nursing that cutback from the provincial government. Um, so I'm happy to see we're, we're increasing in those future years. Um, you know, I I'm, I'd argue that we could always see more. I'm happy to see that, I think, we've increased the sidewalk renewals budget and the the uh, renewals and the road renewals uh, side of things. Um, and we do have some um, you know, improvements to the recreational walkways that they're going to make some differences. Um, you know, uh, Osborne Underpass, I'm not sure hundred percent why the design of that is listed under active transportation, but I guess it doesn't really make a difference as it's an add-on. It's uh, whether it's in the original roads or the active transportation doesn't make a huge difference. Um, but you know, I I think, you know, the investment we show and and we do, I would always love to see us do more. But I'm happy to see the increase and and like I said, let's, we'll work with the provincial government. Uh, we want to push to get more funding from them and certainly I think the uh, the federal government is giving us that opportunity to to match some of the funding that the city is putting in, which I'm I'm hopeful we can make use of. I know we've done that in the past.
Okay, so um, can you send me that link to the new federal funding that they've got, like I I?
Absolutely.
That I have, but if you could send it to me, that'd be great. Okay, and.
And we're looking forward to March fifteenth, too.
Yeah, exactly. I'm just, they're just going to post the event on my webpage and then we'll promote it. But um, yeah, you know what, like, I look around the room here and I see you're the only person here to speak to active transportation. I'm going to take that as a positive sign. I'm going to take it as a positive sign. I'm gonna, and I I'm afraid to say this because there's a snowstorm coming. But I haven't taken any, any heat so far. I don't know about anyone else on Twitter or X about our path, path clearing and our snow removal on sidewalks and bike paths. So, you know, we only had really one big snowfall, but we've been out there sanding, doing touch-ups when it blows in. So the purchase of additional equipment with the support of council and um, working with the community, with the stakeholders, I don't know. I'm feeling pretty optimistic about it. And like I say, I'm saying that knowing the snowstorm's coming, but um, you know, how, I, just because we invested a lot of money in that, how are you feeling about?
I, I think we're seeing the difference. So, you know, uh, I I'm regularly on the routes. Uh, I know there is, uh, I think, I think actually we sent a little thank you to Mr. Cantor, and I'm not sure if you were included in on that. Um, to say that some of that work is is being recognized out in the community, uh, that those improvements are being seen and appreciated. Um, I think where we're maybe having trouble, and I understand this is, I'm happy to see that there'll be a motion going to EPC on that that the fifteen centimeter threshold pilot. Um, but you know, I think we are seeing improvements. Uh, one issue that's maybe still lingering is how we deal with our painted bike lanes, some, some of those where we're dealing with the snow kind of gets swept into the gutter area uh, as vehicles pass. And and maintaining uh, clearance there is is still uh, is an ongoing issue. So I think we'll reach out to Mr. Cantor on that. And I know he's, he's uh, for feedback and been open to that.
Sure, and yeah, and he's been spectacular. So um, and you know, I don't know if you noticed, but we've got a new paint machine coming also. We've got one on order, we've got a brand new paint machine coming, and we've got a supplement of outsourcing for, I think, five or six hundred thousand dollars for this year until the new paint machine comes. So that's going to make huge difference, so.
Yes, uh, that's, I, that was, that's new to me and very appreciated.
Yeah, perfect, okay. So if that's it for comments or questions from the committee, thank you very much, always for your advocacy and um, for representing, we know, hundreds of people out there, thousands of people. Um, have a great day.
Thank you for your time and uh, enjoy the rest of your day as well.
All right. Okay, we'll go back to Mr. Grant.
He had six minutes remaining. Do we want to do the six minutes?
Sure, sure. Continue on.
Okay. So, where were we? How much did you even hear?
You know what, just do your thing and we'll. Yeah, I think we need to start over.
Okay, anyway, um, as usual, I'll read quickly. I want to thank you for agreeing to listen to me. Uh, from, thank my former counselor for her words of encouragement. Also want to thank the prior delegations, all carefully, careful and thoughtful people. Uh, these following words are related to item eight. Each of us has a perspective. Chris wants you to find more funding so his people will have more projects to work on. I like the way that he explained a future where the city and province could shift who pays and on what. He quoted Ontario. I'd remind you of Michigan. They did some major shifting many years ago. They cut property taxes substantially in exchange for a two percent increase in sales tax. This helped everyone in every corner of the state and it's worked well for all those years. We could do that in Manitoba. The province could increase sales tax, take over spending on. We could do that in Manitoba. The province could increase sales tax, take over spending on major capital projects like the sewage plant. Uh, on the other hand, um, those who pay taxes have different priorities and than Mr. Lawrence has. Uh, we care about the tax load that future generations will face. Some of us want fewer such new projects. Uh, moving on to topic two, crashes on Waverly. Has anyone consulted with MPI? Do their data say that curbs are to blame for all these crashes, not driver behavior? Uh, on topic three, the trailside sidewalk. I've spoken here for the residents of Fort Richmond, and for years we have noted that most of our roads have no sidewalk. We ask, what makes this crescent more worthy of this spending than our roads? Rochester serves as a collector for hundreds of people. And many of them have to walk to get to the bus, and many of them walk their dogs on that road. But it has no sidewalk and seldom sees a snowplow, further impeding those on foot. Will each of the homeowners on trailside be paying the eight, eight thousand or ten thousand dollars uh in a local improvement fee? Will this be a special and very unusual gift from us to the people on trailside? Uh, on bike paths on Lee, Winnipeg has thousands of quiet suburban roads. Most of us have enjoyed family biking on these quiet suburban roads for many decades. If you throw one point two million to the wind on this, will it be fair and buy thousands more of these suburban paths? How happy will taxpayers be if you waste billions of dollars on more bike paths where they're not really needed? Now, if you compare riding along Lee or walking along Lee, which I've done a lot of, versus on Pembina uh or Waverly, um, those busy roads, high-speed roads, really do need a separate place for a bicycle. Anyway, um, does this spending of this sort of thing, a million dollars for a little bit of path, doesn't sound extravagant? Will this be the last such path that your friends ask for? Obviously not. Uh, I like Mark Koho, and we have different aspects on what cyclists really need. We do run into each other occasionally on bike events. Uh, it's ironic that staff claim that there are no implications for this report on this pro- this Lee project. If you build this, it sets a precedent. This is an unfortunate implication. It is even worse that your money guy says no financial implications. It's as if he does not understand that this was written as step one for building it. Why is it up to taxpayers to point out any di- downsides to this plan? We don't see this done professionally or by your uh people commenting uh from City Hall. Uh, anyway, I have biked and walked uh on Lee and Barnes for, and the surrounding streets for many hours. And they are among the least scary roads in the city. The whole idea of spending millions on bike paths and calling it a pedestrian strategy. Why does this strategy not uh do it help the people in, on roads where there is no sidewalk and where there is no plowing? So anyway, um, moving on, leave the rest of that out. Uh, on topic six, the bridge. This is a very good report. As it rusts, rebar swells and destroys concrete. Is there any reinforcing steel in the concrete that will be reused? Do OEM drawings prove this? It's been a long time, a century. Has it been confirmed with a bit of radiography? Anyway, I'm good to see that the uh rusty steel will be scrapped. Will it all be gone? Hopefully. Uh, will hot dipped, hot dipped steel be used in the rebuild? Will the new steel beams be designed, cut, dipped, and plated in Manitoba? We found out at Hydro that uh the steel they used, even though we make this stuff here, uh, was all bought from uh Asia, from India. Uh, and I would ask this, will existing gravel be used for fill, where possible, to minimize disposal costs? And on topic seven, gravel gravel roads. I see no mention here of the merits of reducing speeds on these roads. Applying a thirty kilometer limit would provide, provide far greater benefits than what was used to justify the thirty limits in the city. Uh, I've noticed that gravel roads have a problem of uh, the traction is is less, so it takes longer to stop a vehicle on gravel. The dust cloud that follows cars under some conditions. Um, fresh gravel and freshly grated gravel when it's dry. Um, the cars kick up a cloud of dust. Now, when you're driving in that cloud of dust, uh, you really shouldn't be going more than walking speed at that point because you have no visibility and can't stop. So the smaller dust cloud from cars all going under thirty would put those on foot in far less danger. Gravel is lost on, from such roads as fine particles blow away when cars go very fast. There will be less danger to other vehicles from thrown-up rocks if the speed limit is reduced. The road surface will last longer. Homes in the area will be less dusty, road noise reduced. In the name of saping, safety, and keeping the road possible for longer, let's post thirty limits on the city's gravel roads. Mayor, uh, on topic eight, the mayor's covering letter points out that senior governments have not actually promised to pay for all the nutrient removal that they forced on us. The money has not arrived. Remember that the engineers who said that this was needed, this uh removal of phosphorus and nitrogen.
It's not really public works, but keep going.
Yes, no, this is uh correct, but uh, uh, it is related to the um, that's one of the other anomalies, I would say, is that each one of these uh, each committee, each uh standing policy committee has the same um, spending and spending reduction documents, rather than breaking it out into one that relates just to your stuff. Anyway, um, but the engineers who said that this was needed are very close to the ones who profit from the extra billion in spending. It was uh, the nitrogen was uh led to. The unbiased technical folks who spoke to you at the time pointed out that ninety nine, for ninety nine percent less money, you could remove the phosphate. The flocculation plan could have been complete and paid four years ago. Uh, I agree with Kelly that there are many unexplored ways for the city to save money. And I would suggest that uh, as part of the budget discussion, um, somebody, like a little committee, it could be a volunteer committee, like your other ones. Um, like your active transportation, it's not all councillors. You'd have a committee of uh Mark and Kelly and I and and some others to help find ways to save money. On fleet management, there's some irony here. If the folks, the the folks at fleet management can justify spending money on newer vehicles because a new vehicle supposedly emits less pollution, why do so many city vehicles idle all day long? Why is fleet management not using their new high-tech tools and an effective no idle city policy to drastically cut idling time? If a new vehicle emits so much less than a twenty twenty-two vehicle, what's wrong with that twenty twenty-two? How many of the disposed vehicles are worn beyond repair? On my first city job, a long time ago, I drove a pickup truck. Back then, most light city vehicles were used until closer to their actual end of life. And I would question, how valid are the justifications from fleet management? And why do we not have one of their goals be to spend less extravagantly on new vehicles? And I will leave it there. Are there any clarifications needed? Yeah.
Okay, comments, questions from the committee members? No, um, you bring a lot of information, Mr. Grant. Um, I just, uh, I don't know if you'd heard what I'd said related to the projects in the Waverly West Ward to Mr. Koho. You know, we're just doing exploratory stuff. We're not making commitments on money or anything. Um, sometimes it means there may be a commitment later down the road. A lot of times it doesn't. Um, but it's just exploratory. And just so you're clear, the, one of the biggest pain points I have, now you didn't come to any of my budget presentations, so that's okay. Uh, but I encourage you to go and look at the PowerPoint that I did. Uh, one of our biggest point, point, pain points, which in the big picture of the city is like really nothing, but one of our biggest pain points is that east-west connection, getting people to Pembina and the University of Manitoba. So um, that's what we're looking and trying to fix, you know? Transportation-wise and and active transportation-wise. You, you see the backup getting out of the community of Waverly West. The missing link always has been that east-west connection, which is the bu- punch-through Bison at our intersection. So I'm just sort of exploring until that happens, other avenues and routes. So that's, that's kind of what that's all about.
No, I, I agree. And um, ever since the roads were first laid out in the uh, uh, Bridgewater area, it did strike me strange that none of the uh east-west actually made that connection. And especially the ones that would run down Bison to the university. So that's certainly one big problem area. Um, and uh, so it's uh, as far as the budget presentation, uh, obviously I would have been there. I've been to others, um, because I found out about them. And in this case, um, I recall being at city council and pointing out that public consultations in those days, this is like twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, consultations appeared on the city website in a list of all the consultations for the next month or so that were scheduled. Uh, but you had to go two pages down to find them. So you had to go to new topics or news or whatever. Um, now, if you search on the website, because after I found out about your uh budget consultation, which I would have attended, and I was disappointed that I didn't hear, uh, I went to the website and tried to find it, or tried to find the next one. And uh, I found that there is no listing of that sort of thing. And if you search for things like consultation or budget consultation, whatever, um, the results are not encouraging. So uh, in the day, uh, this is like the fifteen years ago period. Um, I had advocated that the, there'd be a little corner on the front page of the city website that would list consultations to try and get the um participation up. Um, because even if I attend, and I attend today, um, there, most of the city doesn't. And uh, I'd suggest the front page listing of uh consultations would be good back then. And uh, the, actually, my written response, my emailed response from the city was that uh, the person I was talking to is that council has no control over what appears on the city website. That was the, the excuse for not putting consultations up front. So uh, I'm not sure how much control you have nowadays, but if you want people to attend consultations, um, making them more prominent on city documents and uh, um, city flyers, whatever means you have, um, might serve a purpose there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, good points. Thank you very much. So um, if there's no other questions or comments, I thank you for coming and being a delegate, and um, I'm I'm sure we'll see you again soon. Thank you. Okay, so committee members, I want to propose a fifteen-minute stretch or a ten, you know, just sort of a break before we start with the presentations.
My old league suit.
Yeah, so it is, um, what is it? Like, we can get that, oh, yeah, we've got clock fixed. Way to go, man. Okay. So let's take a fifteen-minute break and try and reconvene in fifteen minutes, okay?
Yep, three, we're at twelve o'clock, I'm done.
And then you've got to go. Okay, all right. Okay, break. I'd like to reconvene the budget meeting of Public Works and um, welcome everyone back. We're going to start with Transit first. So welcome Transit team. We've got six, seven, six folks from Transit here, seven, eight, however. Um, and we're going to go through the uh service-based budget on Transit. All right, welcome.
Great. Uh, good morning. I'm Greg Walken, and we've got our Transit team here for our budget presentation this morning. We'll do some quick introductions. We've got Jesse Crowder, manager of our AMO office, Aaron Cook, our Zero Mission Bus Project Manager, Teresa Platt, our manager of client services, Jordan Radstrom, our manager of service development. In the back here, we have Kirk Cunningham, the manager of IT, and Laurie Fisher, our manager of finance. And Laurie is going to start us off uh with the presentation this morning.
Hey.
All right. Great, thanks, Greg, and good morning, uh, councillors. Uh, this is the twenty twenty-five budget presentation for the Winnipeg Transit Service. And in this meeting, we'll be touching on some service highlights and reviewing the preliminary budget for Transit's operations, capital, and reserves for twenty twenty-five. If you have any questions as we go through, uh, please just let us know. Uh, we're going to start with some service highlights, looking back onto twenty twenty-four. And most notably, the department was able to continue implementing some items that are in the Winnipeg Transit Master Plan. Including, we added or upgraded over one hundred bus stops. We expanded service into Castleberry Meadows and Aurora neighborhoods. That was in September twenty twenty-four. And we also got approval for the proposed primary transit routing network. We launched a new Transit Plus and On-Request trip booking system and app. And with that new system, we've already seen a drastic improvement in the routing efficiencies of the Transit Plus vehicles, increased communication options with customers, and enhanced accessible functionality for booking rides to customers that have all been very well received. We have received sixty-five new buses as part of the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. And we hired two hundred and eight new bus operators. We launched the Fair Collection Strategy Project, and work with that consultant continues. It is well underway. We will be reporting back to this committee in May with a recommended path forward for the replacement of the Fair Collection system. This is a very high-priority project for the department. And we expanded the live bus camera feed that's installed in Transit's control center to improve safety for both operators and passengers. And this safety feature allows the control center personnel to immediately connect to the live audio and video feed in any bus to assess the situation and dispatch the appropriate emergency services. It provides real-time monitoring and advanced situational awareness for those personnel en route to provide assistance. With regards to the twenty twenty-four financial forecast, the November forecast, which will be tabled at the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow, reflects a surplus uh position for the department of approximately nine point three million dollars. It's important to understand that this is mostly a result of favorable fuel pricing that we realized during twenty twenty-four, including the extension of the provincial gas tax holiday, coupled with some salary savings as well due to a large number of vacant positions. For the twenty twenty-five budget, the fuel rate has been adjusted to reflect closer to the current actual rate that we are paying. And efforts are ongoing to fill all the vacant positions within the department. These savings did offset over expenditures that were realized in bus parts and a fair sure, uh, fair revenue shortfall as well that we incurred in twenty twenty-four. It's also important to note that there will be a year-end accounting adjustment related to a new accounting standard. And that will reduce the final year-end surplus amount that the department will ultimately report. So that year-end number is still to be finalized and expected to change.
Can I ask my question now?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just Laurie was saying as we go.
Okay, sure.
Just in that first section, Laurie, before you move on, the key achieve- achievements. Thanks for highlighting uh, the good things that are happening. Um, we hired two hundred and eight new bus operators. That's excellent, because there were some challenges. Of course, Greg, in recruitment at one time. Can you elaborate on um, on that, the recruitment efforts and?
Yeah, we did some changes that took effect in about the middle of the year in January, uh, sorry, January, July. And uh, what we had done was we had streamlined our recruitment process during hiring blitzes, not bringing people in on a particular day and putting them all through the, the processes needed to uh get them to where they need to be to see if we were going to hire them or not. Uh, we also looked at our uh training uh opportunities. Uh, we had to bulk up our training uh staff through temporary uh measures um, to be able to put uh the two hundred and eight through that, that program. So we actually went to a process where we were hiring six operators every week, every Monday, a new training class would start. We're maintaining that throughout uh twenty twenty-five this year. Um, so potentially, um, you know, with every week that we have, we could hire upwards of three hundred drivers. But we also know that uh, we're not going to hire six for every class. There's going to be some weeks where we'll be a little bit short. So we're expecting to be around the two hundred and fifty range if needed.
Right. So we continue to watch recruitment, but it's not as much of a pain point right now?
It's, it's still, it's a clocking area, I would say, because we still need additional drivers um, to be able to launch the whole service in. So we're working hard towards that.
Yeah.
Um, and that's in an effort to reduce the amount of overtime that we're having right now.
Thank you. And my next question was around the year-end surplus, uh, because of the fuel prices. We're good? What's the surplus, Laurie? And is it going to retain earnings or what's the plan for the surplus?
So um, the year, year end is still ongoing. Uh, this is just a forecast at this point in time, right? So we have a forecast. We'll see where the year-end results come in. We do have, as I mentioned, a significant accounting adjustment, which is going to reduce um, the surplus amount. Uh, there is a recommendation in the budget book relating to surpluses from any fund, including reserves and operating funds um, that could potentially be used to um, you know, bolster the financial stabilization reserve. And so whether it will ultimately roll into Transit retained earnings um, or go into the financial stabilization reserve, I believe, is still to be determined. But first, we have to get through year end and see what that actual number is.
Thank you.
Just a moment to follow up. With respect to the two hundred and eight new bus drivers or bus operators, uh,
Uh, what's your retention?
We we lost what was the vote on average for the previous years, uh, which was, which was a hundred and thirty.
So you hired two hundred and eight and lost a hundred and thirty or kept a hundred and thirty?
Lost a hundred and thirty to retirements, terminations, that sort of stuff.
But of the two hundred and eight new bus drivers, are you able to retain?
Yes, to a large extent, yeah. I don't know the number of what may not have remained, but or had completed the training.
Correct. Okay, thanks.
Uh, good, thank you. So with respect to then our future plans, looking ahead at what's in for twenty twenty five. We will be implementing a new transit route network. Uh, that is effective June twenty ninth. And this will be one of the biggest changes that Transit's ever implemented to its on-street service. At the same time, we will be expanding service into two neighborhoods, uh, that is Prairie Point and Sage Creek. And we will also be returning to full service. Until that time, we will continue to operate at the six percent service reduction that we have been operating at for quite a while now. There was a ten cent fare increase. It was implemented effective January first. And as I did previously discuss, we will continue to work on the Fair Collection Project this year. Uh, there is a budget recommendation. It's Operating Recommendation J. It includes a review of policies and programs related to fare evasion, and so we will be working on that. And in accordance with another budget recommendation, uh, it's CC. We will be reintroducing diesel buses back into the fleet mix effective twenty twenty seven. There will be a report coming to this committee within a hundred and eighty days of budget approval, which will discuss the potential impacts of this decision. And finally, another significant project that we will be working on this year. Is developing a plan to align to the Provincial Accessibility Transportation Standard Regulations. These come into effect January first, twenty twenty seven. Uh, with regards to challenges, I did mention that it that in twenty twenty four, we had some budget challenges uh, in bus parts and the fare revenue accounts. These are expected to continue in twenty twenty five. As we realize, uh, you know, the impacts of having an aged fleet and as uh, we work with fare evasion challenges. The delivery of the Zero Mission Bus Program um, has been delayed because the buses that were expected to be delivered in twenty twenty four will now be arriving in twenty twenty five. However, the twenty twenty five preliminary budget does not include the additional transit FTEs that we need to manage the Zero Mission Bus Program. So there will be challenges and increased with risk associated with not filling these positions. These are specialized mechanic uh, positions and uh, electrician and an IT position. Are specifically related to working with the Zero Mission Buses. The department's in the process of working out what our contingency plan will be if the budget is approved without those FTEs. We have made a lot of gains on the recruitment front, as Greg has mentioned. But in order to meet service requirements, we need to maintain the necessary staffing levels. And with respect to the new accessibility standards, there's a significant amount of work that needs to be done for January first, twenty twenty seven. And this will be very challenging for Transit to accomplish without additional resources to assist. Uh, as it stands right now, the preliminary budget does not include any additional resources. To help with this project, which does put our ability to meet that legislative deadline at risk. And finally, looking ahead, there is significant capital shortfall for transit bus purchases starting in twenty twenty seven. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later in our presentation.
Okay, so before you get into our performance reporting, are you done that? Okay. So one of the big concerns, I just want to have it for the record here, and you've noted it a couple of times in here, um. Is the Fair Collection Strategy. So. Are you're coming back with a plan or?
Yes.
Like a written, a written plan?
Yes.
And that will be in?
Uh, May.
May too, yeah. Okay. Review policies and programs related to fare evasion. Okay, so you'll come back with details on that. We had highlighted in the budget that this was a concern, revenue stream and all that. So I think that's important to note. There's a lot of important things in here to note, but. Uh, amazing, I think, key achievements, so. Okay, keep moving.
Be five and six, uh, continuing work on Fair Collection and review policies and programs related to fare evasion play hand in hand?
Yeah.
They do somewhat. Um, I think that the Fair Collection Report is really focused on on the kind of technology that we're going to move to. But there are elements uh, to fare evasion that will be addressed as part of it. But I do believe six is probably a larger comprehensive review uh, that would be uh, separate, even though there is a little bit of overlap between those two.
Thanks.
Yeah, but you may recall, we put six million, it was six million even into the. Pardon me?
Six point six.
Six point five into into a new fare system, so. That that's, this is huge. I mean, I remember standing there with the Pango card doing the picture of here we go with Pango when I first started, but um. Okay, super, keep moving.
Okay, so moving on to our performance reportings. Um, the Transit Department contributes one hundred percent to the public transit service. We have three subservices, conventional transit. Transit Plus and a small Charter Special Event Service. We do have four service goals. You'll find them on page one hundred and twenty five of the preliminary budget book. But the one that we've chosen to highlight as most relevant to our budget presentation today. Is to utilize resources responsibly and operate efficiently. We have historically benchmarked very well on our operating cost per passenger, and as you can see from the two tables. Uh, on the side of this slide, we continue to do so both for conventional service and Transit Plus. And just a note, um, to remind everyone that the actual results and the targets. That you see uh, in the uh, on the slide, they do reflect that the impact that COVID has had really on ridership. Uh, ridership is the don't uh, is part of this calculation. And so when ridership fluctuates, you do see those numbers drop, jump around a little bit. Um, but we are looking um, at them being um, somewhat uh, steady. Uh, as we continue to go forward and achieve um, more regular ridership numbers.
So ju- just on this, someone to do a little interjection, um. The ridership numbers, I think, are just m- mind-blowing. Like when you gave me the ridership numbers, I don't think people really understand the volume of people, the what we move on transit. And I don't know, Mr. Yankee, if you can just look that up at some point and. And I know there's a difference between ridership and complete trips, I believe it was, but. Um, I I I just think we should, I know we put it on the website, which was wonderful, but um, and I'm just looking for it here too. Oh, yeah, annual ridership, um. Annual ridership in twenty twenty three was forty-two million, nine hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three, four hundred and thirty-four. Like when people, I had someone at one of my budget consultations go, oh, we're spending so much on transit, blah, blah, blah. I said, you want these people on the roads driving, you know, and so I don't know if you want to make any comments on that. But that's something I think people just don't realize. Like it's a lot of money we're investing in transit and roads and a lot of money we're investing in everything, but the volume of people that we move is just incredible.
Exactly. And you know, when we talk about uh, boardings or ridership, as you mentioned, there is a difference. Boardings are when we have um, individual uh, in individuals are counted as they boarded the bus. Uh, as opposed to ridership. So to give you an example, in twenty twenty two, our average boardings. Were sixty-nine percent of where we were at in twenty nineteen before COVID. And then in twenty twenty three, we jumped up to almost eighty-nine percent. And we finished off twenty twenty four with an average of ninety-five percent. In many of those weeks, we were actually at a hundred percent. So our ridership is definitely coming back.
Right.
Um, I think Bjorn has mentioned uh, several times in the past. Um, the launch of the PTN is, that's the expectation to bring in new ridership, right? With the improvements that we'll see. Certainly, working from home has had an impact uh, on that and some of the changes that we've seen. Um, but um, it don't look as good. And our ridership has bounced back uh, far more than some other transit systems uh, in Canada and the US.
So to just recap the, or maybe you can send it to us in an email, the percentage increases that you just. Yeah, s- sent to us because and we're we're not operating at full capacity either, right? So that creates more drama, so.
Yeah, we're still at a six percent service reduction.
Yes, yes.
And can you also, to the extent possible, provide a correlation? Uh, of increased usage to the deployment of the community safety officers? Like when they came in, were you seeing more and more people starting to use the bus as the CSOs were? Were deployed on buses?
I don't know that I can provide a correlation to that. I don't have a way of measuring that. I do know that um, at some point, the community uh, safety team, they will come up with some sort of a report or some stats and such, so. If if we could wait till then, that would be appreciated.
Yeah.
Greg, could you elaborate on boarding versus ridership?
I'm going to send you his, he gave me a good explanation of it. I'll send it to you, but you can ask him.
I can send that to you, yeah. Sure.
Okay.
And just one other follow-up to that is with the new network coming out in the summer. We're hoping to get new riders. How do we track that and capture that? Obviously, new Pango cards that are registered to.
Yeah, we um, we have a couple of different ways of measuring these things. We we generally measure our boardings um, through our passenger counting system, so. About, it's between fifteen and twenty percent of our bus fleet has um, sensors above the doors that just count people getting on and off, so that tells us the boardings. Um, for ridership, we need to take a look at our actual fare collection data as well. Um, because yeah, the ridership versus boarding, it's dependent on how many people transfer. So for example, when I came here this morning, I took two buses, so I was two boardings, but I'm only one rider. Not everybody, so that's, we we have way to take our boarding data and turn that into our ridership data. Uh, but we'll be tracking it through that, the same methods that we do now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. Just, it's just, I don't know, I, that just was amazing to me and. I think, I know, I think we should, we got on our website, but I just want to bring it up here.
Is there a plus minus in terms of uh, non-payers or fated, uh, ferry vaders? Do you, like in terms of boarding and ridership, are you calculating a percentage of those that don't pay?
Uh, I don't have a calculation of a percentage.
Hey, let's keep moving here.
Yeah, our next slide is just uh, an overview of our twenty twenty five budget. Uh, it does include one thousand six hundred sixty-one point five FTEs. That's an increase from the prior year, and we will review the FTE changes later in the presentation. The deficit amount, which is the amount of the transfer from general revenue, is a hundred and twenty-four point zero million. Uh, that balances an overall operating budget of two hundred and sixty-one point five million dollars. Transit's twenty twenty five capital budget includes fourteen projects totaling seventy-five point seven million dollars. And we have three reserves which have a budgeted uh, twenty twenty five net withdrawal amount of four point eight million dollars. All of this will be covered in more detail in the coming slides. Okay, moving now specifically into the operating budget and just a reminder, this is a service-based view.
That's.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Are you reporting on your retained earnings as well? You're on retained earnings like water and waste those, don't you?
We do. Um, that's not typically part of our budget presentation, but I can speak to it.
Service is kind of like.
Do you want to talk about retained earnings?
Anyway, are you using any of it for operating?
So the retained earnings balance right now at the end of last year was um, it was about six point seven million dollars. Um, Transit is in the process of rebuilding its own operating uh, reserve. It's it's a, it's an amount that we're required to retain in order to offset future deficit amounts. And and that's why it's um, being held for future operating deficits. If Transit in twenty twenty four or twenty twenty five incurs a deficit, it will go against the retained earnings balance first.
It will.
Yeah, before it, you know, before we look to the Financial Stabilization Reserve.
Okay.
Any money that is a surplus at this point in time that we have at the end of twenty twenty four will roll into retained earnings. It will continue to grow that amount. We're required to build it back up to six percent of our operating expenditures. And that's what we're continuing to work on. So it's very similar to the Financial Stabilization Reserve. But whether the money, as I said earlier, stays within the transit retained earnings or gets transferred to the Financial Stabilization Reserve. Uh, that's a decision that I guess we'll be need after year end, once we see what that final now.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so this is a budget overview of uh, of our operating budget. Um, our budget does include a hundred and thirty-seven point five million dollars in revenue. Sixty-seven percent of that is from the sale of goods and services, uh, which is mostly fare revenue. Uh, it does reflect the ten cent uh, increase in full fare cash fares, as I mentioned, and also. Uh, it reflects the win-pass fare products returning to a fifty percent discount off the full fare rates for twenty twenty five. You may recall that in twenty twenty four, they were held at the twenty twenty three levels for that one year. The provincial support grant is thirty-one percent of the total budget. Uh, it remains unchanged in dollars from the prior year. And the other category on the revenue uh, pie chart there includes a two million dollar transfer from the Southwest Payment Reserve. As well as our advertising charter and interest revenue. On the expenditure side, salaries make up fifty-seven percent of our total operating budget. And reflect the increase of twenty-seven point six-three FTEs in twenty twenty five. There is a slide on FTE, so we'll go through that in greater detail in a few slides. Goods and services, which include most notably our bus parts, mode of fuel, and transit plus contracts. Account for thirty percent of our total operating costs. And there's a transfer to only one reserve in twenty twenty five. That's our Southwest Payment Reserve. It amounts to six percent of the total expense budget. And the other notable item, just to highlight on the bar graph, is the cost of debt, uh, which is seven percent of total expenses. And so combined, the cost of capital is thirteen percent of Transit's operating budget. The net difference between the revenues and the expenditures is a hundred and twenty-four point zero million dollars. And that is covered through the transfer of general revenue in order to balance the overall operating budget.
So that that is a significant amount, right? I think it's the most we've transferred. From prior years, am I correct?
It is, it is higher, yeah, me too.
Yeah. Okay, so that 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 number's important when people want to uh, come forward and say, well, let's have free transit, right? Like, like, it's just not, we subsidize it by a hundred and twenty-four million dollars. Like, I don't know if people want to have free transit, find a hundred and twenty-four million. Anyways, I just, I always get worked up about that, but it's people, I don't think people understand how much we subsidize transit. And the cost of each ride, like your prior service-based um, reporting really reflects that. But and the cost for Transit Plus, so. It's 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 significant and, but it's important, but it's significant, so. Okay.
Given you made that point.
Okay.
Uh, we heard thirty-one percent funded by province. What is that dollar value that they're subsidizing? The transit system?
It's forty-two million dollars.
Forty-two. And we're doing a hundred and twenty?
A hundred and twenty-five. Plus the forty-two from the province.
Hundred and twenty-four from the city, plus forty-two from the province.
Right, forty-two from the province, okay.
I wish.
It used to be a fifty-fifty, it used to be a fifty-fifty share, did it not?
Uh, yes, there used to be a cost-sharing formula, but that has not been in place for a number of years.
So our having to subsidize keeps growing substantially then?
Thirty-sixty-six more.
Okay, all right.
So that that funding from the province, though, that is that, like I, I thought that was in the basket. That was pulled then from general revenue, but you're saying that's separate.
That is not included in the hundred and twenty-four million.
Okay, yeah, from the general revenue, that's separate, okay. Did they give it to us in the basket?
Or is it so?
Okay, 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 all right.
Let's go through it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Wonderful.
Uh, this slide compares the twenty twenty four adopted budget to the twenty twenty five submission, so it's a year-over-year comparison. On the revenue side, there is a three million dollar increase in revenue, and that is the result of the rate increase on fares.
Ten cents brought in three million dollars.
That's correct. It's about two point seven, actually. Those three hundred thousand and other miscellaneous increases.
Yep.
And then on the expense side, there's an increase of twelve and a half million dollars, and that is the result of a few items. The largest one is salaries. Salaries have increased by seven point eight million dollars as a result of three items. The negotiated wage increase in the various collective agreements accounts for three point six million. The cost of added FTEs to support transit operations and the extension of service into the new neighborhoods is one point eight. The cost of added F T Es to support transit operations and the extension of service into the new neighborhoods is one point eight million. And there is an increase in the budget related to the higher cost of the workers' compensation claims that the department is experiencing. And so that was an increased budget amount of two point two million dollars. There was also an increase in debt and financing costs of three point nine million. So a lot of the city's funding for transit's capital projects are now funded through debt. And so we do see the impact of this in higher borrowing costs through the operating budget. Uh transit did borrow forty four million dollars in twenty twenty four, and there is additional planned borrowing in twenty twenty five, mostly to support the purchase of buses. Additionally, there were increases in a few other accounts as well, most notably the transit plus contracts. Uh those are from higher contract costs on contracts awarded in recent years, including twenty twenty four. And a higher cost for some bus and automotive parts. These costs are partially offset by a lower budget for fuel as a result of adjusting that uh rate. Uh down to the average estimated rate for twenty twenty five.
So just for the record and um because it's very interesting, what with the um fuel tax rebate? That we had, what what amount of what value in fuel was saved? Do you have that handy or no?
Um. So the twenty twenty four budget um had had assumed that the provincial uh fuel tax holiday would be in place from January to June. So the budget did reflect that savings already. However, it was extended. And so I think I believe we saved an additional uh about one point two million dollars. Um as a result of it being extended from July to the end of the year.
One point two, so and and we don't know what it was before. What do we budget for twenty twenty four of the savings from January to June?
Uh it would be about, it would be one point two million, yeah.
Okay, so it's so it's about a two point five million dollar savings. Two point four?
Yes.
Okay. And. But I think that's interesting. Okay.
Okay, the next slide is looking at um our forecast submission. This reflects the changes that were made. In our twenty twenty five operating budget from what we had forecasted for twenty twenty five and last year's budget process. Uh the main changes uh that are causing our net increase in the deficit amount of one point three million dollars. Are most notably the reduction uh that was made to fair revenue to better align with our actual amounts. Uh so we did reduce um fair revenue uh by four million dollars. We had an increase in the budget for the workers' compensation costs, costs, as I mentioned, of two point two million. We had an increase uh in transit plus contracts based on the actual contract amounts that were awarded in twenty twenty four. And that was all offset by savings in fuel. Uh by adjusting the fuel rate down, as I've mentioned, uh to more closely reflect the rate that we're actually paying right now. So that reduced um the twenty twenty five budget by seven million dollars. It was very significant. So that pretty much um offset some of the increases, and we have a net overall increase of one point three million dollars. Uh the future years you'll see are lower than what we had forecasted, and that variance is really driven by the same variables that I just described. But the fair revenue adjustment was smaller and the fuel savings amount was larger. Um and there's also some lower debt and finance costs as we uh do pay off some of our older debt amounts in the future years. And so that overall uh created a decreased deficit uh for twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven.
Well, so when you say the fair revenue adjustment, like you anticipated more and you didn't?
Yeah, so um when we did the four year multi year budget, we had, we know that fair revenue, even with increased ridership, is not returning to the levels that we had before. And we had spoke a little bit about this in last year's budget where the uh ridership demographic is changing. And we're seeing more ridership in those concessionary fare categories and less in full fare. So even though the ridership is coming back, the revenue isn't returning to the same extent. So um we did in in last year's multi year budget, we had identified that the rate. The fair revenue really needed to be adjusted by about thirteen and a half, fourteen million dollars. And what we see in these forecasted submission ones is that we're still working towards adjusting those out. Outlying year fare budgets to achieve that thirteen and a half, fourteen million dollar adjustment. So in each year, we kind of are adjusting the current year that's ahead of us. And those outlying years uh not quite to the same extent. So we're going to continue to see some fair revenue adjustments or issues with fair revenue. Um you know, each budget year within this multi year budget as we work to adjust those differences out. Okay. So it's not that the fair revenue amount is necessarily changing from what we had originally thought. It's just how we're adjusting it through the budget in each year. Okay, this is the salary slide. We're looking at salary budget and um the F T Es. So the department has one thousand six hundred sixty one point five one F T Es in twenty twenty five. This is an increase of twenty seven point six three F T Es over twenty twenty four, and this is the result of three items. The largest F T E impact is the result of expanding service into four neighborhoods. So as I mentioned, we launched uh service, expanding it into two neighborhoods last year. That was for a partial year. And we will be um expanding into the other two neighborhoods uh this year in June. And so collectively with a full year uh operating um F T Es for the ones we launched last year. And the net additional half year for the two neighborhoods this year, which are Prairie Prairie Point and Sage Creek. That's a total of sixteen point two F T Es that are being added in twenty twenty five relating to expansion of service. And the majority of those F T Es are bus operator positions. Last year, uh we did receive additional F T Es to help support various operational areas that needed resourcing. At that time, the twenty twenty four impact was a partial year. And so again, the impact to twenty twenty five is just a full year from those same positions, and that's ten point six seven F T Es. And this year, we also uh received additional F T Es for a shelter servicer and laborer position. This is related to the new infrastructure. That will be installed for the primary transit network in June. Uh this is again a partial year in twenty twenty five. A point seven six F T E and a full year will be reflected next year in twenty twenty six at one point five F T E.
And just on that note, just because I know um Council Sherman and I've been talking about these shelters, like what what will these people be doing, the one and a half people?
Uh this is shelter servicing, so cleaning.
Oh, just servicing. That's correct. Yeah.
Got it. This is an operational F T E related.
Maintenance of maintenance.
Okay, got it.
Actually.
Uh so in all, we have total salaries and benefits of a hundred and forty eight point five million dollars in twenty twenty five, which is an increase of seven point eight million. And we've discussed that variance on the last slide. The vacancy management target for the department is twenty three point four four F T Es. This is unchanged from last year. And there are thirty two temporary F T Es included in the capital budget that are expected to be working on capital projects in twenty twenty five. Um, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I just ask a question about the one point five or whatever? Correct me if I'm wrong, we're not in the capital yet, but what um. All the proposed infrastructure stops and that uh uh is not being uh installed. Over the next, over twenty five or twenty six, is that right?
Um. The infrastructure for the primary transit network, we've already started on it this year, and we've had several bus stops constructed this year. Uh or sorry, last year, I should say, you forget anywhere in twenty twenty five. In twenty twenty four, we we had done a few projects. That transited ministered, and we also teamed up with Public Works and some other street renewal projects to get a lot of the work done. That's going to continue into twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six and possibly even beyond. So it's it's ongoing.
Yeah, twenty six, but it's still, but still all won't be in place yet, right?
Correct. It's going to take a couple of years to get everything in place.
Couple more years. So the one point five uh. One point five positions, that's enough to handle the full amount of. Infrastructure once it's all there. Right. Probably can answer really, but like, are you going to have that another point five to that? In order to stay on top of all?
That'll have to be determined.
New infrastructure. Okay.
Uh just before we move on to capital, I just want to confirm that we have no operating budget referrals, and so that's why there's no slide on that particular topic. Um so moving on to capital, I did mention that our twenty twenty five capital budget includes fourteen projects. They total seventy five point seven million dollars. Six of which include ISIP funding. And the six year total budget is three hundred and fifteen point nine million and includes fifteen projects. So on this slide, we are highlighting five projects that are included in our capital portfolio. All have been previously approved for funding under the ISIP program. And the first project we'll talk about is transit buses. So this was formerly called the Transition to Zero Emission Bus Program. It's a multi year budget which sees the purchase of zero emission buses and the construction of the related charging infrastructure. In twenty twenty five and in twenty twenty six, and then the purchase of diesel buses thereafter. Uh this is a new direction that we've received through the operating budget recommendation. It's recommendation C C. And it also includes a requirement for the department to report back to the committee. On the impact of this decision to reserve revert back to diesel uh in twenty twenty seven. And we'll be doing that within a hundred and eighty days um of the budget being approved. So although this program includes ISIP funding for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. It also serves as our uh bus replacement capital program going forward. And so it does have funding continuing in years beyond the ISIP funding window. And there's a capital budget recommendation as well uh that would provide us first call of forty five million of the twenty twenty six funding in twenty twenty five. I'd also just draw your attention to the table that's included on the capital detail sheet for this project. It's on page two hundred and twenty four of the supplement to the budget book. It provides an estimate of the total number of buses. That the funding included in the capital budget each year will be able to purchase. And while twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six reflect the spending of the ISIP funding. And a catch up on prior year's low to no bus purchases coming through COVID. Twenty twenty seven through thirty reflect annual purchase of diesel buses. Ranging from fifteen to twenty five buses per year. And it's just really important to be aware of and keep in mind. That in order to maintain transit's bus fleet, we need to purchase an average of thirty five buses per year. So there is a significant funding shortfall in this budget. For those years, and at this time, we estimate it to be approximately ninety two million dollars.
Okay, is that, did you guys hear that? Comprehend our usage, our ridership and, okay, Council E.
Yeah, so. Help me understand this. So the. Businesses that we contract with to deliver transit plus. They're not actually purchasing them or are we transferring the money to them to purchase that equipment?
Uh this is conventional. These are conventional buses. These are not transit plus vehicles. Uh the transit plus service is contracted out, and the contractors are responsible for purchasing the transit plus vehicles. This doesn't normally.
I heard you, I thought you said there was a shortage in the capital to cover off transit plus vehicles, no?
No, transit buses.
I misheard what you said. Well, then. So. So. You have buses you need for the on demand service, right?
Uh this is for the fleet as a whole.
Just the whole?
Yeah, the whole fleet. So we do have different sizes of buses that make up our fleet, um including some thirty foot, forty foot. Sixty foot buses, uh some of which are used for uh on request service.
Right.
That's true, but on average each year, our fleet size is six hundred and forty two buses. Um it has a, they have a useful life of eighteen years. And so we need on average to purchase thirty five buses a year in order to maintain a healthy fleet. And right now, the funding that is in our capital budget to maintain that fleet starting in twenty twenty seven is well below that threshold.
So. What is the average age of your buses? Uh uh I don't know how many years ago, but the average age of our buses was eighteen years. It was something like twenty. Twenty something.
Yes.
Do you know what the average age is of our fleet right now?
And Laurie, how do we stack up as well to other jurisdictions and even in North America? We've got quite an old fleet.
We do have an old fleet. Um maybe. You're in or just.
Yeah, I don't know. It's just just under twelve years, I believe, but it's our average age right. Eleven point something.
We've got some buses that are picking up twenty two to twenty three years.
Yeah, but the average is twelve. That's pretty good.
The average means you're at, your oldest bus would be double that, so. That's like at twenty, we have buses that are twenty four years old right now, which is well beyond most other jurisdictions in in North America, so.
That has your in an impact on your ability to maintain those buses, right? Additional parts, additional attention that's required on those buses, or prone to breakdowns and things like that. So you're certainly seeing that.
That was going to be my next question here.
Is it in the supplement? Uh I think it's a supplement. On which page does it shows the buses being purchased coming up?
Yes, it's on.
It's in the supplement, right?
Yes, it's in a table. It's on page two hundred and twenty four.
Right.
So that's the detail uh sheet for this uh particular capital project. And if you look at the narrative in the bottom, there's a table there.
Oh, can you help me understand? Uh. Going back to diesel, like. So we're not, we're not going against any dollars we've received to purchase. Like, did the province give us money as well as the ISIP? She warrants um. Like zero buses or whatever you call.
Yeah, yes, they did. Um we do have a zero emission bus program. That program is not impacted by this decision. Uh the buses that we're purchasing in in twenty three, twenty four, twenty five and twenty six are zero emission buses, and that program will continue. It's um after ISIP, after the ISIP funding is is done. Starting in twenty twenty seven, the recommendation is to revert back to purchasing diesel buses.
But but to your point. We're only purchasing twenty, twenty five and fifteen, when you're saying we're averaging, you need about thirty.
Thirty five, that's correct.
Okay, well, you know, we have to be optimistic. We'll find funding.
Okay.
Oh my God.
Good.
And that's even even buying diesel, which are less costly.
Yes, that those numbers reflect diesel, and the diesel buses are about half the price uh as the zero emission.
And what's the cost about of a diesel bus?
The cost of a diesel bus?
Yeah.
A forty foot diesel bus right now is about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah, and a forty foot battery electric is about one point seven million.
It's. Um is part of the reason going back to diesel that we don't have the charging infrastructure to?
No, I believe the recommendation to go back to diesel is strictly related to the cost of purchasing the zero emission bus. Uh with our limited funding, if we were to purchase zero miss emission buses, we would be buying even less than we are now.
Good.
Um the next uh project we'll talk about is the North Garage Replacement Project. This is uh for the replacement of the old North Garage facility that's currently located at fifteen twenty Main Street. The twenty twenty five budget amount just reflects the last year of what is a multi year budget that totals two hundred point one million dollars. Currently, this project is going through a scope reduction exercise and some redesign work. After the decision was made last year to not increase the budget to accommodate. The construction inflation amount that was needed to support the original scope and design for the garage. There will be a report coming forward in June, which will outline the potential impacts of the reduction to the scope of the new garage. On the implementation of the Winnipeg Transit Master Plan. The primary transit network infrastructure project will provide infrastructure required to support. The master plan's complete redesign of the network. This infrastructure will include dedicated bus loop stations and new traffic signals, among other things. And the total budget for this project is twenty point four million dollars. The Rapid Transit Downtown Corridor Preliminary Design will define the project's scope, cost and design for the proposed downtown rapid corridor. Uh the total project budget for this is seven million dollars. And finally, the wheelchair securment project, which, as the name suggests, will retrofit wheelchair securments. On approximately three hundred and twenty five existing buses, those are the ones that are purchased before twenty twenty one. Uh buses purchased after twenty twenty one are already equipped with the new securments. The total budget for this project is thirteen point eight million dollars, and this is also included in the capital budget recommendation G. Requesting first call in the amount of. requesting first call in the amount of $4.125 million of the 2026 budget in 2025. We have one budget referral to highlight. This is actually from the Standing Policy Committee on Property and Development. But as it pertains to transit, we're including it in our budget presentation for discussion. This referral requests the capital budget in the amount of $1.063 million for preliminary design, engineering, and engagement of the Portage and Main intersection. If approved, it would be added to the scope of work for the downtown corridor project. However, this amount is not currently funded in the preliminary budget. And just to clarify with respect to process, my understanding is that this report is not on the agenda for this particular meeting. But if you do wish to put forward a budget recommendation related to it, it'll be done as a separate motion. There is not really a lot to highlight with respect to capital budget changes. The first few lines do reflect a reallocation of funds to align with department priorities. We reassess every year and address funding shortfalls in the heavy equipment program in particular. We also created a separate capital project for the water line replacement project, and that was just based on the dollar amount. It warranted breaking it out separately. The other change was we rebudgeted some old funding into similar projects to clean up some older capital amounts. And this includes funding from building replacement refurbishment, hoist replacement, and heated bus shelters, which has been moved forward into a bus shelter and on-street infrastructure project. And just to clarify that this rebudgeting process just ensures that those funds remained accessible for the department. We do still need them, and they do allow those older capital budgets to be closed. And then moving on to reserves, we have three reserves. Collectively, they are forecasted to have activity totaling a net deficit of $4.8 million in 2025 and a year-end balance of $13.5 million. I'll just start at the top and just quickly go through them. The Southwest Payment Reserve serves to fund the P3 commitment for Stage Two of the Transit Way. It is our largest and most active reserve. The only item to highlight with this reserve is that in 2025, there's a total of $5.768 million being transferred out, a $2 million transfer to Transit's operating budget, and $3.768 million is a transfer to the Financial Stabilization Reserve. And this is disclosed in the Capital Budget Recommendation III on page 24 of your preliminary budget book. The Transit Bus Replacement Reserve is a reserve that's meant to fund the purchase of buses. There is $1 million in funding for the 2025 capital budget, but beyond that, this reserve is largely inactive. And the last reserve is the Transit Infrastructure Reserve, which is also inactive until 2028, at which time it will start funding the debt and finance costs for the North Garage. The funding source for this reserve at that time will be a dedicated percentage of property taxes. And that is the last slide. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Hey, any questions, committee members? I've got a question. So just let's recap these FTEs that were added for maintenance. It was 1.5, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And, um. Okay, so, so I'm not sure if there'll be, well, there won't be motions at this committee, but I would like to talk more with my colleagues about the support for the electric buses. So we're, I appreciate the information you sent me. We're gonna share it with committee members, and then we'll see what happens as it goes down the line. Okay? Um, yeah, so like, I mean, lots of positive, lots of scary information, lots of big decisions. I don't know. You know what's gonna happen, right? We rely very heavily on fares, and we rely very heavily on being subsidized by the General Revenue Fund and by the province. So, um, and I don't know federally, I don't know what's happening, right? We don't know what's happening. So Councilor Sharma, you had a point you wanna make?
I'm gonna finish.
Yeah, so it's, it's, there's really, really positive things happening, but also things down the line, which that was the title of that report. Down the line, we're at the end of the line, end of the line on some of these, some of these issues. So huge issues. So I don't know. You know, you've, you've offered mitigation suggestions. You've offered ideas on how we can fix some things. I don't know. Keep the suggestions coming.
Yeah, lots of challenges and opportunities always. I wanted to go back to slide four. And if you could just elaborate on us having to align to the Accessibility of Manitobans Act regarding accessibility, accessible transportation standard regulations. Teresa, I think that'd be your area. Can you elaborate on what's required, and there's a date there?
Absolutely. So the Accessibility of Manitobans Act, as we know, there's five standards, and the latest one was with the transportation standard. That's really removing barriers for residents of Manitoba that use transportation, whether that's public transportation or other opportunities to get around our city. And the intent of that is to ensure access for Manitobans. What's required under that is to train our operators on accessibility, not only just operators, but all of transit staff. There's safety and emergency procedures that we have to adhere to. There is a, I think, 172 requirements from the transportation regulation standards that we'd have to adhere to and comply by January 1st, 2027. So it's a very significant impact for our city. Manitoba is the second, after Ontario, to have an accessibility act for their city. And it's really an opportunity for us to demonstrate how we prioritize our commitment to accessibility. It will be legislation by January 1st, 2027, and there's a lot of work to do between now and then.
Right, a lot of work to do. We'll have to keep our eye on, eye on this, you know, need some resources internally, externally, probably to get this right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Transit. Thank you very much. So I think now we'll break. It's 12:30. We'll reconvene at 1:00. 1:30. Okay, thank you. We're back here at 1:38. The Public Works Committee, we're reconvening our budget meeting. And now we're going to be discussing the Public Works Department presentation. When we're done that, we'll be doing Fleet and Parking Authority. So I'll probably take a break after the Public Works, like, you know, 10-minute, 15-minute break, okay? So welcome, Public Works team. Why are you sitting so far away from us? Are you afraid? All right, and now we don't have Mr. Cantor here, so we've got everyone, or not Mr. Cantor. We don't have Mr. Barazowski here. So we have the other team. We've got everyone else here. So for the people online, maybe you can introduce yourself and.
David's here too.
Okay.
David's.
Oh, yeah, they're everywhere in here, tucked in. Okay.
Brad Nerrick, Manager of Public Works.
Hey.
Lauren Nichols, a Manager of the Asset Management Office for Public Works.
And Jason Irving, Manager of Finance Administration.
Hey, welcome.
Do we, we have the presentation?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That's, same, same, same one. Okay, it's good.
Good afternoon. We're here to present the budget for the Public Works Department. And we will be following the same format as all the rest of the departments presented to committees. So starting with an overview and highlights of our business plan, you start by noting that insect control, parks in natural areas, and urban forestry report to another committee, and this, this presentation is for the five services reporting to this committee. Some of our key achievements in 2023 revolved around our roads construction program. So in 2023, 6.7 lane kilometers of, of local streets were reconstructed and 73.4 lane kilometers were rehabilitated. For regional streets, 39 lane kilometers were reconstructed and 46.6 kilometers, lane kilometers were rehabilitated. Regarding active transportation in 2023, there was an additional 6,486 meters of pedestrian and cycle paths added and 3,306 meters of sidewalks as well. We took delivery of 15 snowplows, which, which were added in 2023. In 2024, we made progress on the Neighborhood Action Team Program, which is being built into over, over a four-year period. New positions were created and raided by our Human Resource Services. And we're proceeding to, with recruitment and filling positions on a temporary basis.
Hey, so just like we did with Transit, you know, you got lots of information here. Maybe we can just hop in here periodically with little questions, okay?
Okay, for sure.
So just, I just want you to just explain the lane kilometers. Like, is that one, two, like, there's a definition for that?
So the length kilometer is kilometer length and one lane wide, so like three and a half.
Right, so if you redo like a three-lane stretch, a one, one kilometer would be like three, you'd count that as three kilometers.
If it's three lanes for one kilometer, that would be three-lane kilometers.
Okay, and then the other question I have is, Kate, how many of these Neighborhood Action Team staff do we have on staff now? What union do they belong to? And I know we've got some in the Q. Ballpark.
I don't have what we currently have on, on staff, but they are definitely in the QP union.
It's QP?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, on our budgeting.
Is it just not over, under 50 or so?
Yeah, we're, we're building over a four-year period. So once we get it to fully implemented, there should be 45 people on. Budget-wise, there were 16 approved positions in 2024, additional 12 in 2025 to bring our total staff to 28 approved positions by the end of the year.
And how many, we don't know how many are hired or?
We have right now 10.
10.
Two more are joining shortly.
Okay.
And, but we still need to do some analysis of how many financially we can go for 2025 based on expenses of material and equipment. So we do that. We have up to, I think, 28 FTEs in 2025.
That's correct, yeah.
But I'm not sure that we'll be up to, but it's gonna be probably under because of other expenses and.
Right, so what I'd like to do, and I haven't talked to the committee about this, but what I'd like to do either at the end of February or at the beginning of March, like to have just a little meeting offline and have you guys update us on where you're at with what they're doing, what you think they're gonna do, all of that. So we'll just make a note of that, okay, because it's interesting. Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, well, I was gonna ask a question about what the roles will be, but I'll wait for the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll get into the details.
I think right now you've got people that are cleaning the snow from the bus shelters. Is that what you're doing?
Or on bus stops with shelters.
On bus stops with shelters. They're getting cleared out better manually.
Manually, right now, in the, in the east and in the south side of the city. And slowly, as we growing as a group, we'll be taking the north as well. So we were assigned by Transit to take over the bus shelter stops in the east. We grew with some more members, and we expanded to them to the south, who expand to the north. The goal is to do all those around the city, which is about 750 bus shelters.
And who, who directs them? Who is the?
We have the supervisor, WAFSA supervisor.
Right, but who directs the WAFSA supervisor? How do they know what to do?
Myself.
It falls under you?
Yes, the, the group falls on the street maintenance, and the supervisor reports to me.
Okay, super duper. Okay, sorry about that. Continue on.
Okay, so on the, the right-hand portion of the slide is our summary of our September 30th operating forecast, which showed us in a deficit of $13 million on a mill rate support basis. That, that is fairly typical for this department at that time of year. We roll over. The main drivers of that overage was $10.3 million over in snow, snow clearing and ice control, $2.5 million in city beautification mainly due to spring cleanup. So those are fairly typical for that time of year for this department. So in the, some of the improvements in the 2025 process were to address some of these perennial issues. So in the 2025 process, an additional $2.5 million was to, added to address the deficit in spring cleanup. An additional $1.5 million was used as a top-up to snow and ice control. And there had already been some amounts built into that in the multi-year process so that the first two items are there to try to reduce the deficit and the risk of deficit for the department. The third item that was added during the process was $0.5 million for additional line painting. And then there was a $0.5 million added in this year's process to the multi-year budget for reactionary bridge repairs.
Thanks.
So continuing, some of the, and just as a refresher, in the snow clearing and ice control, some of the improvements that was in the multi-year budget was there was an incremental $3 million added for four years. So year one, in comparison to 2023, in year one, there was an additional $3 million. That moved up to $6 million off the base in 2025, not $9 million in '26. With the additional top-up during this, this process, it's, it's added $3 million, $7.5 million, $1.5 million, and $13 million to our base.
Yeah, what was the base? The base was, 23 base was, just wait, I think I know it. I think it was 36.
We're 45 now, so it's probably about 39.
39, okay. Perfect.
So, so again, you know, those, those are additional amounts that are going to, that should help us at least mitigate. It's significant movement towards mitigating our annual shortfalls.
Does that include the AT increase that we did too?
That would, that would be, that would not be in the $3 million, but that would be in the base.
The base, all right.
So again, we're, some significant improvements to some of our budgetary shortfalls. Some of, some of the challenges we, we have, so we've made some improvements, but we still have some challenges. One of our greatest challenges, most of the activities we do are weather-dependent. So generally, we budgeted, we're, we're looking at averages and things like that. And generally, if you have a, in, you know, weather that's, it can really drive our costs, especially in snow clearing and ice control and spring flooding. We have seen significant price escalation in recent years on snow clearing contracts, as well as on external rentals and heavy equipment, which kind of erodes the purchasing power of our salary-dollar budgets. And then, you know, there have been some, some challenges around hiring qualified staff for the Neighborhood Action Teams.
Are we gonna talk about spring cleaning later on in the budget? Because I know we added more funding to it. I just wanna be clear on what spring cleanup meaning is because it's more than just plumping flowers.
I think this is, this is where we had it in the presentation, so.
Okay, so do we wanna just?
It's a good time.
Because we've added money to the.
Summer.
Summer, pardon me?
The 2.5 or the 400?
2.5.
That's for spring.
Okay, so just sort of talk about what that encompasses.
Well, spring cleanup is a five to six weeks operation where we go and sweep all the streets and most of our sidewalks and clean after all the sand and debris that was put on during the winter. And it's being done right now by both divisions, street maintenance and parks. And.
And why did it need more money? Just explain why it needed more?
Well, just over the years, the more streets and more work to be done, prices, whether it's fuel costs or contractor costs went up. And so just an adjustment over the years of growing in the, in the cost of doing the same operation. Uh so just an adjustment over the years of growing in the in the cost of doing the same operation.
Okay.
With that, I'll uh turn it over to uh um Lori to um to speak to some of our performance reporting.
So we'll use the next five slides to report back on how well we're delivering our services. We're gonna highlight the citizen satisfaction survey along with one representative measure. Uh but for for uh complete listing, you can refer to pages one ten to one thirty one of the preliminary budget. We'll start with roadway construction and maintenance. So to measure how well we're meeting Winnipegers' expectations of well-maintained streets that are kept in safe condition, one of the measures we look at is the percent of regional and local streets in good or better condition. In two thousand and twenty three, actually, we didn't collect data for regional streets because we only collected every two years. But it was at sixty five point two percent for local streets, and that excludes alleys. So our fifteen year target for the multimodal funding strategy was eighty five percent for regional and seventy five percent for residential. Um and we will be looking to update that as part of our part of the next multi uh year budget. We're looking forward also to assist with that, the the update of the the funding strategy to the implementation of a new pavement management system that we have underway. So we'll be looking at automated pavement surveys every three years for the entire street, sidewalk, alley and pathway network, so that will help us with our prioritization, ensuring that we're undertaking the right treatment at the right time. As far as citizen satisfaction with the condition of major streets, it had been trending upwards um ever since the dedicated annual property tax increase was established. Um however, you will notice that there's a drop in two thousand and twenty two, down to forty percent for major roads and thirty nine for local roads. And the parents of potholes in those years in twenty two and twenty twenty three were made worse by significant amount of precipitation and extended freeze thaw cycle, so that contributed to our social satisfaction. Um despite our continued overall improvement in the condition of the street network, but that has rebounded somewhat in the last two years to forty five percent uh in uh two thousand and twenty four for both regional and local. Okay, moving on to transportation planning and traffic management. So to measure how well we're meeting expectations for sustainable transportation options, we're looking at the annual vehicle kilometers traveled per capita. So currently, some eighty percent of Winnipegers rely on their cars for mobility, whereas the draft transportation master plan outlines a plan to achieve fifty percent sustainable mode use by two thousand and fifty. So by assessing the annual vehicle kilometers traveled over time, it provides us insights into how well we're tracking towards this score. Um, in two thousand and twenty three, the VKT, the vehicle kilometers traveled on all city streets throughout the year was seven thousand seven hundred and one kilometers per person per per capita. And the chart on the top right highlights the trend in VKT in recent years, so it it was impacted by the pandemic, as you can see, a decrease in in two thousand and twenty and then a slow rise again through two thousand and twenty three as uh we begin to return to closer to pre-pandemic levels.
How do you get this data?
That's a good question. I don't know the technology that we're using to to collect the the data.
Is it the phones or is it? I know downtown does that, right, with the phones, they can tell.
I I don't think it's through the phones, but I can't speak to the actual technology we're using. We have been collecting it for quite some time now.
No one knows. Alright.
The citizen satisfaction with management of rush hour traffic has decreased in recent years um from sixty three percent in two thousand and twenty one to fifty three percent in two thousand and twenty four. Um and again, this is likely a reflection to a return to more typical pre-pandemic traffic patterns and congestion.
And construction, more construction, right, like lots of construction, so. Right?
Okay, moving on to active transportation. So in order to achieve fifty percent sustainable mode use, transportation twenty uh plan two thousand and fifty identified the need for robust, safe and connective sidewalk and and cycling networks in addition to to transit. Uh that that would be having the highest impact to that measure. So to that end, we're focusing on two measures here that help demonstrate how well we're meeting Winnipegers' expectations to have access to the walking and cycling network where they need it. Um that's to measure safety and connectivity of the network. We're looking at percent completeness for both cyclists and pedestrians. And this is a new measure, uh we're reporting at thirty four percent and seventy three percent respectively. So we've also added the citizen satisfaction responses regarding the ease of getting around Winnipeg by bicycle and walking. Currently, that's at sixty two and seventy percent respectively, and we expect these expect these numbers to increase over time as the completeness of the network continues to improve. Moving on to roadway snow removal and ice control. As shown in in the chart uh at the right, after having remained relatively consistent in recent years, there was a notable decrease in citizen satisfaction with snow removal starting in twenty two at sixty three percent, which again has rebounded slightly to seventy one percent for two thousand and twenty four. And again, very much um environmental factor related, so we had a a pretty rough uh winter in twenty one, twenty two, um and that often contributes to the citizen satisfaction in 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 those years. So we've been working to improve our performance measure for this service alignment with the snow clearing policy. And one of the measures we'd like to highlight here demonstrates how well we're meeting Winnipeg's expectation that snow is removed promptly from streets after a snow event. And in two thousand and twenty three, on average, we cleared a hundred percent of P one streets within thirty six hours of a three plus centimeter snow event, which is in alignment with our. They're doing quite well. And then finally, we have citizen uh city beautification. And a new measure that we've been working on to help determine whether or not uh we're meeting Winnipegers' expectations with respect to litter cleanup. It's the percent of bins in the right-of-way service in overflowing state. So in both twenty two and two thousand and twenty three, actuals are approximately two percent, which is very close to our target of of zero percent.
Okay, while we're on that one, for the past four years, people have been telling me in the public works department that they're coming up with some sort of app that they're monitoring garbage. So I I've got emails on that. Now, Mr. Berzowski's not here, but anyone got any insight on that? Okay, oh.
A little bit, uh we we developed the app, we expanded the parks. Parks are using it right now in in parks and use it in street maintenance, but we could go back and analyze the data. The app is there, the app is being used.
Right, but like for four years, I'm waiting to hear. I have very limited garbage cans. I don't wanna be um parochial here, but I don't have I've got, I I'm begging for twelve flower pots out of the two hundred in St. James, but anyways, uh garbage cans is in the same scenario, so when are we gonna get data from this project that's been going on for four years?
Well, we're, again, it was expanded to parks, I believe, in the past six months. Uh I can look into that. Where is the data? Well, the data is there. Just uh the resources to analyze it then and and bring up something that could be used as a dashboard for us to look at and analyze.
That has been. Because because we understand that if we have to buy more garbage containers and the union wants more money to pick them up and on and on, but if garbage containers aren't being utilized in other parts of the city, then why can't we just move them around?
And definitely, that's.
And that's the concept of the data.
One of the goals of this data is to analyze and and trying to figure out the best routes based on needs.
Right.
As we collect it, we just we get it.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you for a meeting on that, and we're gonna work on that, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Sorry about that.
So the next slide is a overview of the five services reported to this committee. So the five services total, uh six hundred and eighty seven now FTEs are full-time equivalents, require mill rate support of two hundred and twenty five million dollars. There is an associated capital budget of a hundred ninety seven point six million, with the bulk of that being in the um roadway construction and maintenance or roads program. And this year, we're budgeting for a net draw on our uh on our reserves of twelve point nine million dollars, and there's a slide on the reserves drawn later.
It's the draw for?
For me.
What is what are you drawing on the reserves?
Uh, th- there's a timing difference between the uh on the can can the gas tax reserve or or can the buil- building fund reserve, uh there's a net drawdown of of uh uh twelve mil- twelve point uh twelve million dollars on that. And the the driver of that is there's a timing difference of between when we um are allocated that money by it by the federal government and when it is budgeted in our capital fund.
So it will be replenished.
It it will be spent, it's just over time.
But will it be replenished through gas tax?
There there is there's that there's annual, there's an annual amount coming in from the federal government each and every year on the gas tax.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and included in um the transportation and tran- and traffic management um uh service area is actually uh street lighting, and there's a um budget for about fourteen million dollars a share for street lighting. Moving on. This slide is a graphical of um our revenues and expenses. We have revenues of ninety point uh two million dollars and uh budgeted expenditures of three hundred and fifteen point three million dollars. Uh the majority of our revenue are um frontage levy, uh the big blue uh area, I mean, we uh circled the pie of the pie graph, and it is uh eighty three point six million dollars. Um, regulation fees at uh six percent is about five point six million dollars, and that's things like cut restoration fees and uh street rental permits. The bulk of the uh marine color um uh uh pie is the uh is um mainly for uh uh underground structures.
So we increased the service cuts, correct, the fee rate for service cuts, if I'm cor- correct?
We we
This year?
Increased the rate for um restoration of um sod restorations.
Sod restoration.
Yes.
So what does that mean?
But that means is we generally, we when 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 we we charge for, when we when we restore a utility cut, there's costs involved, and that's meant to be on a break even basis. For that, we're not speaking from a general profit center. Uh what happened over time is the rates from the private sector for sod had gone up, so in order to to not lose money and to be uh on a break even basis, we had to up up our rates for sod restoration.
And we review that every year.
Yeah.
But does that mean that you move more towards seeding to re?
No, at the moment, we're we're still restoring cuts with sod and uh for the most part, and that we just review the cost that is costing us since we, since the city takes on that work, we charge that the the uh the cut permit, uh whoever took out the cut permits, we charge them that amount for that cut.
Okay.
Moving on to the um the bar graph and the expenditure side of the um slide. Um, one thing to keep in mind with um the expenditures is that the biggest tower or fifty one percent of our expenditures is capital funding. So what happens accounting wise is money is is collected from the taxpayer, it is recognized in the general revenue fund in in our operate, i- in operating. It is then transferred either to a reserve and then to capital or straight through to capital. So there's a bit of a flow-through effect in our operating as to uh expenditures. So about half our expenditures are really flows through to other areas, so the true budget we have for public works operating expenses is about half of that three hundred and fifty million dollar budget. Um, salaries and benefits uh make up about twenty percent of our expenditures, and that's sixty three million dollars. Uh goods and services, eighty nine million dollars or twenty eight percent. Um grants, transfers and others is there's two percent or seven and a half million dollars. Uh recoveries is fifteen point six million dollars or about five percent. And four percent of our expenditures are eleven point four million dollars are debt finance charges related to past capital projects. So this slide is a comparison to um of our our uh twenty twenty five budget to our two thousand and twenty four adopted. So as you can see, um uh revenues are very close uh at so uh one uh one point three percent increase. Um, on the expenditure side, there's an increase of uh twenty two point three million dollars, and again, that's mainly due to those transfers that are flows through to capital. Of fourteen point two million dollars of that is is the increases from the uh tax, the the tax increases that are that flow through to the roads reserves. There there was additional uh four and a half million dollars uh for uh stone ice control, so that was the three million dollar incremental of opening their base, plus the one and a half million dollar top up. There was the two and a half million dollars for spring cleanup, an additional uh one million dollars, which was planned for the uh neighborhood action teams. Um, the next slide is a comparison of what our two thousand and twenty five budget uh in twenty, what our 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 budgets in this year's budgets were to the projections in the last year's budgets. Again, the five million dollars, um the five million dollar increase you see in twenty six and twenty seven again was two and a half for the spring cleanup. Um, a million, a million and a half uh for the top up in the uh snow, so and ice control, uh a half to half million dollars for the enhanced line painting and a half million dollars for the bridge repair. This was partially mitigated uh in two thousand and twenty five by a reduction of uh frontage lee frontage lee uh frontage levy transfer or flow through to the capital fund due to there being uh two point nine million dollars identified surplus in the capital.
Being identified for what, three?
The capital fund, the capital closure process yielded two and a half million dollars of uh surplus.
On the front.
Reactive bridge repair was? What's reactive?
Yeah, that that's enter take repairs due to a lot of some of our aging infrastructure. It could have included uh Louise Bridge or Arlington Bridge.
St. Garber Bridge?
Which one?
St. Garber Bridge?
Uh, that that we are covering under capital. Uh that's under our annual program, but it could be for for things reactive, things we're not actually planning to repair, but come up.
And it got into the budget uh through through the um, in in the budget review process, there's a um the department is required to to identify operating risks, and we did identify you know, reactive ri- bridge repairs as an operating risk, and I think the two bridges that we uh you know, were concerned about at the time were Arlington and Louise.
But but other, there's others that are, yeah, that require reactive repairs, including St. James Bridges. Uh things that are coming up, hopefully in the capital program soon, but just aren't there yet.
So how much you set aside for that again?
It's a half a million dollars.
Half a million?
Yeah, and that's in the operating budget.
Okay. A boat. We had to spend a million this year on um stabilizing the Arlington.
Yeah, that that was.
Is that, is there a possibility that might happen after this winter and?
We're we're hoping that with the Ar- the existing Arlington Bridge closed, that we won't have to spend any more money on maintenance. We did have to spend money to uh stabilize it. Uh and that, so that's happened, that that work is complete now, and we're hoping that will be it until we actually have to decommission and tear it down.
So, so was it, was it all of the stills, whatever, I can't remember what parts were failing, but all of those parts were were fixed across the whole bridge?
No, no, the uh, there's the, what we call the 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 pony trusses, which are the shorter flat ones, we we uh we replaced in rush for the the bearings to support the trusses on top of the concrete pillars so that they can expand and contract with weather.
And we did.
Didn't do the ones on the big, the big trusses, we didn't do those ones. And we're hoping we won't have to before we decommission the bridge. We don't wanna spend any more than we have to on it.
Yeah, no, I get it, I'm just.
Yeah.
With the crazy weather fluctuations on really old steel. I'm good.
Okay.
So our um, our our um full-time equivalents are our um are increasing by, set to increase by eight in two thousand and twenty five, and that is, uh, there's there's two things going on there. There's an additional twelve FTEs associated with the uh neighborhood action teams, which we've we've spoke about already. And that is offset by a reduction of four um, four um storekeepers. And that is offset by a reduction of four, four storekeepers. Basically a responsibility for operating stores at twelve seventy-seven Pacific over to Fleet Agency. So the four, four positions involved in that operation are, are going to be reported on Fleet's books and not my books. So it's, it's a reduction for me, but you'll see an increase in Fleet when they do their presentation now.
Okay, so Fleet's gonna talk about that because I had some questions on that. Fleet will be talking about that?
Or you can ask them now.
So why, why did that happen?
It, it's a better operational fit for Fleet than it is for Public Works. Previously it reported to me in, in, in accounting. And one of the difficulties we have is with that small staff, if you have people that are away due to illness or unexpectedly away or there's, there's gaps when you have turnover positions. When you're in one really small area with only fourteen, four FTEs, it's very hard to backfill that. Whereas Fleet has other stores operations too, so they can have a bigger store where they can draw those resources off as needed. So it's a better operational fit for the fleet.
Okay, so operational, and then I guess who do I ask? Fleet or you? Costs have gone up, additional funding has been added on when people wanted to purchase something from the department from?
No, no. Things are, are recorded in inventory at cost and sold into, to, to other areas at cost. How we've made Fleet whole is we are, we are making a, a transfer from the Public Works for, for the amount of their operating costs.
I don't know what that means. Say that again.
Well, there, there's a cost, there, there's a, a cost to, to operate the stores. There's the salaries and benefits for the four employees. There's also the municipal accommodations, charges for the facilities and, and a few other things, but those are the bigger ones. So there's a, a set, set amount of budget to cost for that. And what, what, what we've done to make Fleet whole is they now have the clock, the expenses and Public Works is going to transfer bill rate support over them to make it whole. So I have an in and out for, I would have had the cost before. I have a, so I get the budget for the, the cost, I transfer it over to Fleet.
And then you're saying items are sold at cost? There's not been an increase?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Oh, quick question. The four, the decrease to the Winnipeg Fleet Management, that's through attrition? There, nobody's losing their jobs, you mean?
Nobody's losing their jobs. It's the same for, there's a, a foreman, two storekeeper fours and a storekeeper two. Those four positions are now in fleet.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Everything's the same. They just have a different boss. Hey, and our vacancy management is three point eight million dollars or sixty-seven FTEs and that's about sixty-seven thousand dollars per year. We don't do that on a service basis. We do that on a department-wide basis. And we, we, we can usually, we, we make that vacancy management target, target through the natural course of business. We're not going to defer on posting positions or backfill things purposely to make that. There were no operating budget referrals for the Public Works Department for these service areas during the year. That'll turn it over to Lori for, for capital.
The draft budget in twenty twenty-five across all services is a hundred and ninety-seven point six million. This is an eight point five percent increase from twenty twenty-four, which is largely attributed to the dedicated tax increase of two percent for regional and local street renewals within the roadway construction and maintenance service, as well as funding for Maulard Road from the province of six million dollars. The twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-five year forecast total one point one billion resulting in a six-year total of one point three billion for the applied services. Just a few notes on the specific services within active transportation. What you're seeing here at the two point nine million is really just funding related to the pedestrian cycling program. For a full listing of our act of transportation projects, you can refer to Appendix H on page thirteen, three fifteen of the supplement to the twenty twenty-five preliminary budget. So it includes other projects outside of pedestrian cycling program like the Elm Park Bridge repairs. The total in twenty twenty-five within that appendix is eight point eight million with a six-year total of ninety-two point five million for spending on AT. We also have, just as of note, in the city beautification. This includes funding for programs that are administered by property planning and development, including downtown enhancement program, the biz image routes and neighborhood mains, neighborhood main streets and center plan twenty fifty. So this is a service-based view, so we are reporting them here within city beautification. And then finally, within the last three services identified there with the note one, just wanted to indicate that fleet acquisitions are now being included as part of the services for twenty twenty-five. So you'll see an increase related to fleet acquisitions in that year. And then finally, this budget does include a first charge request within the preliminary budget of sixty-nine point four million to support timely delivery of our projects. And we're just requesting actually if we can increase that by twenty million as part of our budget recommendations so that we can support the Lajmodi Twin Overpass Rehabilitation Project. This project's planned for construction in twenty-six and twenty-seven, but having the first charge will allow us to award the contracts in twenty twenty-five, just ensuring that we can deliver the, the project again in a timely fashion.
So where do you have it shown here? You're on the other, it was on the other page that requests for the twenty million or what?
It's not on the slide. It just come up. It's very new, the additional twenty million. So I just wanted to
No one told me about that. You need a motion or something? Is that what you're saying or what?
We requested just to identify it here, just, just for your information.
At this committee? Okay, so who's got the total and how much we can do for a first charge period on the budget?
Like sixty?
No, I know, but like in total, right? Everyone's doing first charges. So yes, yes. Finance department's there.
Good afternoon. I don't have the total amount per se, but I know that the twenty million that the department is requesting is within the charter requirement. Charter says we need to keep our first charges request to thirty percent of previous years capital program. So we're talking hundreds of millions because we're in five hundred million dollar capital as a city. So I think the thirty million, there's room in terms of in compliance with our charter. It would be great if there could be a motion coming out of this committee if you are supportive of the request from the department for twenty million dollars. And as Lori has said, this twenty million is already sitting in our twenty twenty-six capital forecast. So it's in the six-year plan. They just need authorization to do some of the force, the work that they needed to get done in twenty twenty-five, that that word be authorized.
In reality, we're not going to be spending the money in twenty twenty-five. We'll be spending in twenty twenty-six, but we need to award a contract in the fall of twenty twenty-five, so we need to have the money authorized. So that, that's all, that's really all it is, because we need to start construction basically by the end of December, beginning of January to start taking the bridge deck off.
So you're asking for the release of the funds?
Just, just the authorization of it, but we aren't, in reality, we aren't going to be spending it in twenty twenty-five. We'll be spending it in twenty twenty-six. We just need the authorization.
So you're saying it's thirty percent of the previous year's capital for the entire city?
Correct, correct. And we track it down.
Because we've already done a bunch of first calls.
Yes, we did. So our, thank you, Jody. So our total first call so far against twenty twenty-six capital is a hundred fifteen million. So that includes the sixty million that Lori had mentioned. And Lori Fisher from Transit also mentioned some first charges, so that is included in the total of a hundred fifteen million. Our target is a hundred seventy-one million, so we still have fifty-six million room to accommodate this twenty million request.
Okay, all right.
And that's just for this department?
That's, for this department, twenty million. We're not expecting, this is a, a little bit of a last minute update. We're not expecting other departments. We tried to get in front of this, of the first charges. So I'm not expecting other departments to come in and ask for.
So no one asked me before this meeting, so I'm not making a motion here. So we'll have to move it along the food chain.
You're not going to do it at this meeting?
No, no, people need to give me a heads up. I'm not going to do it at the last minute. So I don't know if that's the mayor's office or the department.
We just kind of identified it yesterday ourselves.
Yesterday?
Yeah.
Did you tell anyone yesterday?
We talked about it internally. We talked to financial planning yesterday. So sorry, we didn't.
Sounds like you're working through it. So, okay, all right. Okay, well, maybe someone can draft the motion or
I'll work on it.
Work on it. So, okay. Okay, working very long?
Able for a while yet, Lisa?
No, she left.
Oh, she left, Lori?
But she can be back. She's just sitting.
She's in here in gallery.
Yeah, she's sitting in here.
Oh, she's, we're gonna, okay. Madam Chairperson, that motion that I'm about to send out usually should be run by her.
Okay, we'll get her back at some point. Okay.
Okay, now moving on to some of the key projects in the funded capital, preliminary capital budget. We have, of course, the regional and local street renewal program. So it's now surpassed the one billion mark over the six-year timeframe, so the, the current year and the five-year forecast, including funding for the regional streets, so reconstruction, major rehabs, mill and build preservations, some accessibility improvements, as well as tree replacement and renewals as well. We have the local street renewals for park streets, residential streets, granular roads and alleys and sidewalks and AT. So the, the current funding reflects dedicated tax increases of one percent for both regional and local for the twenty-five through twenty-six years. And then in, it does increase to one point two five percent for regional roads and then goes down to point seven five percent for local roads in, at twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty. And in twenty twenty-seven, the two percent dedicated taxes are actually being moved to allocated to the operational needs, but it is being offset by province and Manitoba strategic infrastructure funding, so it keeps the program full. We have the Louise Bridge Rehabilitation identified in twenty-nine and twenty-thirty at thirty-nine point four million. So a preliminary design was completed recently with a class three estimate and the rehab will improve the condition of the bridge and extend the service life approximately thirty years until an expanded bridge is required to complete the remainder of the Eastern Rapid Corridor, Eastern Rapid Transit Corridor. We have the pedestrian cycling program, which we spoke about a little bit already. It's thirty-seven point one million in six years, which gradually increases on an annual basis from two point three million in twenty twenty-five to just over eight million by twenty thirty. This supports the goals and objectives of the pedestrian cycling strategies, which the update is, should be coming forward in the spring, which is used to see the conception of new pedestrian cycling facilities and facility enhancements, as well as a few studies and educational awareness. The road safety improvement program, that was formerly the TEIP, Transportation Improvement. It's thirty-six point six million over six years, which again gradually increases from two point five million to eight point nine million by twenty thirty. And we have another slide that speaks a little bit more to some of the achievements in this program and part of that is going forward, so I won't say anything more at this time. Henderson Highway Improvements. This is a new project that was prioritized through the investment planning process. So it's fifty million slated between twenty twenty-seven and twenty thirty. So it's reconstruction of Henderson from Gilmore Avenue to the city limit to improve safety and efficiency of the movement through the area by all users. Forty million of this is budgeted within the regional street renewal program and then there's a separate project for ten million. It's a, it's a separate project identified for improving the, the crossing at Bunce Creek. We also have pipeline twinning identified as a new project, four point six million in twenty twenty-seven through twenty twenty-nine. Again, prioritized through the investment planning process, the project will twin Pipeline Road from Leela to Templeton, including the construction of a multi-use path and improvements to the Leela and Pipeline intersection. There are developer obligations associated with it and that's about, it's just under half of the project cost that the developer will be supporting.
Exciting projects. Okay, this is exciting.
We just wanted to do a little bit of a spotlight on some of the achievements in road safety over the recent years and, and going forward. So again, the road safety improvement program, you can see from the chart, the funding for it is increasing significantly from twenty-five through twenty thirty after being remaining between one and, and two point five million in more recent years. This is because of the multimodal roadway and bridge infrastructure funding strategy that council had approved in recent years. So some of the accomplishments over the past five years, of course, we had adopted the, the road safety strategic action plan, which implement, and then implemented a number of traffic calming and traffic signals at high, high priority locations that were identified there. We've also installed a number of, of new pedestrian crossings, upgraded pedestrian corridors with lower flashing lights and then upgraded some rail crossing infrastructure. Moving into the future, we have additional plans in, in addition to continuing with the lower mounted flashing lights. That program we expect to finish off in the next couple of years. But we want to update our process for pedestrian crossing treatments, so they're applied consistently and, and where they work the best. I want to ensure that we can modernize our process for finding and improving the intersections with the worst collision history, so we can take the appropriate action there. A specific project that we're looking at in, in the near future is replacing the stop signs at Jefferson, Jefferson Rail Ave Crossing with modern lights and bells. And then again, we'll continue with the rectangular rapid flashing beacon program to warn drivers that they need to slow down when they approach a crosswalk and then as well as adding in new pedestrian corridors. So lots on the agenda for the next few years and I think there's some good success in this area lately.
This is, um, this is really good. This was, I mentioned it once already, but this was from a motion in twenty fifteen that I brought forward to Winnipeg, where we're one of the few cities that didn't have a road safety program. And it's really important. And now we have a team in place. We've got funding that's on the increase and this contributes to a lot of road safety for not only vehicle drivers, but for the vulnerable road user. So we have a lot of old engineered designed streets. And yeah, this is really a personal passion of mine, so and council because they've approved it, so that's a good thing. So, okay, thank you.
Now we're going to look at the capital budget changes. So this is the changes from the forecast in the twenty twenty-four budget to the twenty twenty-five preliminary budget. There's a few to outline here. The first is within the Traffic Management Center Evergreening Program. You see there's some additional funding in twenty-nine and twenty thirty. And that's to add some additional cameras so that we can get overall coverage of our regional street network with our camera system. Number two, we have the new, new project prioritized for Pipeline Road, which we spoke to already in twenty-seven through twenty-nine. And you're going to see in number three, the change to the regional local street renewal program. You see the addition of four point five million in twenty twenty-five. That's just the net of the additional six million dollars that was allocated funding from the, the province for Maulard Road. And it's offset by a reduction of one point five million in, in that same year. And that's just really a transfer to the Portage Place project. So it's just being moved out of the Public Works project to a different, to a different program. And that's the same for the difference in twenty-six and twenty-seven, the one point five and, and four point five. It's just being dedicated to Portage Place improvements. Number four, we have the, a, a new project prioritized again through the investment planning and that's just the need to replace the culvert at Route ninety at, at Omens Creek, which is nearing end of life. And then number five, we've talked about the Louise Bridge Rehabilitation Project in twenty-nine and twenty thirty to extend its service life. Um, and then in number five, we've talked about the Louise Bridge Rehabilitation Project in twenty-nine and twenty-thirty to extend its service life. As well as number six, which is the um replacement of the crossing structure over Bunce Creek as part of the Henderson Highway North Improvements Project. So all three of those um are really, it's not net new funding, it's just funding that um was reallocated from the Waterway Crossings and Grade Separations Program, and that's why you're seeing the reduction in those later years. It's just to offset those projects. And then, um, sorry, just, just the one more. It's the Center Plan twenty-fifty project again, being administered by PP and D. Um, I think, I just wanted to also make note that there was an unfunded um item of one point five million. So this is just really for interim. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is just for interim treatments to uh once green avenues closed to transit. So it'll do things um that will help with AT and potential events in the area over the next couple of years until funding can be put in place for more um permanent infrastructure improvements. And that's what's in the unfunded list at one point five million dollars, again, within PP and D.
Okay, any questions, any comments on all this? Okay.
We can just skip this slide because it's just the same of what I spoke to. Um, and then finally, the capital budget referrals. Hey, wait, I don't. I don't have that slide. What slide is it? Twenty-three? Sorry? What number? Which slide? Twenty-three.
We skipped the slide, so, because it was just the uh what I spoke to.
Right, okay, that was just the text. Okay, sure, okay.
Okay. So there are six capital budget referrals. The first is the traffic study at Waverly Street and Find Hill Road. So there was a warrant analysis for traffic control signals, always stop and pedestrian crossing control. They were completed and none were warranted at this time. Um however, there were modifications suggested to the area for a fully protected pedestrian refuge area. Cost estimates were ninety thousand dollars. It is not included at the, in the budget at this time. Suggestion is that this would be incorporated when the street was renewed or up for renewal. Second is the Henderson Highway North Improvements, which we spoke to already. So that is included in the budget. It's split between the regional street renewal program at forty million and then additional separate capital projects for ten million dollars for the the crossing at Bunce. The next two are AT-related, so we have the sidewalk cost estimate on Trailside Crescent. And the cost estimate we came up with was two hundred thousand dollars at a class five, and it is not included in the budget at this time, and um we're looking to prioritize this along with other needs that are identified in the Pedestrian Cycling Strategies Update, which is coming forward. Same is the case for AT improvements on Lee Boulevard and Barnes Street. So the public service did, did write a report favoring a bidirectional bike lane at one point two five million. Um, again, to be prioritized and discussed um as part of the Pedestrian Cycling Strategies Update, so it is not included in the budget at this time. What class is the one point two? I believe it's a class five, yes.
Is that sidewalk replacement, is that on a residential P three street?
I'm sorry, I don't know those details.
You don't know that?
No.
What, what, what's your question, Ross? I didn't hear.
Well, just in regards to that's a new sidewalk for that, that street, estimated at two hundred thousand dollars.
A bidirectional bike lane. A bike lane is what, what the recommendation is on, on Lee Boulevard and Barnes. Is that the one you're referring to?
Oh, yeah, but that's not going in the budget.
No, I was just gonna say that. Okay, I'm just, just asking.
Yeah, I like it, because I'm supportive.
Well, I had to, I had to use LDR money for a sidewalk.
Right, it's funding price.
Yeah, there was no local improvement, whatever.
Okay, and then the last two budget referrals, we have Arlington Street Bridge over CPR. So we've come up with a class-three estimate of a hundred and ninety-three point three million for the demolition design and construction, and that would replace the two-lane bridge and include two multi-use sidewalks and reduce the bridge slope to improve accessibility. It is not included in the budget at this time. And finally, we have the gravel road maintenance south of the perimeter. And we were asked to provide an estimate to add additional gravel to a few streets in the area, Forbes, Fraser, Paul, Viert and Milnick. Uh, the cost is nine hundred thousand dollars to add an additional inch of gravel. Uh, that's beyond our routine application of up to one-inch layer of gravel every two to three years to keep the road passable. It is not included in the budget at this time.
Thanks. Any questions though?
Okay. So. Here. At the questions part.
So. I was, uh, I have a general question. I was trying to figure out a way to ask it, but just in general, services requests are not in the budget. Uh. What, is all of the budgets levy dollars allocated to Public Works, is it all within operating now?
No, no, it's some, some of that would remain in operating, but some would be flowed through to capital.
Right, do you have any idea how much is in operating? And is it assigned to, like, is that being used for our ongoing programs, the pothole, all kinds of street maintenance? I imagine that's what the operating portion is being used for.
Um. Couple of questions, um. I mean, we don't. We budget for expenditures in um in operating um for, for the department wide, and then, then it is funded, so we don't do it, we don't uh, we, we don't uh budget for specific items by that, the fund, the funding source in the operating. Uh, and I'm just gonna look up the, the flow through to a capital of um uh of the um.
What are we reporting is, so we do report under service base, we uh report um where the money's coming from, right? Whether it's property costs or whatever, right?
Correct.
Uh, what portion overall do you show for operating uh on the revenue side from frontage levy?
That was, it, it, that's the majority of our revenues, that's the um um, it was on there in earlier slide, um.
Jason looks that up on the capital side at seventeen point eight million for the first three years and then twenty-seven point eight for the last three years. So that's what.
For the capital.
Yeah, and it's also going to the, to support the regional and local street renewal program.
Right, okay, it's shifting back over into that.
Yeah. Yeah, I have, um, in twenty-twenty-five, I have fourteen point nine million dollars uh being transferred from operating uh to capital from financials.
Uh. So, I have some question. I have a multinational moving on on uh, well, that's a lengthy title for it, but the Arlington Bridge Replacement. So you have a draft capital sheet there. Um, proposing a motion that will uh, put that, well, the beginnings of that project into into the capital program. Um. Um. I'm just struggling to figure out where the debt servicing operating costs are coming from. Um.
Do you want Lisa up here to talk to?
Yeah, just, I, I've got, well, I've calculated a a recommendation. So I'm looking at a thousand twenty-six twenty-three million dollar debt plus six point three two five million over the period of construction to two thousand thirty-one. Um, so for a total of twenty-nine point three two five million for authority um in twenty-six would require a first call. Um, but so I'm just struggling that over the period of time, the six point three two five million. I'm struggling to try to figure out where that might come from. Um. Was the twenty-three million is debt? So I'm just trying to figure that out. Lisa, do you?
Um, so, so councillor on the, so why twenty-three debt? So why not the entire twenty-nine million? Is there a rationale for that split?
You wanna borrow the, you wanna borrow them, we need to pay the interest too? Is that what you do?
Uh, is that's, that's the six point three million? That's the interest?
Six point, yeah, there's five and a half percent, five and a half percent, six point three two five million.
There.
And twenty-three million. So the authority for spending would be the twenty-nine point three two five million.
I see.
Are you saying you did issue debt for the whole twenty?
Um, that's usually how we do. We issue what you, what the department needs. Like, I, I thought the department needs, I'm gonna look at Brad here to help me, um, that the department needs thirteen million. So we just, consistent with your twenty-nine point, I don't know where the twenty-nine point three two five is coming from now.
Just want you to know, I, you can ask Brad. I worked some numbers out with, with Brad. A discussion about detail and moving it forward. The reality is that in our budget circumstance, we're not gonna borrow the whole hundred and sixty-six million, one sixty-six point three million to do the project. I wanna keep this thing moving forward. And, and there's a couple of essential things that need to happen, which is take the bridge down so it doesn't cost us anymore money, as you heard, right? Um, and, and uh, and continue uh more detailed design uh to come up with a higher class estimate as we go to the other levels of government to find money to help offset the cost of replacing the Arlington Bridge.
Um, so council, I'm gonna be really accounting here for you. So the interest that you need to capitalize is only during the construction period. So it's not for thirty years. You're calculating five point five percent times twenty-three million. That's not how that works.
For a year or is that?
That's, yeah, yeah, that's for a year.
Yeah, so I calculated that on forty-three million.
Right, so, so when I calculated it, councillor, based on including the, the um, the venture issue expense, because for our operating budget, we also need to set aside funding for um principal repayment.
Right.
Because that's part of our budget. So I calculated the interest to be annually, not including the capital.
One point.
One point five, one point six, you're correct, councillor. So, so around that amount is what we need to find in the operating budget.
For twenty-five.
For twenty-six or twenty-seven, whenever the department is cash flowing it. But if we borrow twenty-three million in twenty-twenty-six, one point six will be the annual
Yeah.
interest and principal payments. Okay, so for this group, for budget purposes, we need a motion to authorize the twenty-three million additional debt. The impact on the operating budget, unfortunately, I don't know what the funding source should be on the operating side of things. I just don't have that answer for you. I don't know. I'm in the same situation as you are. I don't know where to get the funding source for it, unfortunately.
Okay, so what's not clear to me, if you look at the draft sheet.
Uh huh.
The project is a hundred and sixty-six point three million dollars.
Right.
All in class three. But the authority being requested in the spreadsheet is a hundred and ninety-something million, because there's twenty, during construction, there's twenty-seven million dollars worth of a, a little over of interest to the end of the construction period, right? So if I'm borrowing twenty-three million in twenty-six instead of the hundred and sixty-six, don't I have to add in the interest cost over the construction period, which would end in uh twenty-thirty-one? Because of the way I'm proposing to do this, a new bridge would not exist until twenty-thirty-one.
I believe that is correct.
Yes, so, so initially, we identified that we want, we needed thirty million over twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six in order to commence the design, commence the uh decommission of existing bridges, break down decommission of this bridge. That would be the gate. At that point, we need the rest of the money to hinder the new bridge works. So, what we discussed was, if we don't get the full thirty million, we would probably uh defer the, the de-commissioning until twenty-twenty-seven, which isn't the worst thing in the world, because it's gonna take us a while to work with CN or CP basically to come up with the, the plan to actually get it in the yard and decommission it. So that would delay, a- as you said, the project from being completed in twenty-thirty to twenty-thirty-one. So like the twen- twenty to twenty-three million, because we wouldn't be able to award the um we wouldn't be able to award the decommissioning until we had all that thirty million in place. We'd be awarding that by the beginning of twenty-twenty-seven, assuming we got the additional funding services in twenty-seventy-one. Hope that makes sense.
Of the thirty million.
Of thirty. So that, that would still work for us to get to, that gets us to design.
Like, the twenty-three keeps it moving. I, 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 I wanna keep this moving. There needs to be. We'll get into the political discussion. Um, trying to move this forward in a way that I can get support of council. Forward, right? So, anyway, the twenty-three is enough to keep it moving, right?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
We would just defer, we would defer the uh the, the, the decommissioning contract until twenty-twenty-seven, we planned for twenty-twenty-seven. So we would need that additional seven million of funding in twenty-twenty-seven.
By twenty-twenty-seven, okay. Okay.
Okay, so then we're not gonna work.
But then you're gonna need the rest of the construction.
By twenty-twenty-eight.
By twenty-twenty-eight, yeah. So, okay. Okay.
Okay, so then your motion, councillor ED, the numbers will change in your motion, correct?
Well, I still think I have to say there's authority for the interest costs over five years. The twenty-three plus the six point three two five, which is the one point six times five years.
Specify that, or can you just leave it as interest?
Pardon me?
What, do you want it specified, Lisa, or do you want it um generalized?
Well, I broke it down.
General is.
To include interest cost.
Yeah, yes. And just say twenty-nine point three two five million, councillor. And, and if, if there is political support for the motion, councillor, uh, as we work through the budget process, we will refine the numbers as needed. I'll work with Public Works to ensure that we have the right numbers in both capital and operating budget. The important thing is to get it moving, as you said, to get it approved in this committee, and then we can see how, and we'll figure out the numbers at our end.
Yeah.
Okay?
Keep the, to keep the project on the grid.
On the, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Not breached, okay?
You just stop and say there's no money.
Yeah.
If it, if it helps, you, you could, you could even say twenty million dollars in twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six. We would just need, we would need the remainder of that funding to actually award the decommissioning contract in twenty-twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that would be better. Let's write it up like that.
Okay.
Okay, so, do we write it up like that?
Looks more wholesome, wholesome discussion than.
Yes.
So you need twenty million?
It would probably be slightly less, but let's say twenty million right now.
Okay, let's do twenty million. So that's debt in twenty-six, though, and you're gonna do a first call, right?
We need a first call in twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six, since you started with this year.
You would need it, because you need money this year.
We have to start planning right away.
Yeah.
Really.
Okay, so, uh, what I understand is a first call in twenty-five on the twenty-six budget in the amount of twenty million uh for the demolition of Arlington Bridge?
For the uh detailed design and uh decommissioning of the existing bridge and detailed design of the new bridge. Uh, we have a, we have a description on the detail sheet. It also includes like commencing property acquisition and early, early uh railway works as well.
Okay, so you're gonna make that motion up and send it to us.
Okay, so you're gonna make that motion up and send it to us, we can send it to us?
So Lisa, quick question. So that's the capital side is the twenty million funded by debt.
Yeah.
But then, once the debt repayment is, there's gonna be an operating amount. I'm not sure we're picking that up right now.
Yeah, I'm.
Well, I guess we'll work through that.
We'll work through that, correct, correct, okay?
That's in the D L breakdown though, the authority line though is the full amount, right? Is it not?
Okay, okay, so we're at the motions part now, I gather.
Well.
Council, are there questions, council chambers?
Yeah, I still have my gravel rolls to discuss.
Okay, okay, so are you basically done the presentation then?
There is just one more slide on the reserve projections.
Sure, reserves, right, right.
So, yeah, there's three reserves, um, the, uh, kind of community building fund. Uh, the local streets renewal reserve and the regional streets reserve, new reserve. So, um, monies that are, um, are, uh, from, um. The dedicated property taxes are transferred to the local street and regional street renewal reserve. And they are then flowed through and tr- and budgeted to transfer out into, um. Into the capital fund to, uh, support, uh, capital projects. So, uh, for the local street renewal reserve, um, there's a transfer in of seventy-eight point seven million dollars. And a, um, transfer out of seventy-eight point eight million dollars, or basically transfers in or same as transfers out. On the regional street renewal reserve, there's a transfer, uh, in of sixty-five million and a transfer out of sixty-five million dollars. On the, um, yeah, the building fund or gas tax reserve. Um, the allotment for twenty twenty-five is fifty point five million dollars. And the budgeted transfer is, uh, out to support capital is sixty-three point six million dollars. And the transfer hour is greater than the allocation, because there's past years, um, prior years, um. Gas tax that has been allocated to the city and budgeted out in our capital a little later to. Due, due, um, needing the timing to get certain projects going.
Hey, all right, um, now, questions? Comments, questions?
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, number six on the, uh, capital budgets referral. Um, you know, the recommendation is nine hundred thousand dollars to, uh, add, uh, an inch and a half of gravel. Um. Last year, I mean, for the last two years, it's been really difficult. You know, throughout the spring and summer when we're, we're into the gravel roads in the Saint Germain and Vermont area. Um, you know, we've, we've been out there a couple of times now trying to, uh, determine what the issues are. We recognize that la- drainage is one of the issues, a lot of culverts have been replaced. But the actual, uh, amount of gravel that has been placed on the roads has only been in sections where it's been soft. Um, and not necessarily meeting the, um, gravel roads manual. In terms of the application of one inch every other year.
Well, the one inch is every two to three years if required to keep it passable. That's the policy.
So, uh, based on, based on the photos that I've seen, based on the concerns that have been coming out of the area. Based on the fact that, you know, uh, bus, school bus drivers and delivery drivers, whether it's food, whether it's medication. Have indicated that they'll stop delivering to that area because their cars are being wrecked. Tells me that more is needed, you know, in terms of having safe passable roads. Uh, so looking to get this nine hundred thousand dollars, whether it's the entire nine hundred thousand dollars. Whether we do this in a staged approach, doing one street every year. Um, to, to, you know, to free out those costs, I'm looking for a way of getting this done. Because, um, it is about safety, it is about the fact that, you know, some of these properties do pay large. Uh, amounts of property taxes, uh, and deserve, uh, you know, we just took away the, the two hundred and fifty dollar tax. Um, tax credit that they were receiving them, minimal municipal tax credit. Uh, so, you know, looking for some improvement in the road conditions in the Saint Germain, not in that area.
Okay, so, um, I was talking to Mr. Cantor yesterday, thanks for getting back to you. We were looking at one avenue, but it didn't really work, right? Um, grab.
The lanes local improvement is defined as a program for improving lanes, gravel lanes, whether it's pulverizing. And we do all the local program for the residents, uh, support, so. And that's being accounted for, for the coming year. There's, I think, two lanes there that plan to be.
You're saying the low lane, that, you're saying that program doesn't apply to roads?
Based on the description approved in the budget book by council, it doesn't apply.
So how can we help him out here without finding nine hundred thousand dollars? Where are you gonna find it from, council chambers?
Well, seeing a reserve out there.
No, like every penny in the reserve is, is, is earmarked for something in capital, so it's already, it's already taken.
Can he rearrange some of his roads that are listed, uh, for locals and, well, probably not regionals, but locals? Can he rearrange some of his local roads? Could he, could he work with the department to rearrange some of his local road projects?
Not, not that the local roads are any less important.
I know, well, I know, I know, I know.
So you're trying to get a couple of extra local roads done?
No, this is, this has been an ongoing.
Couple more extra.
This, this has been ongoing, not only in my time in office, but going back to councillor May's, councillor Steve's, councillor Angus. Like, it's, it's been, uh, I'm certain that, I don't know if you've ever dealt with it.
Never think of it.
But it's, it, it is, you know, it consumes a lot of time during the summer. Because the roads are simply not passable, uh, coming out of the spring. And every time it rains, they revert back to impassable conditions, large potholes and washboard conditions. So it's a matter of, of, you know, getting a proper base on there and encroaming it so the water drains off properly. Uh, placed a, a ton of culverts out there for better drainage. But the roads are, you know, subbase and base, in my opinion, are.
Well, they're really shocked, like, they really need to be rehabbed. So like, like, and the residents don't wanna do any local improvement. Or they don't wanna do any of that? Like, like, they're not.
Well, they, I mean, they're feeling that they're paying high enough taxes, and I know that it's because of larger properties and larger houses out there. But again, we just took away the two hundred and fifty dollar tax credit, and that added up that, that was three, four hundred thousand dollars a year. Based on the entirety of the city. So, I mean, that's extra money, or money that the city, uh, should have.
So their developer decided they didn't wanna pave the road. So when they bought the house, it costs less because the road wasn't paved.
Yeah, and according.
So therefore, it doesn't, why, why you wanna talk about paying property taxes when they bought, they got a house for cheaper? Because the developer didn't have to pave the local road.
But according to our policy, we ma- we maintain those roads to passable conditions. And from what I'm hearing, they're not passable conditions, right?
Just wanna add that we, in two twenty-two, after that, the winter that we had, with two hundred seventy meters. Remember, we had support from the province and we added a lot of gravel.
Yeah, but that was throughout the entire city.
Hundred percent, but, uh, we can find where we added in that area, and that didn't change dramatically. Again, within the condition of the rain event. After a rain event, it's just a chase for that window to find where it's going to be a bit dry. Start working on that. It's, it's a struggle as a, as being a gravel lane, sorry, gravel road.
A- again, with the, uh, response back from the department, from yourself and from others in public works. You talk about continually, the road has to be crowned, allowed for drainage.
Yes.
And there's not enough base on the road right now to allow for that, for that drainage. As well as the, you know, and this is something that we've talked about as well, the experience of the drivers. And how many years that they've had on, and the fact that it does take an experienced driver to create those conditions. So, uh, you know, we need to figure this out. We need to, we, we need to get on the right page, uh, same page on this.
No, I'm sad, I'm just not sure that adding another inch of gravel will solve the problem itself. But again, if the funding is available, we will.
Okay, so, um, maybe what we can do is take like a fifteen minute break. I, I have to do a phone call. We'll take a fifteen minute break, we'll get all our motions in line. I think we've got three motions. We've got kill the snow clearing situation, we'll talk about that, we didn't talk about that. We'll do councillor EDs and whatever you're cooking up.
And I've just sent the motion back with regards to the first charge.
First charge, okay, so we might have four depending on what you cook up.
We also have more presentations.
Do, do I have to do a motion? I mean, emotions are being done to send this to budget referral.
Well, it's a question of where the funds would be found.
Kind of in the budget right now.
But there's.
All right, let's take a break.
Yeah. Well, we were gonna do the referrals now, so these guys don't have to hang around till those presentations. So we were gonna do the public works budget referrals now.
Okay.
I like that, I like you.
And then they can go.
Good.
Okay.
All right, take the break and I'll consult with.
Right, I'm reconvening the, uh, special committee meeting of, uh, public works, uh, discussing the budget. Now, we're at the point, uh, in the budget presentation with public works where motions will be coming forward in relation to the budget.
Well, usually we wait for all the motions until later, when we've dealt with all the presentations.
Well, we're not gonna do that today. We're gonna do the motions for public works now, when the public works people are here, and then they can go away.
Okay, we can certainly discuss them, and then when we get to the budget presentat- or the budget recommendations. Later on the agenda, they'll be captured and then we can vote on them then.
That's actually the correct process.
Okay, so we don't need, like, we'll talk about it now, we'll all, we'll all get all on the same page, and then we can let them go. We won't make any more changes, okay? So.
Although, should we wait for councillor ED then?
Well, we'll talk, yeah, we'll just wait for councillor ED, sure, I think he's coming. Yes, here he comes. And then maybe recap it to him, okay? Okay.
It's, it's open to you, I could be doing immediate calls downstairs.
Okay, so we've had some, uh, a little bit of updated information here councillor ED, that the, uh, clerk will inform you of.
All right, so what I understand is currently there are three motions that are being proposed. The first one is on the operating side councillor, that's to do with the snow clearance.
Yes.
And that is to simply delete the draft recommendation one A A and one A A I. And that's to do with the pilot project to raise the snow clearance threshold from ten centimeters to fifteen.
Right, so we'll let the department say whatever they wanna say about that, that, that's the motion that I'll be bringing forward. We won't be bringing them forward right now to vote on them. I guess we'll be bringing them forward at the end of the meeting. But we want to let the department go, so we'll, okay, so the motion then that I'll be bringing forward here is, um.
That the preliminary twenty twenty-five operating budget under the preview of the standing policy committee on public works. Be amended by deleting recommendations one A A and one A A I.
Okay, so that's the motion I'll be bringing forward, uh, not to proceed with the pilot. Any comments on the public works department?
I mean, we'd asked, um, Mr. Beresowski to, um, comment on the, uh, the pilot. And I'm just gonna read it, his email into the, the record, and it said, um. It would not be considered as much as a reduction in service as we continue to plow streets. We, we are piloting fifteen centimeters as a guideline for decision-making, as many events around the ten centimeter mark are questionable. As to whether residential street requires a full road cleaning. Take for example, the first and last events every year, they are around the ten centimeter about valuation. Most often, they are not cleared. The, the thinking is ten centimeters is something more decisive in the visual assessment. And takes away the citic, citizen, um, political issues related to why we aren't plowing. Even though it's a guideline combined with drifting and other issues. So what Jim is in- intending to convey is that, uh, at the ten centimeter level. There is usually some debate as to whether it needs to be cleared or not to be cleared. When you get to fifteen centimeters, it's pretty clear that it, it has to be cleared.
Yes, and in speaking with many operators, uh, you know, a lot of the operators said, look, it depends on the type of snow. If it's a light fluffy snow, if it's a heavy wet snow, depends if there's packing already or no packing. Snow is a very variable thing, right? So, um, we didn't take money out of the budget from like, as if it was a snow savings initiative. Um, you know, we're always open to pilots and innovation and trying things. Um, we do deliver probably the best snow inc- snow clearing, um, in Canada, maybe not. You know, Montreal puts more money into it, but honestly, I would highly argue that we deliver stellar gold medal type. And we have, we won trophies for the, the snow and ice removal, uh, throughout North America. So, um, lessons to be learned, people are passionate about their snow, right? They're very passionate about their snow. Now they actually know ten centimeters, fifteen centimeters. So, uh, because it didn't have a hit on the, on the financial part, and it was a, uh, an idea that the budget working committee brought forward. Uh, my main reason for not really supporting it is, um, I did hear a lot from people from a mobility standpoint. That were concerned about mobility and, uh, we can't afford to put sidewalks on every street. So, a lot of people use streets, a lot of in the suburbs, a lot of people use the streets to get to the bus stop. Or to, to get to a sidewalk, so, um, you know, I think for now, kudos to the budget working group. For looking at innovative potential projects, but I, I'm putting a motion forward to basically kill that pilot project.
So is, is the accumulation of snow the only measurement that we're using? Or the only tool that we're using to trigger snow removal? I mean, can we not look and say, oh, it, it, yeah, wind is, you know, in terms of whether it's, uh, uh, blowing snow. Is there more snow forecasted in the next couple of days? Are we just using the accumulation of snow as the, as the measurement for triggering a snow?
Not in for residential streets, residential streets. For residences, we don't, we have done, if, if it's under ten, but has lots of long conditions and there's no passable streets. If it's a big portion of the network, we might come and then plow or the trouble spots. But usually over ten, we start looking at residential streets, we look at top of snow, someone's, chair mentioned, the top of snow. Uh, long winds, if it's compacting or not, uh, so it's really based on conditions. Usually above ten, we start looking at this, uh, but not often we plow along ten. We usually, based on historical, we plow usually over fifteen.
Officer Sharla?
I just, Madam Chair, wanted to thank you for the motion that you brought forward. I agree completely with that. I think it was, um, good to bring it forward, discussion was had. I did hear from residents, uh, in my ward and across the city on this, and it was a bit concerning. As was mentioned by yourself and Mr. Cantor, it's not an exact science, this is based on conditions. And so there was a lot of concern coming forward about possibly trying this pilot. And not really seeing a lot of savings or results possibly from it, so I'll be supporting your motion. Appreciate it coming forward today. I know we had some discussions prior to today as well, sharing some of the feedback we had from residents, so. I wanna thank you, I appreciated seeing the mayor also, uh, commenting on this, uh, particular topic, so. I'll be supporting the motion, thank you.
Well.
Councillor ED?
We're not voting.
No, we're not voting on it, but we're, we're, I.
I would just. So I think Mr. Cantor's made it clear, and you made it clear, this was a pilot regarding the street, not the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Uh, you probably got a call, a lot of calls from people who use wheelchairs, who are using the street, but there are sidewalks. But the problem is the sidewalks are not passable. And the streets, however, are, why? Because motor vehicles with lots of horsepower.
Yeah.
Create, uh, spaces on residential streets that work for military users. So they use it, and I do that too. If a sidewalk is not passable. I walk in the middle of the street down the, down where the snow's packed, and when I hear a car coming, I pull off to the side. So, you know, I don't know what we've done for all residential sidewalks. I know that we have a certain snow clearing related to ET, trails, sidewalks like that, schools. Uh, but in general, um, you know, when, when are we taking care of the sidewalks? Cause really, that's what needs to be possible for wheelchair users, walkers, and so on. We can't clear to the. We can't clear to the, we can't clear to the, right to the base, we do do it on regional streets. Over, you know, may happen in, don't you, right away, but our regional streets do get cleared to the degree. So, you know, those, that's a good thing, but. Our condition, anyway, so this pilot, this is for the streets, you know. I'm not worried about motor vehicles again. The difference between ten centimeters and fifteen centimeters is nothing for a motor vehicle, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're all in agreement on that, so we know, we don't have any more questions for the public service on that, so let's talk about the second. The second motion, I think what we'll talk about now, just while the public service is here, is the first call of twenty million dollars. Thank you, Counselor Chambers, for, we're working with the clerk on drafting that up. And that is to do a first call for twenty million for the Laj Twin Overpass Rehabilitation twenty twenty five. Are we all, you know, supportive of that, you have any questions for the public service?
Would you like me to read it into the record?
Please.
Yeah, perfect.
So whereas the Laj Morier Twin Overpasses Rehabilitation is identified for construction in twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven in the five-year forecast of the twenty twenty five budget allocation. And whereas a construction contract needs to be awarded in twenty twenty five to commence construction, therefore be a result of the preliminary twenty twenty five capital budget under the purview of the Standing Policy Committee on Public Works, be amended to authorize capital expenditures in the amount of twenty million dollars for the Laj Morier Twin Overpasses Rehabilitation in twenty twenty five or prior to the adoption of the twenty twenty six capital budget as a first charge against the General Capital Fund in accordance with subsection two eight eight brackets two of the City of Winnipeg Charter to facilitate timely work on this project.
Okay, so everyone's cool with that, no questions for the public service, all right. Now, Mr. Clerk, do you want to read in Counselor Edie's motion regarding Arlington?
Yes, so I have worked with our folks in finance, similar motion, therefore, or sorry, that the preliminary twenty twenty five capital budget under the purview of the Standing Policy Committee on Public Works be amended as follows. One, that a new capital project be created for the replacement of the Arlington Bridge for twenty million dollars to be authorized in twenty twenty six capital forecast. And two, that capital expenditures in the amount of twenty million dollars be authorized for the Arlington Bridge in twenty twenty five or prior to the adoption of the twenty twenty six capital budget as a first charge against the General Capital Fund in accordance with subsection two eight eight brackets two of the City of Winnipeg Charter to facilitate timely work on this project.
Okay, anyone questions?
I'm gonna ask for a simple.
Pardon me?
I'm gonna ask for a simple addition to it. It doesn't involve the first call. I was, I heard that in twenty seven, if the other ten million is not available, the tearing down of the old Arlington Bridge isn't gonna happen. Because they need to be able to tender it out. So I would suggest adding ten million in the twenty twenty seven, in addition to the twenty in, in twenty six.
Okay.
Just because ultimately, we need that bridge to come down, as we heard. The public services, hoping they can get it down before it needs more money invested in it, so it doesn't destroy that C P K C yards.
Okay, so you're adding another ten million in twenty twenty seven?
In twenty seven, yeah.
Okay, comments on that, Mr. Nannett?
That, that, Counselor Edie is correct, that the twenty million will get us the planning for, for the decommissioning, the detailed design for the new bridge. And early railway works, and we can commence property acquisition, but in order to award a contract to de-commission the existing bridge, like demolish it, we will need that extra ten million dollars. We, the thirty million dollars we originally identified was to include that demolition contract. So all it would do is defer the demolition from twenty six to twenty seven, which is okay, it's probably actually better.
Okay, but you just said the twenty million dollars covered the demolition and design.
Planning for.
Planning for the demolition.
It covers the demolition and planning for the demolition.
No, it covers the planning for the demolition. We need thirty million dollars to do the demolition and undertake the detailed design of the new bridge. It's just that we would delay that ten million dollars an additional year.
I thought the demolition, all of it was sixteen million dollars.
Sixteen point eight.
Sixteen point eight is just if you did the planning and the demolition of the existing bridge.
It's sixteen point eight, planning.
And it was gonna happen in twenty six.
Great, sixteen point eight is planning, the demolition, and the demolition.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the, the engineering and the demolition.
Sure.
For the bridge.
But then there's.
Needing money, it's actually start the property acquisition for the new bridge, undertake the detailed design for the new bridge, and undertake some early railway works that would be required for the new bridge, huh?
So, and just to be clear, like, if that stuff doesn't start this year, like, and then the twenty seven, we need the ten million to get the bridge down, right, so.
Delay those other steps, then the bridge would not be, the new bridge would not be in service by twenty thirty one.
Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Clerk.
It still leaves, it still leaves a number of years to convince the provincial and federal government station ship in the pay for their new bridge.
Okay.
Okay, so I have received a sharpening up of number one of that motion.
That's right.
So just reread the entire motion with the addition of the third point. We're amending the budget as follows, number one, that a new capital project be created for the demolition and detailed design work related to the replacement of the Arlington Bridge for twenty million dollars to be authorized in twenty twenty six capital forecast. Two, that a capital, that capital expenditures in the amount of twenty million dollars be authorized for the Arlington Bridge in twenty twenty five or prior to the adoption of the twenty twenty six capital budget as a first charge against the General Capital Fund in accordance with subsection two eight eight brackets two of the City of Winnipeg Charter to facilitate timely work on project. And three, that funding in the amount of ten million dollars be added to the twenty twenty seven capital budget forecast for the decommissioning of the existing Arlington Bridge.
Okay, can I send that to you?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so do people have any questions or discussions on that? Okay, that's good. Okay, Department. I guess that's it for the Department. Any other Public Works chat?
We can speak to that motion later as well.
Yeah, we can speak to it later as well, yeah. Because this is just so we can allow them to go. Hopefully, they remember that wonderful release of. And, and they're preparing for this face snow storm that's coming, so. Okay, all right, so now, who do we have up now, is it Fleet?
Yes.
Hey, Fleet, you sending one?
Yes.
Okay.
You wanna run it from here? If you want, you can just. Well, yeah, because we're gonna screen here from here, oh, okay.
I used to have Fleet under Community Services.
Yeah.
I just, I just want you to know, I just want you to know, I've never been supportive. Continuously fine, continuously fine. And it's, you always need to operate.
All righty. Good to know. Okay, what did you say, Counselor Chambers, law reports?
Well, the business card can still be.
They're just.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know. I mean, we, we could, what we've done always, we seem to punt them to our next Public Works meeting, but the, the actual business plan, but it's up to you guys, so.
It's closely tied to this majority.
I know.
We just love the budget.
We never quite learn that we need to meet in a few days.
Remember the days when we had committee meetings first? Okay, are we ready, everyone's here, we've got the team from Fleet.
Some quick introductions, as Bono is the Fleet General Manager, with me is Joseph Martin, who is our Finance Manager, and Bill will walk you through our budget presentation.
It's different than the draft one we had, and it's different.
Okay, so this is the preliminary budget for Fleet Management Agency. The agenda is that it's a little bit of service highlights and business plan statements, followed by performance reporting, followed by budget highlights and overview, and then the service-based operating and budget, operating budget and the capital budget. Reserve projections are not applicable for us, and then any questions? So first, service highlights and business plan statements. Under key, key, key achievements and goals. Fleet Management Agency installed new automatic vehicle location devices in our fleet vehicles in twenty twenty four. Those devices have expanded recording capabilities and functionality. We reviewed utilization with the Fleet Oversight Committee to identify fleet deficiencies. We're in the process of implementing a new fleet management information system. And it use of Canadian Cooperative Buying Group as a streamlined expedient procurement option. And we're reviewing the results of an all-electric vehicle study for a phased approach to electric vehicles and infrastructure. Some of our challenges in the twenty twenty five operating budget are a lack of funding for vehicle replacements, increased times from order to delivery of vehicles, and as a result of that, increased repair costs, increased downtime for an aging fleet with risks involved, involving, including increased rentals and potentially increased hired equipment costs. We've also at Fleet experienced price increases that have exceeded C P I for fleet procurements, external rentals, and parts and other fleet-related expenses.
Okay, so like we did on the other presentations, if anyone wants to pop in and ask a couple of questions, I'll just ask one on this one. Implementing the new Fleet Management Information System, do you just want to like elaborate on that a bit?
Sure. We were midway through a project implement, basically what it's called was it's an asset works fleet management system. That's replacing some, some older programs that we have. Apparently, we have a kind of an in-house fleet management solution that we utilize for our billing and some of our fleet statistics. And we've got this older technology that we're utilizing for our work orders with regards to what the mechanics use, so this new system is gonna be replacing those, those existing things.
Okay, any comments, questions, let's move along.
Okay, with regards to performance reporting, under performance reporting goal one on, on the left-hand side, there you can see operating cost per vehicle kilometer. So those costs have been rising from twenty two, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, rising from sixty nine cents a kilometer to eighty cents a kilometer. And this is primarily due to rising costs for maintenance that we've been experiencing for our fleet, which is aging. Just below that, performance goal four, we continue to experience longer times from purchase order to delivery, so in twenty twenty three, those times were what, was approximately forty weeks. In the top right-hand corner, there's a pie chart that highlights the age distribution of our fleet vehicles. If you add the, the three slices in the left, top left of that pie chart, those are the vehicles that are between eleven to fifteen years old, sixteen to twenty years, and then twenty years plus. So those are all the vehicles that are over ten years old, and that represents about thirty-three percent of our fleet at this time. So the age of our fleet and deferred replacement of vehicles and equipment has impacted the city department satisfaction, so the city department satisfaction, that's in the bottom right-hand corner. And that's been approximately sixty to seventy-five percent over the last four years. Twenty twenty five budget overview, so for a service-based overview, operating revenues and expenditures for fleet are approximately fifty-six point two million in twenty twenty five. F T Es are one hundred and fourteen, and our capital budget is zero point eight million. So since this is a service-based view, that zero point eight million capital budget, it excludes approximately twenty-two point two million of fleet assets. Fleet asset acquisitions that are reported in various other city services. So I've got a slide later on in the presentation that, that details those fleet asset acquisitions and what services they're being represented in. So moving on to the service-based operating budget for revenues, we've got the pie chart on the left here as a breakdown of our revenue categories. The largest category is the fleet leases, that's twenty-seven point eight million, forty-nine percent. That includes our capital leases, which fund the, the purchase costs and the interest and, and debt-related costs for our vehicles. And then it also includes, includes the operating lease charges, and that, that funds the repair, regular repair and maintenance for vehicles. Second largest category is fuel, so fuel is approximately eleven point two million and twenty percent of our revenue. Fuel in the twenty twenty five budget is budgeted at dollar thirty-two plus carbon tax of twenty cents, so a total of dollar fifty-two for unleaded, and that's, that's the budget for twenty twenty five. Consumer costs and damages is the next largest category, eleven percent or six million, followed by rentals. External and internal rentals are budgeted at four point two million or seven percent, and then insurance is budgeted at two point six million or five percent. The other category includes various other expenses, and that is four point three million or eight percent. On the right-hand side, we've got a breakdown of our expenditures. So largest category is depreciation and amortization of our vehicles and equipment at fourteen point eight million or twenty-six percent, followed by material parts and supplies, which is fourteen point six million or twenty-six percent. That includes expenses like fuel and auto parts. Services is twelve point one million or twenty-two percent, and that includes things like vendor repairs and insurance. Next is salary and benefits at eleven point four million or twenty percent. And then other being zero point nine million. Well, comparison of the twenty twenty four adopted budget to twenty twenty five, revenue and expenses are both increasing from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, from about fifty-five point five million to fifty-six point two million. This, this is due to that transfer of central stores, so this was talked about in the, the in the Public Works presentation, central stores is being transferred to W F M A, funded by Public Works. So we've got an increase of our revenues offset by the increase of our expenses to pay for that, that division. It's approximately, I believe it's for, for F Ts.
So, in relation, in relation to the central stores, I just want to confirm it with you, is that so that prices haven't changed, there's not been any increase in prices?
Yeah, like Jason had mentioned, the way it works is they're just gonna do a, basically a one-line transfer to us for those costs. The accounts are just gonna be recorded in our. Uh, the accounts are just gonna be uh recorded in our fund, and uh within Public Works, they'll be reporting uh that same cost to one line, basically transferred to fleet. So for us, it's just an increase of revenue and expense, and the two mean equal. And for Public Works, they're just gonna be incurring the same expense that they're incurring at all in London.
So there's no markup in any of the services or products at all?
We're not planning to, to mark that out. This was more of a, just a change so that the, um, the reporting structure could be uh changed.
And I guess you don't speak to, do you speak to the staff at, in, that are in there? Do you talk to them that they're moving, or did you do consultations or anything?
Yeah, yeah. All prior to that, we spoke with part of the union as well. We involved them. I'll be mad with them with what was happening.
What union are they?
U P.
U P?
Yep.
Okay, so products and services aren't being increased, the prices aren't being increased. Okay. And do they move their look, the physical location is moved? The physical location is the same, same. This is, this is a reporting.
Yeah, I think we'll probably, we'll probably do some cross-training so they can get familiar with ours, business, line of business, and our staff are familiar with theirs. Because now it expands the availability. They only have three or four staff there, but we have eight, some eight or nine. So we are able now to cover both areas in case of a short sick or vacation or whatever it may be. So just expands our knowledge base.
Okay, okay, perfect. Moving.
So comparison of the uh twenty twenty-five projection, um from the twenty twenty-four adopted budget. Um, we're previously forecasting a deficit in twenty twenty-five of about zero point five million, and we're now forecasting roughly breakeven. Um, that's due primarily to, to two transfers. So there's, there's a couple of additional transfers uh um that are being used to fund vehicles. Uh, one was related to um some WPS vehicles. So a transfer from them, and then another was from animal services. So uh, that's the reason for that um that incre- uh basically decrease in the deficit in twenty twenty-five.
Say that again about animal services?
Yeah, there's basically uh, these are one-time paper vehicles, so our capital, our capital budget was uh that um budget was increased. Um, and I, I speak to that later in terms of the details of uh the vehicles and equipment within our capital. But the funding source for that, those particular vehicles, those animal services vehicles, is a transfer from their retained, uh retained earnings, their accumulated surplus. So that'll get transferred in twenty twenty-five, so that's sort of a one-time uh increase in our revenue. And it's part of the reason why the, the uh deficit went down in twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Okay.
So this next slide is the salary budget and FTEs. Um FTEs in twenty twenty-four were a hundred and ten, and in twenty twenty-five, they're a hundred and fourteen. Again, that's that uh transfer of central stores from Public Works to WFMA, so those four FTEs are being, being reported uh here.
Okay.
And moving on to the service-based capital budget, uh so the capital summary, uh you can see here that uh twenty twenty-four adopted service-based capital budget for Fleet was nineteen point one seven four million. The bulk of that, approximately eighteen million, was for acquisitions. So in twenty twenty-five, we're only reporting seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And again, that's because all of the, the fleet acquisitions are being reported in the various city services now for twenty twenty-five. So I've got a slide a little later that, that shows, shows those details. Uh, the twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty forecast does in, continue to include um our fleet asset acquisitions for uh twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty. Those, those are included here. That's why we're showing eighty-two point nine three five million over those four, oh, over uh twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty. So the key projects in our funding capital submission, um our fleet asset acquisition capital program, what, what we did um was split that between the medium, heavy and specialty uh procurements and the light fleet acquisitions. So medium, heavy and specialty uh for twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty projected at sixty-four point zero five million. Uh, light fleet asset acquisitions are projected at fifteen million over the same time period. This is the details of the fleet asset acquisitions that are being reported by these, by various city services. So um on the left, what we're showing is those medium, heavy and specialty fleet asset acquisitions uh budgeted at eighteen point one million. Uh, the larger, a large percentage of that is dedicated to fire and rescue response. So there's approximately uh twelve point six five million there. Ten point two million of that is for acquisition of seven fire pumpers and two point
How many?
Seven, seven.
Seven fire pumpers?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
So that's replacement of, of existing fire pumpers, and then two point four million for a ladder truck. Uh, so that's
That's great.
That's the bulk of our, of our, the medium, heavy and specialty.
How, how long does it take for those to come?
Up to three years.
Up to three years.
And they're built locally, aren't they?
Or the ladder is built in the States. Um, and pumpers, the pumpers and the ladder is built in the States.
Uh, they were built here at Fort Gary and Missions.
So there's two different, you're still under the contract with the, that company out of, what is it, Florida?
E one.
It's in the U S, but
Yes, yes, there's
And that you've, you've been contracting with them now for five or six years, right?
Yes, the way we set up our tenders is that we can do up to four or five years of standing up contracts, we can renew every year. Uh, but yes, we have them.
So they were out of Winnipeg, and then they attended it over in
Okay.
U S came in under.
Nick, be mindful of that after January twentieth.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, all right.
Add some tariffs.
Oh my god. Okay.
So then the uh, the next largest, under roadway, snow removal and ice control. Uh, those, those are, that, that funding's projected for three anti-icing trucks. Uh, just below that, under transportation planning and traffic management, is approximately a million for line painting truck. Um, and then uh you can see the amounts uh for various services below that, adding to eighteen point one million. For light fleet, so asset acquisitions, that's on the right, uh forecasted amount is four point one million, with the bulk of that being uh police services. So that's for approximately twenty-eight um uh WPS vehicles, two, two point zero one, sorry, two point uh three, two point three four nine million.
And that's SUVs, they're moving more to SUVs and sedans?
That's right.
They're SUVs.
Hmm, right.
Okay.
Uh, there's uh light fleet amounts for other departments as well, and you can see the uh animal services units there. That's the, the report uh in the list. And that was for three animal services bands. And again, those are, those are funded by, we have a transfer uh from animal services accumulated surplus. So with regards to capital budget changes, um in twenty twenty-five, we, we show a reduction of that fleet asset acquisition program. Simply because this is a service-based view, and now those procurements are, uh, the eighteen million I just spoke about, plus the four million for eighteen million for heavy fleet, four million for light fleet. Those are being reported in various other city services now. Uh, so we, we show that reduction in, in twenty twenty-five. We do have some small adjustments between our, our uh non-fleet uh capital projects. So uh, we're budgeting seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand for fuel site upgrades and improvements. Uh, we have an immediate need to upgrade our fuel dispensers at our fuel sites because the um the ones that we currently have are becoming obsolete. Uh, so we, we basically made a transfer between our other capital programs, shop tools and equipment and building renovations. We decreased those programs twenty twenty-five, and we've increased the fuel site upgrades and improvements. In the other years, um, again, uh the fleet asset acquisitions, we've split that uh between two programs. So the forecasted amounts for medium, heavy and specialty are thirteen million per year and uh three million per year forecasted for light fleet.
Hey, questions? Any questions? Any comments on this?
There are some vehicles or pieces of equipment that are outside of fleet, correct? And you know that Transit has, yeah, Transit has some vehicles that they use for clearing snow around their uh bus shelters and things like that, but they're not included in these numbers?
Uh, so they'll, they'll budget for those themselves, but will procure?
We, we procure for Transit, but it just provides an account number in the on.
Okay.
Yes. The only thing we don't procure for Transit is the buses. That's all there is. Any other questions for, of the committee members?
Okay, seeing then. Do a business plan now or do you come out?
No.
We, uh, so there is a business plan on the agenda that we'll need to take action on later today. Um, a number of years ago, there was a council decision that stated that these business plans should come forward at the same time as the budget.
Yeah.
Uh, because there is considerable overlap between the budget and the business plans. Uh, so if committee has any questions for fleet management on the business plan, uh, we could perhaps listen to those as well.
Peter, we have in the past put them on the subsequent meeting, just to have a bit of a presentation on them also. I recall that. I don't know if you do.
Yeah, certainly if the will of the committee is
Probably gonna vote on it though today because it is, like you say, tied together with the budget. Yeah.
Very similar to
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, if committee wanted to lay these over to our next meeting, we can certainly do that.
What's the will of the committee?
I think I'd like to do that. We still have uh parking authority to get through for presentations, right?
Yeah.
And there's an event.
Right, so laid over? When it comes, when it comes up on the agenda, we'll lay it off.
Okay, all right. So, okay, all right, let's get uh, uh parking authority out there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, five minutes?
Yeah, six.
Six minutes. Okay, we're gonna take a six-minute recess.
Okay, we're reconvening our special budget working meeting uh on Public Works. I think we're reconvening it for the sixth or seventh time here, but it's been a big day, lots happening, and now we're winding up with the um with the Winnipeg Parking Authority's presentation. Now, who do we have here? Where's, where's Randy Topolinski?
Randy says his regrets he wasn't able to make it. He's been obstacle.
Oh dear, okay. All right. Well, you know what? We've got the people that really know the stuff, so. Okay, all right. We got the, we got the working
The people that run the place, right?
Exactly, okay. All right. So, hello.
Okay, so I'm Ashley Williams, Program Manager with Parking Authority, and this is Lubov.
I'm
Go ahead Lubov.
Lubov, Gabriela Kroger, Manager of Finance.
No problem. So between the two of us, we'll be presenting our, our budget presentation, presentation today.
Ah, okay.
So in terms of the agenda, we'll be going through our service highlights and business plan statements. So uh you'll see some information that's in our business plan within our budget presentation. Both for our performance reporting, budget highlights and overview. And on the service-based budgeting of our operating budget or capital budget, and we don't have any uh reserve projections. And then we'll follow that up with any questions you may have. So this first slide here is our key achievements from twenty twenty-four that's also outlined in our business plan. So essentially, we have three main service lines, parking, MBE screening and adjudication processes and vehicle for hire. So we've broken out our achievements based on those um service lines. From the parking perspective, in twenty twenty-four, we continue developing the Winnipeg Parking Strategy that will be submitted for consideration after the transportation master plan is approved by council. We introduced an online application for residential parking permits, so really streamlined the process for residents when they're applying for that. We've got about thirty-two hundred people that apply for those permits annually. Um, and we also implemented the new tiered rate system for those permits that was approved in the twenty twenty-four budget process. We assume management of the city's electric vehicle public charging station, so that's at uh four locations um where people can come and charge their electric vehicles. And we introduced two hundred and thirty Winnipeg schools into our routing system, so that really helped us do better enforcement at schools, particularly for ensuring uh safety when uh during school days. From the Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Act, screening and adjudication process, that's the, the process where any bylaw that uses this legislative framework can dispute tickets with our, through our offices. We worked on developing a new, more informative and user-friendly online screening portal. So what that really means is before people could submit online disputes for their tickets, but this is making it easier. Everything's in one spot. They can see their photos. They can submit their um submit their uh request for review, and we're gonna be launching that probably within the next month or two. From the vehicle for hires perspective, there was a really comprehensive report that already went to standing uh committee for Public Works, and it's on its way to EPC and council this month. Um, as you would have seen in that report, the, the Winnipeg Wave program was made permanent. One of the really big things that were, we had was a record-high amount of trips with vehicle for hire at ten point two million trips and some improvements in training programs. And in terms of the dividend transfer in twenty twenty-four, transferring eight point seven million to general revenue fund.
Okay, like we did on other presentations, are there any questions in this key achievements area?
Just on that eight point seven, is that what you projected?
No, twenty twenty-four, uh that's what's been approved that has been transferred in twenty twenty-four.
I'm sorry, I couldn't mind.
In twenty twenty-four, that's the budget that has been approved, an eight point seven million dollar transfer, and that's what has been transferred in twenty twenty-four. It's the actual number.
You, you transferred it, okay.
Correct.
So where did, is the as time goes along in the accounting of it all, um do you keep a separate account for paying open dividend?
There's a separate account in the general ledger that is called transfer to general revenue fund, separate account in there, yes.
Okay, so did it accumulate more than the budget said you need to transfer?
Budget, the next budget cycle will be reviewed and the dividends will be adjusted for twenty twenty-six.
Oh, okay, all right.
Great. In terms of the forward thinking, our future plans, we're working on finalizing the Winnipeg Parking Strategy, as I mentioned. We are doing repairs to the Millennium Library Parkade for those uh high priority repair areas. We are looking at expanding bike parking in the Millennium Library Parkade, and also doing some other customer service improvements to enable mobile payments, reservations at the parkade. We're also working on enabling virtual penalty notice reviews, so that's linked to the Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Act. Where instead of um just submitting something online and communicating with somebody via sort of email for the, the penalty dispute, could do more of something like a Zoom meeting, so it has an in-person feel, but but it has the convenience of, of doing it virtually. We're also looking at augmenting some of the streets by law enforcement for any vehicle-related offenses, like uh earth spilling on the, on the street from a vehicle's wheels, for example, or a vehicle being parked uh across the sidewalk. Um, we're looking at modernizing the vehicle for hire driver training programs to make that more streamlined. And we're um gonna be looking at transferring eight point three million dividends in the twenty twenty-five is what we're forecasting.
Do you have, is there a permit to park across the sidewalk to unload a house or anything?
I would have to look into that, but from, from our perspective, we're trying to just help enforce the streets by law if somebody is parked there.
Yeah.
But um I do believe it is if they do not have a, a permit. It's more so if they're obstructing and they're, they're crossing the sidewalk with their vehicle.
Uh, I'll walk you through the uh performance uh reporting. Uh, so we have uh two different service lines um in the, in the current presentation. The first one is the parking and uh, and B administration. Uh, for this, uh, as you were, uh Uh, for this, uh, as you were, uh, WPA, uh, they provide management to city-owned on-street and off-street parking. We also manage the screening and adjudication process, which involves when people are not happy with their tickets. They have a chance to uh apply for screening, and if they're not satisfied with the result, apply for the adjudication uh at the end, which decision is final. So uh for this, uh, we've selected, there are two goals uh that were included here. Uh, the first is to manage a dynamic service delivery structure for all on-street and off-street parking. In order to maintain desired occupancy levels and minimize non-compliance with parking. So for this goal, we've selected um a measure, a satisfaction survey. For the availability and convenience of the on-street parking. Um, you could see uh the results kinda uh on, on, on the site and uh also like in the main portion of the slide. Uh, for the current year, our target was sixty percent. Um, for, for twenty twenty four, our target was sixty percent. However, the actuals for twenty twenty four uh was uh seventy percent, which is uh we're attributing it to the uh well convenience of the using of the mobile app. Um, when you park on street. That has been the highest uh set number um that we have in many years. Uh, so second goal here is to ensure the efficiency, impartiality and transparency. Of the screening and adjudication process under the Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Act. And for this goal, the measurement is the percentage of the penalty notices that would go to adjudication. As I mentioned, adjudication is the uh second last step of this whole appeal process. And um our target is point uh one percent of uh penalty notices going through the adjudication. And um the actuals for twenty twenty three was point uh two, and the actuals uh for twenty twenty four. That's still being finalized, but they're in line with that target that we have. Uh, so next service line is the Vehicles for Hire, and uh we provide regulatory and licensing oversight of the Vehicles for Hire industry. Uh, which includes taxis, limousines, personal transportation providers, and uh we have emphasis uh on safety and accessibility. Again, the goal is to provide regulatory uh oversight of Vehicles for Hire industry. And for this, we've selected two uh measures. Uh, one is the annual Vehicle for Hire trips in millions. Uh, you could see uh our target for twenty twenty four uh is ten million uh trips, and as Ashley mentioned uh earlier. Um, the number for twenty twenty four in terms of actuals was ten point two million dollar um. Two, ten point two trips, which means we have suppressed our target. And uh a second measurement here is satisfaction with the um convenience, accessibility. Uh, of our service uh VAB Wave. And our target is uh ninety-five percent, uh, and the actuals for twenty twenty four was very close to the target, ninety-four point seven percent. Uh, so next slide looks at uh our budget overview on a service-based uh view. Uh, again, there are two services, parking and MBE administration services and vehicles for hire. We have uh fifty-five point two FTs for the parking and MBE, and nine for vehicles for hire, to a total of sixty-four point two. Uh, there is overall deficit in parking at uh two million dollars. Um, because we're basically breaks even, and the capital budget in parking uh and MBE at sitting is eight million dollars. There's uh, uh, there are two, um. Well, sorry, there's one department that also contributes to this, uh, uh, which is information and technology. Uh, six percent is being contributed to parking and two percent being contributed to uh VFH. So now, uh, again, we'll look at our budget, and here it's uh presenting uh revenues and expenditures. Uh, revenues in the pie chart is presented uh sales of goods and services. Uh, which is forty percent, uh, regulation fees fifty-seven percent, and other uh smaller revenue, uh, three percent. Uh, what's included, uh, the regulation fees, which is uh fifteen point five million dollars, is parking um. Say enforcement at uh eight point eight million dollars, parking all sorts of permits at three point eight million dollars. Uh, vehicles for hire permits at almost two million dollars, and non-parking fines at seven hundred thousand. Uh, followed by goods, a sales of goods and services, uh, mostly that includes on-street parking and related permits, which is. Uh, budgeted eight point seven million dollars. We have casual parking at seven hundred. And uh different administrative charges at uh also seven hundred thousand. So uh in terms of um expenditures, uh, the biggest expenditure is the uh transfer. Uh, to general revenue fund, transfer of a dividend. It's uh making up twenty-nine percent uh of our total expenditures. Um. It's followed by um. Services, that is uh sitting at, uh, yeah, good services, sitting at uh seven point six million dollars. Mostly it's uh non-professional services such as enforcement, uh, services and parkade management, which is uh sitting at four point seven million dollars. There's also pay station maintenance there at one point four million dollars, and um total fleet, uh fleet cost, including fuel, fuel. At four hundred thousand. It's followed by debt and finance charges. Uh, the biggest number there is a bad debt. Um, at one point two million dollars, amortization and ferry power commission. Oh, and other grants and transfers, mostly it's supported here at city departments such as three-one-one, uh, um, human resources and transit. So um our next slide uh presents the uh actual revenue trends. And uh there's various uh types of revenue that's included in the slide. You could see there is um. The blue line is the um parking um enforcement, just parking. Um, green line is uh on-street. The uh red line is off-street parking, and the purple one is uh Vehicles for Hire. Uh, again, um, you, you could see that uh the trends, um, you know, started off twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Uh, but for twenty twenty, everything is kinda going down because obviously uh COVID pandemic. Uh, and it's um increasing in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Um. For some of the things, we're getting closer to uh pre-pandemic levels, especially when it comes to, uh, for example. Hours purchased for the on-street parking, however, um. There's been different changes also, like what's affecting it, the reduction in rate that was done in twenty twenty, so. Uh, in terms of dollar values, you don't see it necessarily at the pre-pandemic levels uh just yet. Uh, in the corner here, we also provided the uh collection rate for um parking enforcement. And just parking enforcement, and in twenty twenty-three was eighty-five percent, and in twenty twenty-four, uh, it's uh eighty-seven percent. So our next slide, it's a comparison uh of adopted budget in twenty twenty-four to adopted budget in twenty twenty-five. Uh, there you, you would see increase in revenues and expenditures uh before dividend, and mostly that's because of the inclusion of any back wave program. And that's the um inclusion like um in terms of revenue and expenditures, but they equal to each other, so it's basically a wash. It's mostly for presentation purposes and comparison to the actuals. Uh, you would see that um in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, there is a surplus before dividends that's being uh budgeted. At uh six point nine, six point three million dollars. Uh, uh, and then there's a dividend transfer to general revenue fund, and after that, there's a deficit. Uh, the same trend is uh for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven years, there's surplus before dividends, and there's a dividend transfer. Uh, the reason why the dividend transfer is um putting us in the negative is because, uh, as I was mentioning before. When we look at the actual results, because of the timing uh from a previous year, if the previous year ended up better than the budget, the extra funds being transferred. Um. A year from, from that year. I don't know if it makes sense, but. Basically, whatever was accumulated surplus is being transferred in the twenty twenty-five budget. That's why it's putting it uh into a negative. Uh, so next slide is a comparison of.
Can I just ask you on this, this slide? So you've got the projection for twenty-six and twenty-seven for surplus before a dividend. I'm just gonna look at that. Um. As going down.
Correct.
Not up. Now, I get the parkade. Is probably one of the reasons it's impacting the revenue going down. But when I look at the increase in vehicles, when I look at population, I don't know, why, why is it going down?
Uh, I believe there are a few reasons for that. Like, one of our biggest um. Sources of income uh is enforcement revenue, for example.
Right.
And while the number of vehicles may increase, the fines remain the same. Um, not the number of fines, but the fine for offense remains the same. So that's usually, that's why that you can see revenue is kinda stagnating over years, right? Um, also, uh, on-street parking rates uh remain the same. There is no increase in the budget for those on-street parking rates. Which is also one of the significant revenue streams wise. So because of that, they're budgeted at the same level. Uh, expenses on the other hand go up because of the inflation. Uh, salaries and benefits, for example, uh, there's negotiated, um.
Okay, so your expenses are going up, but you're saying because the rates are staying the same, the revenue stays the same. But we do have more vehicles, like there's, for sure, there's more vehicles.
It is, but.
And we've got better technology to tag people.
We have, we have the same amount of vehicles, but you're right, we've been, we've been increasing the amount of the ALPR units on those vehicles.
Right.
But some of it, sometimes for the enforcement revenue is influenced as well from looking back on historicals. How many RPVs, for example, are called, because we get a lot more ticket revenue for those types of events.
The residential.
Some of the, the, the budgeting would be based on historicals, and if we didn't have years where the, the RPB events took place, that could be impacting as well.
Um, in your plan, in your plan that you've been working on for a while. Are there other avenues of revenue opportunities that you're looking at?
Yes. Yeah, so when we, once the, once we know that the Transportation Master Plan has gotten approved, because it has some implications to what we're proposing in the policy strategy. That we would be looking at those types of opportunities, like one example uh that we are looking at is um enforcement on private parking lots. So in other Canadian cities, cities are involved in that more, so that would be. Helping to regulate it, but an out, an outcome of that could be increased revenue, for example. So we are, are looking at different opportunities. To provide service that has sometimes the benefit of increased revenue.
So we'll hear these opportunities, avenues after the TMPs.
Absolutely. Like, I would say that the parking strategy is gonna be bigger changes than our budget is a little bit more status quo, but we'll, we are proposing changes and. And, and looking at doing things a bit differently throughout the, through the parking strategy.
When I look at other cities, I've been looking at other cities quite a bit lately in relation to their parking programs and different. Um, revenue sources, it's quite incredible, and I've been also looking in the, looking at some in the States too, and um. I look forward to what you bring forward, so, yeah. Okay. Okay, perfect. Go on.
Uh, so this slide is a comparison uh of what was uh submitted in. Our budget cycle to what is being submitted currently. So basically, the first line here, uh, it shows you what it is um sub, being submitted currently. And um the second line shows you what was submitted before, and the difference is basically the difference between um. Forecast last year and submission current year. So uh the, the biggest difference is in twenty twenty-five year, and the reason for that is because um there was an increase in uh dividend transfer. In the um. Sorry, there is an increase in dividend transfer in twenty twenty-five compared to what we projected for twenty twenty-five a year ago. And there is also um decrease in the uh parkade revenue because of the construction. So when last year's budget was submitted in twenty twenty-five, it wasn't included uh those numbers in there, but now it's there. So um this slide presents uh our salary budget with a full-time equivalent and vacancy management. Um, there is no change in the FTEs. It still remains at sixty-four point uh two-one. And the salary increases year over year is because of the, again, negotiated increases that is built into those uh union agreements. Uh, we have a vacancy management. Um, one FTE is at sixty-five thousand in the current year, sixty-four thousand in the uh prior year.
Thanks. What do you think of the capital budget? Uh, in twenty twenty-four, in the adopted budget, we had nine hundred and twenty thousand. And the sixth year total is fifteen point six million, primarily made up for the Millennium Library Parkade repairs and also the automated. Uh, vehicle license plate recognition program. So th- these are our two investments, or two um capital investments. One is the program, the automated license plate recognition program. So that is the camera system that goes onto vehicles that takes pictures of infractions while the vehicles are in motion. Lets us get a lot better coverage throughout the city. We're primarily parking enforcement, but also uh one of the vehicles is dedicated to vehicle for hire enforcement too. Um, over the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty period, that's a one point nine million dollar program. And our, our larger capital um. Investment in the, in the preliminary budget is the Millennium Library Parkade High Priority Repairs, so. Uh, just as a reminder, that was in, in last year's budget too, and, and this year for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven. It is estimated for thirteen point seven eight seven million, and that is to address the structural work on one of the slabs in the parkade that has deteriorated. To replace the air handler unit and to replace um obsolete lighting system controls.
So just on the one point nine, do you wanna talk a little bit about what, what did you, what, what?
What that money?
Like you're buying cameras or what do you buy?
Yeah, so it's, the, that program is mostly, the cost is mostly attributed to the camera systems. In the twenty twenty-five year, there is one, one uh camera system that will go on our, our last vehicle that doesn't have the system. And the other ones are just an evergreen of the camera systems that have reached the end of their life. It also has a, a little bit of funding in for laptops that we use to go along with the camera systems, and then some licensing with some.
How many do we have now in operation?
Fourteen, and we're getting one net new one on our last vehicle in this budget cycle.
Does the province fund any of this at all?
Not this one. This one comes from our, I believe it's in our retained.
Right, right. Fifteen, and these are ones. Just, just refresh my memory. These are ones that can be used in anywhere?
We use them all throughout the city, so we use them like in the school zones. For example, we use them for time limited parking. It's an excellent tool for scheduling, like proactive patrols in those areas. To go through and, and drive through and chalk the vehicles, and then we can mail out the tickets that way, so it's a really efficient way to, to be ticketing in different.
And what are the ones, I guess there's, the, the, do the police patrol the school zones also?
The, the police can ticket for pretty much anything it, within the sort of the MBE, but. We do a lot of the patrolling of the schools, like that was something that we did some improvements on with the, the intuitive routing system that we have that schedules uh the day for our enforcement officers. We integrated uh information on all the schools that they have to go to, and then they use that to get there. So it's a good route planning tool, and then they use the ALPR system to take pictures of infractions. Often in school zones, if people are parking and obstructing sightlines, they drive off really quickly. So it works better for us to be able to take a photo with the vehicle and then mail the, the ticket to them.
Police use, there's a lot for um suspended drivers and uh, uh default on insurance.
Do you do speeding tickets?
Yeah.
Police do speed.
Right, that's what I was thinking of, okay.
Oh, sorry. No, no, that's, that's.
Okay.
Also usually, they.
AR, APR. ALPR.
ALPR for uh suspended drivers and uh, and default on insurance.
Use it also for the residential parking bans too, so we used to get about hit about eighteen percent of streets that needed coverage for enforcement to ticket the vehicles. And now we're up to closer to eighty percent using the ALPR, so it's a lot, lot more efficient to get out to support the, the snow clearing operation.
So when you work eighty percent of what, like?
Of the streets that need enforcement. So we're support rules, the street maintenance division. They tell us the streets that we need to go to to do enforcement to get the vehicles off before they go foul. And we're able to get to a lot more of those streets now using the ALPR than when we had people manually going out. And this is our capital budget changes, primarily the changes you see here over six year, that's uh five hundred and thirty-seven thousand is really attributable. In the most part due to increased installation costs of the ALPR systems into the vehicle, so we've, we've got a um. An increase in, in those costs here that's reflected. And that is the end of our budget presentation.
Okay. Exciting. Any questions? Comments? No? Okay. So um what are we gonna do with the plans now? What, what, do we, do we wanna deal with them?
Business plans?
The business plan.
Laid them over.
Oh, you laid them over when I was here?
We didn't vote on it?
No, we, we didn't move any emotions on.
We just discussed doing it.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so.
Wanted to hear them at all, you know, next time we do that often where they'll run heard that if you're. Wanted to hear them at all, you know, next time we do that often where they'll run through the presentation.
So, so I guess then what the question is, you want to lay over the business plans until the next public works meeting? Because the next public works meeting is short, so I might be.
Yeah, yeah.
Even though they're tied to the budget, can we do that and not like with the passing of everything?
Yes, yeah, there are, there are some business plans for other SOAs that went to other committees that are going forward to council this month.
Right.
Uh but this committee can lay over these two business plans.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, let's do that because we still have to deal with our motions and our other stuff, so.
Yes.
Okay, uh let's do, who wants to motion? Do we do a motion to lay them over now or?
Uh well, we we can, we certainly can, uh but we can go through everything as it is laid out on the agenda.
Sure. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So for item one, which is the presentations, we don't need to move any motions. So we can start with item number two. Uh so these are budget referral items, items two through seven. Um the departments have outlined in their presentations whether or not these are included in the budget or not. Uh so we can go through them individually or we can have one motion to receive the most information.
Well, some of them we've got in the budget, so.
Did you say two through five, Peter?
Uh two through seven.
Okay, because six Arlington Bridge has something separate on it.
Well, these are budget referrals, uh yeah, so essentially they're here as reminders. These have already gone through their committees and our council.
Said in there, yes or no.
So we can receive them all as information.
So we can move that.
Okay, Councilor Sharma is moving that to receive items two through seven as information. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Okay, now we're gonna make motions on.
Actually, hold on, was one of those the uh request from property and development regarding transit? Um one point whatever million about portage and me?
That is not on our agenda.
Well, it's not on.
No, it's not on our agenda.
Oh, did we vote? I think we voted to do it. Okay.
Not the budget, that's all.
Among that committee, so.
Okay, so now the budget.
Remember what we did with this.
The operating first.
Okay, so now we're going to make, we're gonna make uh mo- our motions. We're gonna vote on our motions.
That's correct. So we have the operating and the capital budget uh in front of us. So there are amendments on both the operating and the capital, so we have to go through them individually. So we'll go through the amendments first. Uh so the one amendment that I have on the operating budget is the deletion of recommendations one A A and one A A I. And that is to do with the pilot project on the snow clearance. Um as is moved by Counselor Luke's, so.
Chair there, Counselor.
Yep.
Chambers. So I'll move the motion then on um eliminating the pilot project.
Yeah, I'll just do my last little bit on it as well.
Okay, that's that's my motion.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll actually be supporting uh Counselor Luke's motion. Uh but again, I'll give my priv- visal, the complaint is, while there's, so I. Uh whether it is ten inches or fifteen inches, the car is still compressive. And the wheelchair users would still be able to use it, so but. I believe, I I didn't ask it, but it sounds like it really isn't going to save any money, so. Why would we do that? So I'll be supporting.
Any any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur as well. I did put some comments on the record earlier. Uh did hear from residents in my ward and from various other wards and it's just not something folks are comfortable with right now. We don't really know what the savings are gonna be and worried about mobility issues, et cetera. So same as the comments I made before, I'll be supporting the motion. Thanks for bringing it forward and thanks for the discussions we had recently on it.
Hey, and just for the public record as well, uh I'm supporting, I don't know, counseling the pilot project. Um fifteen centimeters is half a foot, six inches. Uh and if it is about uh those with mobility challenges. Uh while trying to keep our streets safe during the most pretty much unsafe time uh with snow. And and as mentioned earlier, our our climate is changing in it that, you know, during the daytime when we're seeing melting conditions. And then as it freezes overnight, it becomes very slippery. So uh adding snow to that, I think is just a dangerous mix. So uh those are my comments for the public record, so I'll call the question. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those carried.
Okay, all right, that's the operating budget motion that we've put forward for the public works budget. Now the next one.
Uh yeah, so I don't believe there's any other amendments to the capital budget, so now we will need a motion to approve the uh. Sorry, the operating budget as amended and recommending it to E P C.
Okay.
So move, Madam.
Counselor Edie moves that. All right, all in favor? Carried.
Okay, then on the capital side, we have Counselor Edie's motion, uh which is uh for the Arlington Bridge.
Twenty million dollars.
That's right. So the recommendations are, one, that a new capital project be created for the demolition and detailed design work related. To the replacement of the Arlington Bridge for twenty million dollars to be authorized in twenty twenty six capital forecast. Two, that capital expenditures in the amount of twenty million be authorized for the Arlington Bridge in twenty twenty five. Or prior to the adoption of the twenty twenty six capital budget as a first charge against the general capital fund. In accordance with such section two eight eight brackets two of the City of Winnipeg Charter to facilitate timely work on this project. And three, that funding in the amount of ten million be added to the twenty twenty seven capital budget forecast. For the decommissioning of the existing Arlington Bridge.
So it is thirty, but um anyway, I added the ten on uh Mr. Mary. Pointed out that without that, the bridges are gonna come down. So the planning will happen with the twenty million and continue designing and getting to a better cost estimate. So we know what we need to get from under levels of government uh in order to replace it. It does the way we're doing it, but we do have budget goals happening here. Uh the the ten million in twenty seven, uh I should be able to work out. But the only um downside to this way is that. That instead of going to the whole thirty million in twenty six. Is we have a one-year extension to replace the bridge.
Hmm.
Which, you know, twenty thirty one, that's what, six years, right? So.
Uh so for clarification, help, clarify for me, whether we were still supposed to receive the report back from the public service on Arlington Street Bridge?
Um.
Report is on there.
It is.
Uh any of the finance costs, like the motion we're moving here. Uh the recommendation, this is going to E P C. I have had a discussion with there and stuff. It, the detail will get worked on at E P C. According to whether E P C is gonna support this method or not. Um but I do know that the mayor does want to get something done regarding the Arlington Bridge.
And then I guess at that point, we'll decide we can get a report back. We should have a report back at some point, right? So so it sounds like there's some, because this wasn't in the budget process at all, um you know, there'll probably be some other things to work out. Kind of hard to work it all out, probably work.
Well, it was referred to the.
Well, it was, but it wasn't, I mean, the budget working group did it, so.
Yeah, that's right.
So um, okay, so so that's great, Ross. That's good motion. That's positive.
Well, we have to.
I'll be supporting the motion, Madam Chair. I appreciate the work Counselor Edie's put into it. Uh he's spoken many times. I've spoken at this committee about the important uh connection Arlington Bridge provides. We've got to move this forward somehow.
Yeah.
And as you say, well, there may be some tweaks we need to make before the council vote, but.
Well, I think it shows intent at other levels of government too, that it is one of the projects we want to work on, right? So.
Yeah, the advantage of doing it this way, rather than the city going the whole amount, which we couldn't do. Is that we have time to convince the province and the federal government that they should be helping us. Because actually, you want to talk about economic growth, the city grew because that rail yard sits there today. And the province and the feds made lots of money, brought in lots of money, lots of dough, income taxes. So all kinds of stuff they brought in because of that, so.
I think the province has a good idea, the importance of this as well, you know, lays in the area and beyond, but it signals as you s- as you say, the importance if we're.
That the city is wanting to go ahead with this.
That's great. Good question, Madam Chair.
Okay, so that's all the eight comments sent out. Okay, so all in favor of Counselor Edie's motion on the Arlington Street Bridge?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, support it.
Then Counselor Chambers has a motion with the Lashmodia Twin Overpass Rehabilitation Project. Uh so that one is therefore that the preliminary twenty twenty five capital budget, under the purview of the Standing Policy Committee on Public Works be amended. To authorize capital expenditures in the amount of twenty million for the Lashmodia Twin or Passes Rehabilitation in twenty twenty five. Or prior to the adoption of the twenty twenty six capital budget as a first charge against the general capital fund. In accordance with subsection two eight eight brackets two of the City of Winnipeg Charter to facilitate timely work on this project.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Okay.
And then we need someone to move a motion to approve the capital budget as amended and forward it on to E P C for consideration.
So moved it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried.
Right, and then we uh we need to deal with the uh business plans. So if the intent is to lay both over, we can do that via one motion as well.
Lay over to the next uh meeting, Madam Chair.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. I'll move adjournment. Okay, okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you, Public Works Committee, for another wonderful wind up to the budget meeting. Um a big day, lots covered, lots discussed. Very good. Thank you.